Okay, we're going to start with an invocation. Brent, are you here?
Yeah.
So many people. Thank you for being here today. We appreciate that. I'll give you the microphone.
And, Lord, I do appreciate being here and living in this city of Amarillo where we can start meetings with Christian prayer, where Bible verses appeared in our newspaper, where our city manager dedicated our new ballpark with a prayer. I read in Romans 13:1, Lord, that no authority exists except through you, and these officials are instituted by you, Lord. So thank you for this city commission, and our police officers, firemen, EMT, those that are serving. I've spoken with Mr. Sherlin today, and I especially let his family up just six days ago. We regretfully had to mark the five-year anniversary of the passing of his son in the line of duty death. I pray over these proceedings, Lord, and I pray over the Jesus teachings from the Sermon on the Mount. I pray that our light will so shine in front of men that they'll see our good deeds and give glory to the Father that's in heaven. Thank you, Lord, for all in attendance. Thank you for blessing and keepness in all things. Thank you most of all, though, Lord, for Christ Jesus, the risen Savior. In His name I pray. Amen.
Do you join us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we have a presentation regarding every drop count, so, Mr. City Manager, I'll hand that to you.
We've got Julie Allegriti from Utilities. Julie?
Hi there. Yeah, so we're here to present the winners of our yearly Every Drop Counts contest, and we have a quick little slideshow and presentation for you guys. So first, we kind of go over why we do the contest. We do the contest to create awareness for the need of water conservation in the city of Amarillo. As we know, water is one of our precious resources. The contest was open, sorry.
Go ahead and pull it, Jen.
Okay.
Hard, harder, closer teeth.
There we go. Okay, the contest was open to students in the Amarillo community. We had age groups ranging from kindergarten all the way to seniors in high school. The participants were asked to show us what they think is the meaning of every drop count. Oh, wait, sorry. We did pick a total of 13 winners because at the end of the contest, we do create a calendar that we're going to give out next year. It's a free calendar with all of our winners. So we're going to start with the first category, which was our kindergarten through second grade category. We had two runners-up. Oh. So that's one of our runners-up, a drop-saving.
I love it.
Another one. This category is the cutest because they have the most, like, precious depictions of it. And then the next one, we have what we should all know, turn off the water when you're brushing your teeth. And he went into detail with the toothbrush and a little hand and everything. Yeah. And then, our next one is our winner. Her name is Cara Espinoza from Pocket Elementary School, and this was her drawing, "Every Drop Really Does Count." And it does. You've got the cow drinking water, you always have to have the floating pizza and butterfly in details because we know it, you know, water's important to everything. And then our next category is our third through fifth grade category. They start getting a little bit more intricate here. Our first drawing is our, I'm sorry, three winners from this one, too. They'll get five Discovery Center passes and five Wonderland passes. Three will be featured in our calendar. This one was kind of a watercolor one, so it's hard to say, but "Every Drop Counts" in Amarillo, and it's Cadillac Ranch, so it's in the background. That's one of our runners-up. This one, it was all done in pencil, and the detail, every drop or every drop counts, those are actually rocks because they're depicting seracaping and how important that is and how much water that can save for us. Our winner in this category is Stella Longoria from Bushland Elementary. She's a fifth grader. She'll be going to middle school in Bushland. She's excited about that. We have Amarillo Every Drop Counts, and that's the skyline. So that'll be one of our featured winners. Middle school category, we did the same, pick three. First winner will receive Wonderland passes and a $50 dining card. So that one, don't take so long, showers. I think advice we can all take. Our next one, "Every Drop Counts," "Our Water, Our Home." And then our winner in that category is Bodie Ward from Bonham Middle School, and his is, "It's Amarillo, guys, save some for him." And it's a thirsty little lizard. So our next age category is high school. We have five Wonderland passes and a $50 dining card for them as well. So this one was kind of an overflow category. We had a little bit of the younger kids that fell into this one. We didn't have a lot of high schoolers, but this is one of our runners-up, "Every Drop Counts," "Reflection Into The Water," which is kind of cute, detailed sun. The next one is "Every Drop Counts," "All Drops Matter," "Every Drop Counts." And it's just, you can tell the sweet little face that this was one of the younger ones that fell into this category. So our winner for that one is Evan Ramos from Randall High School, and this is his drawing, "Save Water, Save Earth." Simple, but just to the point. Our final one is grand prize. We look at all of them, doesn't matter the age category. They'll get five Wonderland passes, $50 dining card, and a Fire HD tablet, and they're going to be on the cover of our calendar next year. And that winner is Emma Barone from Westover Junior High, and that is her drawing, "Every Drop Counts." And it really, that's one that I actually brought because the slide just doesn't do it justice. You can see every single little, if you guys want to look at it, every single detail on that, and it was all done with colored pencils. So Emma is our winner. They're not able to make it today, but they're watching it, so. And then, like always, we want to thank our community sponsors because that's how we keep this contest going, with our sponsors. And the final thing, the point of the contest is do something every day to save water, even if it's small, "Every Drop Counts." And then we'll have the few of the winners that were able to come in. We want to go ahead and give them their prizes. So we'll start with Cara first.
Good job, Cara.
Thank you. Okay. Here. There you go. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
It was great.
Then our third through fifth winner is Stella.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, and thank you to the parents who made an extra effort to come for those awards. We love hearing the family noises in the room today.
Thank you.
Appreciate you guys. Thank you, Julie. Okay, Mr. City Manager, I think you have an announcement before we move to our next item.
As a courtesy, I'm making an announcement that a notice was posted in the newspaper related to taking action to authorize the issuance of certificates of obligation, but no action will be taken at this meeting, and we move this item to the September 14 meeting. That's all I have, Mayor.
Do you want to visit about Stephanie?
Yeah. I also wanted to announce to everyone, and I apologize, I did not bring her accomplishments, but I will recite some of them to you. Our new city secretary, that we made an appointment earlier this week, or earlier last week, rather, is Stephanie Coggins. Stephanie started with us in the Finance Department. She did budgets. She also worked as the Assistant to the City Manager for a number of years, and also as Public Works Manager. So she's been doing a lot of things for us, and now she's going to be taking over in the City Secretary's office after the retirement of our longtime City Secretary, Frances Hibbs, back in May. So we're really looking forward to what Stephanie's going to be able to bring to the table. She comes to us with undergrad and master's degrees from WT and is also currently working on her municipal clerk certification as well. So lots of education, lots of talent, lots of opportunity, and I am excited about what she's going to do with the city. She's over there. Stephanie, did I get all that right?
You did.
Okay, good deal.
Welcome back, Stephanie.
So when you get a chance, please welcome Stephanie.
Okay, at this time, we'll move to public address on our agenda, and I'll pass the microphone to our moderator. Jen?
Okay. Thank you for participating in today's city council meeting. Your input and your opinions are important to us, and we're glad you're here to share them. At each posted meeting, we invite our fellow community members to address city council regarding posted agenda items. To ensure everyone is able to speak, we limit each speaker's time to three minutes. At the end of three minutes, a warning beep will sound from the dais to alert you, you have 30 seconds to wrap up your thoughts. We ask that you stay within the three minutes allotted. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act and state law, speakers are asked to limit their comments to items on posted agendas. Doing so will ensure that we are following the guidelines and we are able to have an effective meeting for all. If you're here to speak on item 3B, we ask that you make your comment during the public address or during the public hearing, but not both, in order to allow time for all speakers. It is your choice which time you'd like to speak. So if I call your name, if you'd rather speak at the public hearing, just wave your hand and I'll set your packet aside. The first speaker is Ed Schroeder. We do have overflow in rooms 305 and 306, so it may take a second for people to get down.
Hi, I'm Ed Schroeder, and the first thing I want to do is I want to thank you and let you know that I respect and honor you for giving your time to serve the people, and you've used your God-given gifts of love, power, and a sound mind to make those decisions for the people, and I thank you for that. Let me say that I saw a desire in the culture for uniformity rather than unity, and this is disappointing to me for the simple fact that if we have uniformity, it's kind of like a husband and wife, iron sharpens iron, but if they both agree, only one is necessary. So if we have uniformity in this with all of your God-given gifts rather than just unity, that doesn't mean that everybody's in agreement, then all but one are unnecessary, and that's probably the definition of a dictatorship. So don't worry about having a diverging view. Be proud of it and know that God gave you that ability to investigate. And I will say this, that I had an experience in my much younger life where I offered to serve the people, just like you did, and they didn't see any difference in me and my opponent, so they didn't see any reason to vote for me, so I didn't get to serve. But you being transparent and you overcoming your leanings, your own personal opinions to listen to the people and do their will, I thank you for that. And I would like to ask for transparency in one area, and that is, I don't understand when you're able to purchase something with surpluses, with reserves that you have from this pocket or that pocket. You've got too many pockets for me to keep up with. So I would just like to ask that you get it down to simple terms for us simple people and be very transparent about it, and that's all I have to say at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schroeder. Up next is Jesse Frimmer.
I'll wait.
You'll wait? Okay. And up after that is Joe Shane.
For 3A, will it be time to address in a public meeting?
Yes.
I'll wait until 3A.
Thank you, Joe. Yeah, I think it's good to choose one or the other. We're just trying to be efficient, build a long agenda, so, and want you to choose what you feel like is more effective.
Okay. Up next is Gina Cravy. Again, we do have overflow in rooms 305 and 306, so it could take them a second to get down here.
Can you take the next speaker while I'm waiting?
Yes. I will do that. Jerry Glover.
And who's on yet, Jen?
Gina Cravy, yes.
And is anybody after you?
James Skank.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good afternoon, Jerry Glover, 5707 Burgett. Mr. Stanley, welcome. You haven't had the pleasure of having me at the lectern, and it's been a while, council members. I know you all missed me. I am here actually to speak about Agenda Item 3A. Unfortunately, my time does not allow me to stay for the actual public hearing due to caring for a father-in-law. So I just wanted to come and really encourage you to dive in and do the homework on this one, and I want you to be very cautious and careful about singling out for the greater good of one person or three people versus the greater good for the community that this decision affects. North Heights rezoning efforts have been going on for a very, very long time, and I'm sure you've heard tale. I know some of you have had the pleasure of attending a bus tour, and it's all been very informative and educational, I hope. There have been some that have spent longer than I on this, but I have been around for the better part of a year on this particular project, and I can tell you that nothing proposed was done so lightly, without consideration, and certainly without looking at it from multiple sides. This is not a selfish proposition we make. This is a proposition made for the greater good of North Heights as a whole and its future. I would certainly appreciate you taking the time to explore the economic impact that proper zoning can have on an area of town, and we're not talking about the economic impact for one individual or two individuals. We are talking about the overall economic impact for a community and the possibility to have things like grocery stores and neighborhood services in the community walkable, where people are able to get to those services when they need to without a vehicle and without having to depend on our ever-growing and ever-changing bus line, but certainly still not able to meet the needs of all people. Melody Graves, President of North Heights Advisory Association, asked me to make a statement on her behalf. Unfortunately, she is home. Her son has COVID, so they are quarantined currently, and she wanted me to let you know that she has started an online petition. In a very short period of time, she has gathered verified signatures from people who live in North Heights in support of this, upwards of 60, in about 24 or 36 hours. So people in the community do support this. Those that oppose are very loud. They're very, very loud, but they're not always right. Louder does not always make you more right, and I ask you to consider that as you move forward. Lastly, I want to take my last few seconds to thank Mr. Miller and let you know that your city staff and planning are rock stars, and they have worked their hind ends off on behalf of this project, and we appreciate them and thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Glover. Up next is Gina Cravy, if she's here. Otherwise, James Skank, and after that is Michael Ford.
I'll wait.
You'll wait? Okay. Michael Ford?
There are some people here for the hearing that did not sign up online, and it's my understanding, based on a previous hearing, that those folks don't have to register under public address. They can speak in the hearing, in the context of the hearing, so I just wanted to verify that. There's a couple of folks back there who wanted to speak and haven't been able to, or did not register. They'll speak at the hearing. Is that better? There we go. Sorry. Hello, my name is Michael Ford. Madam Mayor, the comments made by the Public Health Director regarding VAERS during the last meeting were nothing short of insulting. First, she described CDC's VAERS, the exact same system that the city of Amarillo directs vaccine recipients to report all adverse events to, as an unreliable event reporting system, leaving a very strong impression that the reports in the system cannot be trusted. Then she made the confident statement that there are fewer than 8,000 total adverse events in VAERS and certainly only a few deaths. Unfortunately, our Public Health Director apparently does not know how to navigate a government database, as the total of adverse events reported to VAERS exceed 540,000, not 8,000, and COVID vaccine deaths are more than a few, with reports totaling over 12,000, which is twice as many deaths as all deaths reported to VAERS for the last 30 years through 2020. Even the CDC, on its Select Adverse Events Reporting page, admits to over 6,000 deaths, but is remarkably silent on the total number of reported adverse events. So the false information on COVID vaccine adverse events is shocking, but not surprising, and why do I say unsurprising? Because the city council chambers are not unused to the issuance of false information. At the last regular council meeting, a member of the public was barred from public comment on the false statement that state law only allows members of the public to speak on items listed on the agenda. That is absolutely incorrect. I'm very happy to explain that in excruciating detail in response to questions, but not in my three minutes. Conversely, the city attorney doesn't enforce clear and obvious restrictions on the city council that the agendas and the state law requires. And I'll conclude my examples with the last violation of law of the city council, going into executive session with an outnoticing executive session, and has done so for every executive session for well over four years. The action you take as a body that benefit from an unlawful closed meeting can be reversed either by mandamus or injunction, but that's not the worst of it. When you return from your illegal executive session, you had a single vote on Harold Smith's motion to call the question, otherwise known as a motion to end debate. The city council never voted on tax increase, which was the main motion that was left pending and required a second vote, but it died on adjournment. So if the city council cannot follow the Texas Open Meetings Act or Robert's Rules of Order required by the city charter, how can you possibly expect the city council to properly oversee something as complex and consequential as a very public vaccination program where the city is violating informed consent requirements by issuing blatantly false information from this podium and from that microphone to every person tuning in live or on the Internet? The far better course would be for the city to begin advocating for early treatment and provide members of the public with effective, life-saving, and cheap therapeutics alongside public vaccination program to create true and significant options and true informed consent. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Ford.
Thank you.
Up next is Barbara Cromer, and after that is Elder Herman Moore.
I'll wait. I'm here to remind you guys about the needs of the senior population of Amarillo and the trust that we placed in you to follow through with the things you said in your campaign, such as to represent all the people of Amarillo. And I also specifically represent the Senior Citizens Association of Amarillo. And as you know, after serving the senior citizens of Amarillo for 47 years, we lost our location. And because we lost our location, well, before we lost our location, we provided the senior citizens with activities, socializations, nutritious meals, which so many of them depended on, and since we lost our location, we have been able to provide those meals. So there are a lot of people, because it wasn't just the association members, it was the public as well, that could come and get those meals, and you would be amazed at how many people came and ate those meals and were able to, you know, have nutritious meals, not frozen things that you just stick in the microwave.
Ma'am, I apologize to jump in. Are you speaking to the budget item on the agenda? Is that what item you're speaking about?
I guess, well, I don't know. They said it was 1B. I don't know what that is.
Mr. City Manager, I believe she's speaking to item 1B in relationship to the American Rescue Fund plans.
I'm tracking.
Thank you, Freedom. And anyway, those meals were at very reasonable prices, anyone could afford, you know, and a lot of, well, I say that, if you were a husband and a wife, it was $12, and you could have probably four meals out of that. So it was very reasonable. And since we lost our location, like I said, we have, the seniors have lost their access to the activities, to the socialization, to the nutritious meals, and what you guys are young enough, you may not understand. The senior population has lived here, worked here, paid our taxes here, voted here. We have put you in office, trusting you to take care of us, and we have not been taken care of. And the city of Amarillo has never, never financially supported the Amarillo Senior Citizens Association, and we're not asking you to take any money out of your budget now. What we are asking for you to do is to keep us in mind for the ARP money, that we need the $2 million to buy a location that we can put ourselves into and then be able to continue to exist. And I don't even, I'm probably not even supposed to say this, but if we do not get the money that we need from you guys, the Senior Citizens Association will cease to exist. And we're here, it's, we're a very big population in Amarillo, and we need your help. And someday, when you're my age, you're going to want these services for yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cromer. Up next is Mildred Darden, speaking on item 3A. Okay. And Alan Abraham.
I'll wait for 3A.
Okay. I think that's it then, Mayor.
Hey, thank you, Jen. Let's move on then.
Get my microphone turned on. To item 1A, which is to review the agenda, anything in your packet that you wanted to ask a question about or need more information on just right up front, council? Anything? Okay. Moving on to item 1B is a coronavirus update. Mr. City Manager?
Hi, Mayor. We've got Casey Stotin, Director of Public Health, here to give us the update.
So as of today, there are a total of 37,110 cases of COVID-19 reported in Potter and Randall Counties. That's an increase over yesterday of 188 cases. We have 2,053 active cases, and we're up to 783 deaths here in our community. Since July 22, we have had an increase of 1,499 active cases. The five-day new case average is at 148 new cases per day. Adult bed utilization at our hospitals is at 73%, ICU utilization is at 65.5%, and ventilator utilization is at 54.5%. Currently, there are 98 patients with COVID-19 hospitalized in our local hospitals, with 50 of those patients in ICU and 30 on ventilators. We remain at Level Orange for the next week. Next Wednesday would be our two-week mark, where we'll review the data and move either to red, stay at orange, or go down to yellow. However, two of the four metrics do remain in orange, and two of those four metrics are in Level Red. Yesterday, our GA 34's hospitalization percentage was at 10.23%. That means that 10.23% of all of our hospitalized patients do have COVID-19. So, and that is fairly consistent with the state of Texas. It's really hospitalizations all over the state of Texas are increasing, some upwards of 20, into the 20, 23% area. So certainly have seen an increase all over the state. Speaking with- So certainly have seen an increase all over the state. Speaking with Dr. Lamontier, Dr. Weiss, Dr. Gonzalez, as of this morning, we have right around 19 patients in our ER hold, which means that those patients are waiting for a hospital bed, waiting in the ER, waiting to be admitted into the hospital. Staffing and bed availability continue to be a concern. Our hospitals are also considering holding elective procedures based on the next day's bed availability, which certainly will affect our, you know, loved ones, those people that we know, with those elective procedures, with the scheduling being so tight on elective procedures. So just want to, again, reiterate, masking and vaccines, distancing. If you're sick, stay home, you know, certainly see COVID testing. Our hospitals cannot fight this alone. There's a nursing shortage. There are only so many beds in our hospitals. Was listening to a press conference yesterday, a hospital out of Baton Rouge, Louisiana, Dr. Catherine O'Neill, their chief medical officer, was providing that press conference. It was really impactful, so if you haven't had a chance to listen to that, would certainly encourage it. But one of the things that she said was that these are the darkest days of the pandemic. By, you know, looking into the walls of their hospital, these are the darkest days of their pandemic, of the pandemic there in Baton Rouge. I think that we're certainly not at that point yet, but we're not far behind Louisiana, so we have an opportunity to make a difference right now. So anybody who's vaccinated today will certainly slow that tide. In a couple of weeks, masking can make a more immediate impact by slowing the spread of transmission right now. So happy to answer any questions that you have.
Dr. Sauer?
Yes, ma'am, I do. I've got a couple of questions. So we're seeing a lot of breakthrough occurring in vaccines at this point in time, enough that honestly, I don't even know if I should be sitting here with the patients that I see every day. And they come in and they're, appear to be healthy, they've been vaccinated, and I'm not even sure whether they're carrying or not, and I'm within a very short distance of the origination of where their virus is going to be coming out. And so, and we're not even sitting at six feet apart here, and not everybody in this room is actually following the skipping-the-row thing, and so we're not actually social distancing very well in here. I'm not even for sure that we should be doing this live, and maybe that this shouldn't until we see the Delta variant pass through, which it's been shown to, it's fast up, it's fast down, and it goes on. I'm not even sure whether we should be doing this live and whether it shouldn't be on Zoom for a period of time. But I think at the same time, the governor did not re-up the ability to even use the Zoom meeting after a certain time. Is that correct?
I, I'm not sure about that. I'm not sure where we are. We'd have to get, I guess, city attorney to give us an opinion on whether or not those meeting rules, and the legislature even had some bills filed on those, and I didn't follow them closely, so I'm not sure the status is on that.
I can weigh in on that.
Oh, thank you, Brian.
The suspension ends September the 1st, I believe.
Did any of those bills pass, Brian?
No.
Making the virtual or digital meeting option permanent?
That is correct. None of those passed. So that is my understanding.
Honestly, I'm not worried about me. I mean, I've been through the vaccination process. I never get sick. I'm very healthy. I probably should knock on wood on that one. But there are numbers that aren't. I mean, I've got a friend that was a dentist that had both shots of Moderna, and he's passed away. Went to Florida, came back, got COVID, and ended up being in the hospital on event and then passed away. And whenever you begin to see some of those kind of things like that, I think, I don't want to rein in on anybody's personal rights. I'm very much for people being able to have their personal rights, but also at the same time, I think we've got a lot of personal responsibility in the position that we're in, and I think we need to be considering that. So those are just some things that I, that I kind of, I don't know that we can actually even discuss that during this or not, or whether we can, but I think it's, I don't want to be inadvertently spreading something that I don't, because I think that I would probably be asymptomatic. And I, you know, I'm even questioning, just doing what I do, whether I don't need to probably test on a weekly or bi-weekly basis, just because I don't know what I'm coming in contact with, and which means what's happening with my family and my friends and my colleagues and you guys. And I think it's, I think we still have some, all politics aside, this is serious.
Definitely, we want all politics aside, because we just want to talk about people's health, so.
We do.
Truly, that's important.
And it's not a political issue for me at all. Actually, never really has been. I think we have to, I just don't, personally, I don't want to be a reason for someone ending up in a hospital, honestly.
Okay. Well, I think we can definitely take your concerns going forward in how we set up the council chamber to do meetings. I mean, any other council member feel like we need to, we would only have two more meetings, I guess, where we could do the digital option before September 1st, so.
I think it just should be, we should at least talk about it. And you all may completely disagree with me, and I'm fine with that. But I think it's worthy of discussion.
Okay. Any other thoughts or concerns about what Eddie's bringing up? Can you grab your mic, please, Howard? Thank you.
I think he brings up a good point. Trying to be careful. I've avoided COVID, and so if we can have two more meetings that other way, let's do it.
Okay. Frida?
Mayor, I don't have an issue with meeting either via Zoom or in person, but it is obvious to me today that we don't have the social distancing that we need right here in the council chambers, and of course, we have two other rooms that have been allotted, you know, for people to spread out, and that's not really happening. So, and we've got to be an example, you know, for our city, and we do have to have the concern and safety for our citizens. Again, nothing political, just trying to make sure that we do the right thing.
Cole?
Dr. Sauer, I love the Vacla family, and Jonathan was a good friend of mine in high school. I've lost touch with him as we got a little older, but really good people, and I hate to see anyone lose their dad and go through that. And so you're right, it's not political, it's serious. And we all have people that we know that have been sick and, you know, bounce right back, but then we also have people that we know that we assume are healthy and they don't. And so I agree with you that the external is a focal point, and there's some personal responsibility there. I don't want to disregard or not pay attention to the internal. You know, so my question is a little bit of why are we not promoting and setting that example somewhat more for internal immunities, building that strong immune system and taking care of some of those things, more so. And I'm talking about things that we all agree with, you know, vitamins, minerals, water, exercise, healthy diet. And so I think we're wanting to do that. I just, I think we feel so handicapped with this thing that we're not able to really push. And so I, I think the VAERS data, and I think accurate accounting is important, because you're bringing up breakthrough cases, and that's very important. And that's not political. That's factual data that we need to be paying attention to, and we need to be advising our public with as much of that data as we can. But then I think we also need to be pushing for therapeutics and things that doctors and pre-treatment clinics are willing to do. Now, I'm not saying that we as a city can do this at our clinic. I understand that there are some limitations, but as a city, in setting that right example, I think we should be pushing and trying to take ground against this illness in other ways, not just in the ways of putting all of our eggs in one basket. I don't know any of us that believe that all your eggs in one basket is always a good plan. And so I mean that in the way of just advocating for a vaccine, and everybody gets your vaccine, and it's all about the vaccine. I have no problem with anyone who wants to take that shot getting that shot, and I want to make it accessible, and I want it to be informed consent. But then, everybody who's not comfortable with taking that, what are we doing to assist them and to help them and to set that right, and to set that example? And so, Casey, I know last time, you know, you had addressed the VAERS data. Did you happen to bring that? I know Mr. Ford spoke, and I would, I personally would like to know, what are the actual numbers, and is that an accurate accounting of what he gave us?
Before we go to that question, can I just ask you, Cole, do you have a, do you have a thought you want to share about how we should set up our meetings for social distancing, masking, just before we move off of that side point that we kind of were on? Can we hear your thoughts on that?
Yeah, so let me ask you, in the way of being able to do a Zoom meeting, you're only going to do that two more times, and then you're going to be required by state law to go ahead and meet in public?
Jared, is that right? Are we understanding that we could do a Zoom meeting for the last regularly posted meeting?
Yes, if you had a meeting late in August, you could.
But then going forward, we could set up just a different arrangement that would allow us to social distan more?
We could go to a different location, say.
But that gets challenging with, that's why we didn't do it before, because it's very hard, microphones and video are set up for this room. They're not set up that way in the Civic Center, and it makes it very hard for people to participate. And here, even just people that are watching at home, which thank you if you're watching at home or watching a replay of this, we appreciate that you're staying engaged. So, did that answer your question, Cole?
Yes, ma'am, I believe so. And then to answer your question, no, I don't, I don't have a, an outlook or a plan on how we would sit and how we would further eliminate transmission of this.
Okay, so.
That's really, that's my address. I mean, I'm not talking about vaccine, and I'm not talking about therapeutics, and I think we have to, we can address all of those deals and let that be done. I think our responsibility is, are we doing the things to permit transmission? And I think at this point in time, we're going through another bump, and it's significant enough of a bump that now that we're back up at 10% of hospitalization rate. And honestly, that's the part I care about. I'm, and please, 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 don't get me wrong, I'm not worried about case numbers, I'm worried about severe disease, and what ends up happening with those people with severe disease, and how do we prevent severe disease? Well, one of those ways that we as a group have control over is indoor masking, social distancing, and those kinds of things. And I, and I think those, it behooves us as leaders to do the things we can to protect people the best that we can, and I think that's why we should be at least addressing this part of it.
To the things that are in our control.
Yeah, very easily within our control.
Okay. So, Mr. City Manager, I think what you're hearing from discussion here, it would be helpful if going forward, we could keep in mind as we're setting the meeting up, the room up, that we would do so in a way that meets the CDC guidelines and better allows for social distancing at the council table, but also in the audience.
We will do that. We will do that.
Okay, so then, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, well, stay on that topic. I was going to go to something slightly different.
Okay, I think it's okay to go to something slightly different, then I think Cole kind of has the rudder a little bit on.
Jermaine, to Councilman Stanley's question on VAERS, Casey may be up to speed more than, you know, she needs to on that. However, when we look at what our lane is here at the city, our lane is not to analyze or do any type of data compilation or analysis on VAERS data. Our job is to put vaccinations in people's arms, to communicate to our public about what our situation is with regard to COVID, ways that they can mitigate as recommended by CDC and DSHS. But as far as anybody that has concerns about VAERS data or wants to debate or litigate that, that needs to be referred to the proper authority. In this case, that's DSHS or CDC, really, is the one that takes the VAERS data along with FDA. But as far as what we do at the local level, and if we're talking about national policy, national policy is created at the national level. We don't change national policy at the local level. We execute on national and also state directives with regard to our health district. So I only say that to say, it's good to know, if you know, but our job, our role, not our job, I don't want to ever say it's not my job, but our role in this situation is not to compile or analyze VAERS data, but it is to accurately report to the VAERS database any incidents that we have as a result of the vaccination. But like I said, Casey, being the person that she is, probably is way more up to speed on VAERS than I or anybody here is required to be. So go ahead.
Two, I 100% agree. Vitamins are great, and eating healthy, great, exercise, great. And I fully support that the city would take a position that makes those a primary way to address the health of our city, not just for COVID, but for lots of, I mean, there's so many good takeaways from eating healthy, exercising, taking vitamins. So that is across the board, I think, a great idea. I appreciate the speed with which vaccines protect people specifically from COVID when it has such deadly consequences. So I can see the benefit of both things, both the therapeutics, both the internal things that you pointed out, but I also value the speed with which a vaccine can protect someone's life. And so I had a question just for Casey before we even got into this discussion, which was, what is the best way to protect someone from getting COVID, and what did the governor have to say yesterday in his press release?
So the best way to protect someone from getting COVID is being vaccinated. The, you know, if you, to be healthy and to, like, we've talked, like, you know, you've talked about, you know, vitamins, and you have to, you know, you need to certainly talk to your doctor about what vitamins are appropriate for you. I don't think you should just go, you know, rake off the shelf at Walgreens, but, you know, you need to take appropriate vitamins for yourself. You need, you know, exercise, staying at a healthy weight, drinking water, you know, those things are very healthy. If you are at a healthy, if your body is healthy, if you are exposed to COVID, then you have a better chance at a good outcome. If you are more unhealthy, and I'm speaking very general terms here, if you are more unhealthy when you, if you are exposed to COVID and you get COVID, then you have a greater chance at a poorer outcome. But the vitamins themselves are not going to cure or protect, they don't put, like, they're not a vaccine, so they're not going to cure or protect you specifically against COVID.
But will they help?
They can help, because if you have started at a more healthy, if your body is more healthy than less healthy when you get COVID, then you are at, you have a better chance of a better outcome. And that, it's all about the risks here, right? Like, you want to decrease your risks so that you have a better chance at a better outcome.
So let me, so it's like putting it this way. So like, one of the big ones that's talked about is vitamin D. Well, here's the deal with vitamin D, is if you're vitamin D deficient, it's a huge asset and helps with COVID. But I get my vitamin D level checked every year, and because of that, I take vitamin D so that my level's good. Increasing it actually does the opposite. It begins to have deleterious effects on my body, and so to say across the board that vitamin D is going to be, and I'm just using that because I do know about the therapeutics. I have looked at them. I'm looking at what I'm supposed to be doing. I'm working out, I'm taking vitamins, we're eating good. I've got the best cook in the world living in my home, bar none. And, and still, and still, you just, there's, there's these different things that actually go into that, and I think they're important. But also, you have to be very careful about those, too.
Right. I'm glad you brought it up. I think it's a great talking point, and I'm glad we're hearing that viewpoint, and, but I just thought it was interesting, in the statement the governor put out yesterday, he unequivocally said, please, all Texans should get their vaccines. And he even stated, vaccines are safe. So it's not just, it's not just Eddie Sauer or Ginger Nelson or fill in the So it's, it's not just, it's not just Eddie Sauer or Ginger Nelson or fill in the name. I mean, people in high offices are saying this is the best way to protect against the COVID virus. And we, we're saying that because we care about individual people, but we also care about the health of our entire city. And if people are waiting right now as we speak to get a bed in the emergency room, that means ambulances that pull up there cannot offload their patients and that means the next car wreck on I-40 will have fewer ambulances to respond to that situation. And so it does, it is an individual decision that we all respect, whether to get the vaccine or not get the vaccine, but we can't turn away from the truth that it has ripple effects across the health of our community, just in that one situation that I just talked about.
So I disagree slightly in the way of personal responsibility. And it may not be the city's lane or role to report the data from CDC. I thought we did a pretty good job of that. I think we do a good job of reporting cases, reporting hospitalization, things like that. Eddie, I agree with you, I'm concerned with breakthrough. I'm concerned that, you know, you take a vaccine and you're relying on that and that may not have the, the impact that we were hoping for. I'm concerned on the other side that you're having more adverse effects and side effects from this. Any medicine that is given has an effect and a side effect. We know that. I'm no doctor, but, but I understand the way that medicines work and there's risks with everything. And so I personally feel like I have a responsibility as a role model elected official to, to be able to give an answer if people ask me. And when they send me an email, and they don't stop. And so I get emails and I get concerns of two things mainly. One, the freedom of choice, which is, I always would advocate and I believe we would all advocate that it is your personal responsibility and it's your personal freedom to decide what you put in your own body and what you do not. And so in the way of promoting a vaccine, that's fine. I also want to promote freedom just as much. But outside of that, the actual data that we have to look at, I'm looking to you as our health official to tell me, can I trust that? Is VAERS accurate or not?
Of course VAERS is accurate. It is, it also comes with a set of parameters because CDC analyzes that data and there are additional steps that are taken, you know, so this, the public facing VAERS, you know, their, their query system, their downloadable, you know, databases, that is the, that's the public facing, that's the initial report. CDC analyzes that further and so there's additional information that the public, that we, you know, public health, we don't have access to. And so that is, that is why they have the disclaimer that this is not, this, VAERS in the public facing format is not one to be applied universally or to make scientific assumptions about because they are, they're making, they're doing that analysis on the backside and that there's, there are, there are further steps that take place, just like with the Johnson and Johnson vaccine. There were, those reports all went into VAERS. CDC said, hey, we're getting, you know, we're seeing these trends, let's pause the vaccine until we can do further analysis. They did and CDC and FDA said, no, this is, this is a safe product and so we'll move forward with the, with the administration of the vaccine. But until they, until we got, you know, the, the documentation that said, you know, please, you know, move forward with that, we, all of the providers across the United States paused on giving that vaccine. So we didn't give any vaccine after that pause took place. And so that is, that's the way this system is used.
I think also with regard to questions of, is the vaccine safe? Our data on that is not created here locally. We take guidance from CDC and from DSHS. On both of their websites, they say the vaccine is safe and effective. That's where we take our guidance and our directions on how we do what we do and what we do. Now, a lot of that comes from DSHS, but DSHS is informed and guided by CDC. So I think, I think to answer that question, we have to refer to other areas. And if somebody wants to then have a conversation with us about, but is it really, well, we're not the place to have that conversation. We need to always be, to anybody that would send an email to you, they need to be referred to the authority that has the ability to, one, answer the question with the data other than just referencing their webpage, but also has the ability to change policy if they can convince them that it is not actually safe. And I only say that to help refer those people to the people that are the appropriate entity to help them and have that conversation. Because in many cases, it's not actually a question of is it safe? It's a, I want to have a robust conversation where, where we share and exchange ideas that aren't the same. But again, that's not her role, that's not their role. I just want to get them in front of the right person that can help them.
Any other thoughts from council? Questions for Casey? Yes, Councilmember Smith?
Another council member earlier, what kind of arrangement we should have for our meetings? I think we ought to be social distanced. We can't be down here, we can't be up there. I know it's more complicated sitting up in the Civic Center, but there's big enough rooms where we could be social distanced and the audience could be social distanced also.
Okay.
My two cents were.
Yeah, I would tell you that I think social distancing is more important than location.
Okay. You know, we set these tables up, y'all may not care or even be wondering, but this dynamic of us sitting in a straight line makes it really hard to work as a team. It makes it hard to get my attention as the chair of the meeting when you have something you want to say or you want to ask a question about. I spend a lot of time with my, the back of my head to half the people that I'm having the meeting with. So it's a very awkward arrangement. Over time, we get used to each other working as a team and we understand cues or rhythms of the meeting. But if, you may not recall, back in 2017, when the four of us were elected together, we spent four or five months meeting down on the table, down, tables, down on the floor because it was important for us to get to know each other and to, to get into a rhythm together. So, and then we moved up on the dais and it was better, it was easier. So we're offering that same opportunity to us again as we bring on Councilmember Stanley and he's new to this role. We wanted a chance for us as the five of us to be as healthy a team as we possibly can be. And so we're back down on, off of the dais and at tables so we can see each other's faces because a lot of communication that happens is nonverbal communication. So I think taking all of that into consideration, we need to figure out how to do meetings safely, socially distant, and obviously, we want you guys to be a part of that process too. So we'll, City Manager, you guys work on that for us?
Yes, ma'am, we will work on it. And as far as Friday's meeting, we will work to analyze social distancing in this room because we will need to have that meeting here in this room because we had to do public, we had to notice that that second reading.
It's already posted, is what you're saying.
Correct, yes, ma'am. However, in the next regular session, the next regular meeting we have after Friday's meeting, we will definitely implement at, whether it's here or at another location, appropriate measures to, to one, social distance and also be able to provide, not just social distancing for city council, but also for citizens and staff.
And I would hope that in, in going through this and doing this, I would hope that we would have some sort, it wouldn't be open ended, that we would basically have a metric. So like if it's hospitalization, when our hospitalization gets back below maybe 5%, then, then that could be relaxed. I don't, I don't want to, I don't want this to be set up for an infinity type of a deal. I think it's, I think it is alarming that our hospitalization rate is at 10% and it's been holding for that way for a period of time now. And so that's, I want to make for sure that that part's in it. I don't, I don't want to do this forever. I just feel like that we're in a, a potentially crucial state at this point. Just, and it may be just for a period of time. If we look at the data from all across the world, we, we see that this rises, does its thing, drops off and then we're back to.
I think a metric is a good idea. Jared, do you think there's any reason why you couldn't do that?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. Well, and I, good dialogue. I think that's, it's great to have different opinions. I completely agree, we're still learning how to work together as a team and there's a tremendous, I hope, amount of grace involved in that. We're still learning, which means we can still improve how we're working together as a team. So we're, I think that's excellent dialogue and I would just remind council members that it's, it's so important for you to speak up if you have a different opinion. Because as our, we had a speaker at the podium today say, well, we don't want uniformity. No, we don't. We want unity. And unity encompasses all kinds of different viewpoints and we welcome that. And it is our responsibility, the five of us, to verbalize those different viewpoints, whether they're support or concern or questions. We can't work on it together as a team if we're not talking about it. And I would add to that, that timing matters. You see us, our agenda is arranged in a way that we do our discussion items upfront. Usually they have the most work involved to them. We're, we're still building those parts of the ship. And so that's where, you know, we might spend 30 minutes on one item, hearing concerns, questions, having discussion about it. And timing matters because that's where it's important to bring up your concerns and your questions. Once it goes on to the action agenda, it's very hard for us to change it at that point. And so, you know, that's sort of what happened last time, was we had had all that discussion about it and we hadn't heard every concern. It hadn't been verbalized while we were in the discussion building mode. So it's so important for that to happen, for you to verbalize your concerns, but for you to also keep in mind the timing of how our team works on things that are on the agenda. So great discussion, great feedback for Casey. And I hope we have robust discussion on every single item, especially in our discussion agenda, because that's where we're really doing our work together as a team. We can't build a solution for a concern we don't know about. And this is where we're building solutions, is this discussion part of the agenda. Item 1C is a partnership for development progress update.
All right. Justice City Manager Floyd Hartman to give it to us and then answer any questions council might have. Give us the presentation.
So Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity to be here today and update you on this partnership for development progress. This is a initiative, this is an initiative to create a way for Amarillo to grow. So just quickly, a mission statement and a vision statement for the group is to create a development focused, based approach to continue sustainable growth in City of Amarillo. For development to occur, the city must find a sustainable and predictable source to increase lots available for development without putting development costs on Amarillo property taxpayers. That also goes in the enterprise funds to ratepayers. But this, as you'll see in this update, this is a community-wide stakeholder engaged process, as we've been discussing this in the last couple of meetings. And this is our opportunity for, not only for staff, but elected officials and our community partners to coordinate in this effort. But one of the things that initiated this is in the fine print on this screen, is we've heard from our community that the lack of lots and other things have been pushing development to the county. So this is a direct attempt to, to address those concerns directly head on. Okay? A little history of why we're here and where we're at related to development. I just wanted to throw up the, the population over the history of Amarillo and, and those moments of growth that you see throughout our history. We're in that, that growth moment and you can see that we continue to grow consistently. What this is, is when we hit this threshold of 200,000 people, we need to have this at a different level and have our ability to serve our community at that level. Put another way, this next slide shows it. Here's the annexation history of that same timeframe, from the 1890s until now. And I don't want to go into much detail, but you can see the growth over those decades with this kind of slide and related to development. What does that mean for us currently and why are we where we're at? A brief history yet. Building permits. You can see from this slide that building permits, these are single family detached building permits, homes if you will, over the last decade. And you can see that we hit a low point and made some changes in the development process in 2013 and 14 and that developed, we did a subdivision ordinance in 16, we created capital development, some CIP processes in 2016. And you can see that it's had a positive impact, but from what we heard from the community that we still have improvements that we need to make. And that's what this program and initiative will take us to. Again, why are we here? You look at development over the history of City of Amarillo and what we see is that there are critical infrastructure needs that were put off. This is an example of a drainage channel that, and you can see the erosion from the satellites, of erosion when a subdivision was approved and then that was not addressed and was just pushed off to either the taxpayers or future generations and that erosion channel is still there. And that, and you see the pictures in this, that, that it was just a very basic approach to that erosion channel. And those challenges exist all over the city. This is an example of that infrastructure not being able to be put in at the time of the development or any time in between now due to these same budget constraints that y'all are talking about during this budget. So here's another example, and this one is a road example. This is down on 46 by Osage, where the development has grown, houses and development occurred, but there was never any improvements to the road itself. And that's the bottom picture, where those infrastructures are lacking and that can create the traffic challenges, the drainage challenges and all those infrastructure challenges that we deal with, that have been put off from one generation to the next. Here's another example of Arden Road and this is an example of where the voters approved in 2016 the improvements to make those subdivision improvements, including this drainage improvement for the Arden Road itself. But you can see in the pictures above that the subdivision process that we had in place always moved the subdivisions forward in approval without considerations for that offsite improvements. And you can see now that the taxpayers actually funded Arden Road in a 2016 bond election and, and that's what we're trying to address with this plan. What do we do with the future and get that stakeholder input? So I know this is a little wordy, but that's what, that's where we are. Decades ago, we were able to adequately address this issue. However, the combination of below average taxation, above average participation in the city in the most recent years has created where growth and development is challenged. And we need it to be in a leading, we need to be in a position where we're leading the way to add lots for long-term growth. I'm not going to read this to you verbatim, but that's the combination of what's up there. But the offsite infrastructure has been pushed back and pushed off from generation or to the taxpayer. And, and when that occurs, such as the tax increase in 2016 related to those improvements, what suffers is our maintenance, parks, streets. And those funding sources that y'all are struggling with in this current budget is where that source of, of that challenge has come from. Those compete against each other for that available funding. And that lack of a plan for that infrastructure is impacting our ability to add lots and that long-term growth for Amarillo. Maintenance cost of existing infrastructure increases exponentially as we go through time. So the cost of maintaining a street from the 1950s now is much more an increased as the years go on. So what is sacrificed in that is those improvements for parks, amenities and those other things, but it also sacrifices our ability to maintain those existing streets, infrastructure, drainage improvements, water and sewer improvements, without having to go to the taxpayers or ratepayers to do it. As you've seen over your tenure, you've seen rate increases in water and sewer to cover those growth components within that, within water and sewer. You've also seen those rate increases cover replacement. But what we're looking at is how do we create a system? So again, why can't we just stay the same as we are? Because, and I have to credit staff with a lot of this, but this statement here, predictable unpredictability is basically what we've been doing over the last few decades from a funding source of public improvements in the development arena. When you look at it from that stage, that is some of the criticisms that we hear from our developers, that, that we don't have a consistent way within our budgeting process to bring those projects forward for funding of public improvements related to new development. It continues to be a challenge, as you can see on this slide. The current model does not provide for the growth and needs of the community in a sustainable manner. And what does provide comes from the cost of the taxpayer and the ratepayers. And that model is not sustainable. And we've seen that. We've heard that from our community. So what is the result of our current model? Substandard service to the new subdivisions. I challenge you to find a developer that says we've met every need in a timely manner for what they want. And we hear that. Stifle development market because of that lack of infrastructure. When you look at these places and, and our development, Economic Development Corporation brings customers in, one of the challenges that we see is infrastructure related to that. But taxpayers paying for infrastructure costs, that has been a result of this model that we do. Example is the 2016 bond. Future generations covering. If you recall the first set of pictures I looked at, there's a drainage channel that was just, has been put off from generation to generation. And that occurs in multiple locations related to subdivisions. So the bottom one here, Amarillo can't afford not to, and that's where we're at. Bringing those stakeholders in with you to find out where we're going to go with this process. What is the future of Amarillo? We did set a goal with this internally. We want that number to be 1,000 lots available, so that we're well ahead of those permits. And then we can readjust that goal as we go into this and we see how Amarillo grows. But the first thing what we want to do is accomplish that there's 1,000 lots available in ahead of those permits that you saw on that previous slide.
And y'all might ask, where does 1,000 come from? Well, that's a bigger number than what we're doing right now. It is a goal. It is aspirational. And the, ultimately, the objective of this PDP, Partnership for Development Progress process, is going to create a program, a policy, a process, rather, that is financially sustainable and will allow development to happen as fast as the market wants to develop it. It, the sky's the limit as to how fast it can go once we're finished with this. So that's why we need all of our stakeholders. And our stakeholders are not just developers and builders and tradesmen and realtors and all the other people who are directly involved in that market. There are also residents who might want a place to buy or who might pay taxes. So all of those things. Every one of those people is a stakeholder in this process. We need their involvement and their input to be able to come to a, a resulting process that will facilitate growth as fast as our community wants in a way that respects every single one of those stakeholders.
So that gets me to the slide. And thank you, Jared. You covered most of the list on this slide for me. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
But as you recall, the last discussion that we had, each one of you were talking about addressing stakeholders. And we've got those listed here, and there are others. But how do we get to that goal? How do we reach that goal and have a system in place that provides for that ongoing sustained development? So meet with those local stakeholders. And, and the opportunity, as y'all discussed this, is for this information to be available for you to meet those stakeholders you're talking about. And you see the number five is appoint the PDP committee, a committee that helps guide us through this process and identify those challenges, along with a hired consultant. Again, we talked about, last time we talked about this, would come in for your approval here in the next few weeks. You're going to see a proposal for a consultant to be hired to help guide us through this process such that we can identify those mechanisms, what's available for us to use through the stakeholder input, through that expert knowledge of what other communities have done, what's best practices, what is available in Amarillo, what has Amarillo done in the past, what is Amarillo doing now, and what does Amarillo need to do in the future, throughout all of those groups together. But the next steps then are to appoint this committee, hire that consultant, appoint this committee, and then see the bottom one, utilize that input from this committee to identify that path forward. And we, notice there are no solutions recommended in this presentation. We're going to rely on that input and go forward in a manner that involves those stakeholders and everybody's needs, including you as elected officials, to guide us through that process and regular updates. So with that, there's some, I'm open to answer any questions that you would have, anything else that you would like to see us include. But I'm ready for questions or discussion at this point.
What's your timeframe on this process to reach the goal from step one to step six? How long are you expecting to be able to obtain a plan to move forward?
Over the next two months, we would anticipate to be through step five. Identifying step six is going to be predicated on what that input is. So we would accept, expect to have a long way down the road by the first of the year on step six, including identifying where we're going. But step six involves y'all's commitment to helping appoint that committee through this process. So I'm going to say step five is an easier time to delineate over the next couple of months. We, month and a half, two months, we can be at step five.
So in other words, you're going to have a, something before us about hiring a consultant in less than two months?
Yes.
Is that an RFP or an RFQ process?
It's already advertised. It's, it's a request for qualifications.
Oh, so it's an RFQ. Okay.
This process is a very detailed process. Like you said, a lot of stakeholders, it gets into some very technical information. I have seen these processes take over two years. I've seen them take less than 18 months. We're going to push very hard, work very diligently with our, our committee that y'all appoint, and, and work very hard with our consultants, whoever they are, to get a process done that will help us move forward as quickly as possible. But I would not expect that to take much less than 18 months if we can get there. So I would say early in 2023 is when we would be shooting to, to have this.
In place.
Ready to execute and implement.
Okay.
And facilitate growth.
Some other things you're going to see coordinated along that timeframe. You're going to see plan, our specification manuals updated, our development policy manual updated, including how we approach that. But you're going to see ordinance updates. You're going to see the things coordinated as we step through this process and identify those needs. There's going to be a lot of things brought forward, especially manuals and updates to the subdivision ordinance that coordinate with, with current state law. It was updated in 2016. There's been some state law changes. So we're going to bring a lot of things forward coordinated with this, including comprehensive plan update that coordinates with whatever the outcome of this is, that that's coordinated in with the comprehensive plan that Andrew and his team will be bringing forward, that's in this budget that you're talking about approving. So things like the comprehensive plan are going to tie into this process. And these things will all work together and at the same time. It's going to be a very in-depth look at this process. So these ideas that come from these stakeholders and the other stakeholders that we identify can be brought into those processes, whether that's specifications of water and sewer, streets, roads, subdivision ordinance related to sureties, and whatever those items that come forward in, those will all be brought forward in this process.
We talked last time, y'all had great ideas and suggestions for how we could reach out and engage the community. I thought it was a great idea. We talked about setting those meetings up. I'm thinking that maybe it's a good idea for those meetings to be posted so that all of us could be there to hear the feedback from each one of these different groups. And if that's okay with you guys, then I think let's just ask the staff to arrange those meetings. And then we'll get notice as they're posted about when they're happening. And we can all be there to listen to the feedback and, and have a better view of, of the feedback that we're getting as we... And, and I think each one of those meetings will be an open opportunity. We can have a sign-up list. Would you be willing to serve on a committee? And then we'll gather up those names and have a look at them, the five of us, and put a committee together. Anybody have concerns about that? Okay, Mr. City Manager, any reason why we can't go that route?
No ma'am. That'll work. We'll have all of our staff that are setting up each one of these meetings and are working as liaisons, coordinating with City Secretary, New York City Secretary, to make sure they're all posted.
Okay, Floyd.
How many would it be? 10 or 12 groups?
Yeah, I think at least six, and probably subcontractors need two or three. Yes. So what'd you say, 10 or 12? I think that's probably right.
I need some more meetings to go to.
Yeah, I think that's probably right. So, okay. Questions for Floyd? This was...
I've got one question.
Yes?
I like your goal of having 1,000 lots available any one time. How many lots are available today? We don't have an exact count. Nobody's been tracking available lots in certain parameters. But we estimate, we're working with PRAD, approximately 900 or a few more. So this is a 10% increase within the first step. Again, those goals will be adjusted. If we have success or, or whatever we see in the future, we'll adjust those goals. But we anticipate right now, from what we saw in PRAD, approximately 900 plus.
Now that assumes, that takes into account all of our available lots for development inside the City of Amarillo.
That was my question.
It might not be in areas where people want to develop, or at least do new large developments. But that does include a lot of infill and other things.
Those would be lots available to build on.
Yeah, so all over the city.
Inside the city limits.
Not empty lots that are undeveloped.
We're not talking about the ETJ.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, that's what my...
But, but this process will facilitate ETJ development as fast as, as the market wants to drive it. Well, it will facilitate development and annexation of ETJ as fast as it wants to do that.
So in, in all of this, do we also talk about exactly? Because I, I know we have some jurisdiction over the ETJ and how things happen, because I know there are some communities that are in the ETJ that will be difficult at best to ever annex them into the city. And so going forward, are we going to have a plan that basically these ETJ projects are going to be able to be turned over, can be annexed at some point into the city without there being a significant amount of difficulty? Because we know that there is some.
The annexability of an ETJ subdivision is, is a huge component of the comprehensive plan. And so the answer to your question is yes. That will be evaluated with the comprehensive plan and coordinated with the outcome of this and subdivision changes that get us to a contemporary look at that annexable product that's being delivered in the ETJ. Jared, did you have more to add?
Yeah, yeah. The, the, whatever we do through the comprehensive plan process and through this process is going to also be informed and will have to be informed by recent changes in state law with regard to how annexations can take place, how much approval has to be, you have to have of those proposed, of those that you're considering annexation. Really, what's going to happen is in the future, we will very likely, unless we have another significant opposite direction move with regard to state law, which is unlikely, we will only be annexing new developments, not existing developments. Because those existing developments would require 100% approval of those people. And it would have to be in the city's interest for them to even request annexation in the first place, which is very unlikely, because a lot of the infrastructure doesn't exist, like water, sewer, things like that. Because they're on septic, they're on wells. Many times, if that subdivision was built prior to the point at which the city did a very good job of making sure that the street infrastructure and drainage infrastructure was up to city standards, they're not. So the cost to annex those areas would not be in our citizens' interest, because it would be very expensive. So we're really going to work with our county judges, look at doing things that they will find very valuable and beneficial, and doing things like potentially reducing the size of the ETJ in certain areas. You know, at least having those conversations.
Any other questions? Okay, so I think that steps are for y'all to move forward, getting those meetings scheduled ASAP.
Thank you.
Okay, item 1D is an update on the Civic Center Garfield P3 Committee.
We've got Managing Director Andrew Freeman, who's going to give us a very quick presentation just on what the, the timeline is for the work that Garfield is doing and with regard to phase one. And then answer any questions council might have.
Yes, sir. So just a brief update on what's taken place since the contract was approved by City Council on June 22nd. Immediately after the contract approval, of course, Garfield started to become more familiar with all the studies and plans that have taken place on the Civic Center already, as well was what was proposed in the bond proposal and everything that's been discussed the last couple of years. They also scheduled a field trip for the Civic Center. They came to town, they met with Sherman, the city manager, Kevin Starbuck, and Jerry Danforth. They toured the facility. They brought in an operations management consultant to weigh in on the, the current facility and any changes they might recommend based on their expertise. And they also regrouped with management at the end of the day to kind of talk through some of, at least the initial feedback they had from touring the facility and studying the plans. After that, they began drafting some ideas, some concepts, minor, really what it's come to is they're looking at minor adjustments to the existing facility. And they're really honing in on what kind of phases would make the most sense to make this a more financially feasible project in the near future versus long term. So that's currently what they're working on right now. The next steps, or at least the immediate next steps, is a meeting of the P3 Citizens Committee. So we're still formalizing all the members of that committee. We know the original five are all still interested in serving and are very willing to start as soon as possible, which is good. I know there's also discussion of including additional members on that to participate in that process. So we'd like to hold that meeting very soon, just to get their feedback on this initial work that Garfield has done. After those discussions and getting their feedback, we want to hold public meetings as well. Still be determined how many, but hold those public meetings and really bring everybody up to speed on the discussion so far and what we are working on. They are also working on drafting a pro forma for the facility based on some of the phasing and the minor refinements that they've discussed on the initial design. And then they're going to be engaging pricing partners, both at the local and national level and with Jerry Danforth, since he's so good at that as well with his past experience, to really analyze the construction costs, particularly in the market we're in, and what that looks like moving forward. So that is a very brief and quick update, but we are making a lot of progress. There are also no guarantees, but anticipating they really want to get the report wrapped up for Thanksgiving so sooner than we thought, just so we'd have a, a good idea of where things are heading by the end of the year.
So when are they coming back?
To town.
So we were anticipating we'd probably try and meet with the Citizens Committee via Zoom, just so we could do it more quickly. But then they are free for us to schedule getting them in town very soon to hold those public meetings, based on our needs.
Okay. They'll come back anytime we need them to, is what you're saying?
Yes, exactly. As soon as we can schedule it and, and get everything ready.
Okay, great. I know I had visited with Councilmember Stanley about some names from him. We were all a part of appointing that first committee. So Cole, I know you brought three names and visited with people. And those guys are green light from your point of view. Is that right?
Yes, ma'am. They're, they're in.
Okay, so that's Mason Rogers, Christian Eathall, and Noah Williams. Is that right?
That's correct, those three.
Great. Okay, thank you for having those conversations. So we'll try to get that finalized then and get that meeting scheduled. Any other questions, council? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. I think we can do the next two items and then take a restroom break if y'all need to. Item 1E is Policy 3 for the City Council Policy, the N's policies. Anybody have questions or a place they want to start in talking about that? I think the N's policy is the one that's the most difficult to, if you've not worked under an N's policy before, just to conceptualize. It's, it's like a funnel. So rather than saying, here's a big list of the things that you can't do, instead you just create a funnel that says, here's where we want to go. And you can do anything, city manager and staff, inside that funnel without having to inefficiently come back and forth to the council to get their input and seek their input. So that's really the idea behind the N's policy. It's more a list of what you can't do than it is listing out everything you can do. And it's five pages. And it's five pages. Any questions or concerns, recommended changes?
I liked it the way that we did it. I thought it was very good, very concise, pretty plain. I like it.
It is a policy that we drafted?
Yes.
And it's about two and a half years old. And we've looked at it before to see if it needed to be revised, but it does say in our policies that we will look at these every year, so that's why we're here.
As we should. I don't see any changes at this particular time. So, lots of good information that we put together. I have quite a few things highlighted that really stood out to me, but I am good with the policies as they are right now. And I do agree, we need to continue to look at those every year and make sure that we need to, you know, that we don't need to update, change, add, delete.
Councilmember Stanley, anything stood out to you, or do you want to give input on?
No, ma'am, not really. I think, you know, we went over this in our workshop, and I have a pretty good handle on it. So I don't see anything that would change on my side.
Okay. Councilmember Smith?
I'm sorry, you kind of review that each year. I'm okay with it.
Okay, great. We will move on then. Item 1F is updates from committees, and we have parks and beautification. Councilmember Sauer, if you have an update on that?
Yeah, I just got through that one.
This will be a fresh update then?
Yeah, that's, as a matter of fact, Sherman asked me if I'd rather do this the week after, and I told him no, I'd just as soon do it while it's still fresh on my mind. So, this one was, we were just really pretty much considering the different things that we had to discuss were the beautification project. We didn't get adequate responses on our RFQ either time. And so, what's happening is, is we're going back and trying to kind of reassess and revalue exactly what needs to happen to make this become a successful thing. We, you know, we've had great success with the mural project. And so this one is a little bit different, because it requires, it's a whole different set of things, as opposed to people coming and presenting their building and presenting somebody that is going to do a mural. Whenever we're talking about a beautification project, that's a completely different thing. So, we've kind of begun to, well, we haven't kind of, we've internalized things and are beginning to work back through, what are our, what are the possibilities of different things? One of them being working towards, kind of helping people understand that this is going to be something that we're going to want to do going forward, and maybe even looking at the different parks and making an installation site where, whenever these projects do come, whether they're a mural project, or it's a, some sort of an art project, so that we've got a place where we know that they're going to be placed, and where it can be real successful. And that can actually be done with those kind of funds, and just begin to get some of those things kind of in place. We've got the Thompson Park Pool update. Both of those pads are in place, and that's basically the pad sites for where the projects that Jacob Breeding is preparing, who is doing those two projects. That whole setup is going to be what we'd like to see be replicated in other parks, as far as being able to then move a project from one place to another, so they could go around in different parts of the city. So, the, both pads are in place, pieces are not going to be, are in place yet, Mr. Breeding's not quite finished yet. So what we are talking about would be, whenever he does finish the one, that would be at the entrance, that one would be installed, and maybe we would take his second one, since it would be on the lazy river, and maybe if we've set these places up in different parks, we could start out by making for sure that that project is made available and put it in one of the other parks until the next year, whenever the pool opens back up, and then put it back in. It's just giving us a possibility to really begin to let people in the city understand what great opportunities that we could have. And it's culturally important for our city that we're being able to allow the art community to be able to express themselves. I think it's important. We see that when we go to other places and visit, and I think it's, it's part of who we are here in Amarillo, and I'm looking forward to seeing some of those kind of things happen. We're also going to go through, so we've already done three iterations of the mural grant project. So, they're putting, put together a committee that's basically going to go back and look at that mural grant project. I mean, it's really smart, just like all these other things, like planning and zoning, like transportation, like all of these others, that we kind of go back and visit them on a frequent basis to make for sure, are we still being relevant? Are there things that we need to change? Are there different things, like, we'd like to put branding for Amarillo involved in these projects and be able to do that. So how does that look? Do we need to change the scope? Do we need to do several different things? And so, they're going to consider that. It's still really fruitful. There's a lot that'll come out of it, so I'm looking forward to the next year.
Good update. Any questions for Dr. Sauer? Anything we want to talk about putting on a future agenda or requesting a report from the City Manager?
Yes, Mayor. In regards to the American Rescue Plan funds, and Mr. City Manager and I have certainly talked about that, but I know that I've had several citizens approach me about a status update, as well as some businesses. So if we could have that on our next agenda, which I think is August 24th?
24th, yes, ma'am.
And I also know that Ms. Laura Storres and her staff, that they have been kind of, if you will, combing through all of that information, trying to read the federal guidelines and determine where we can and cannot spend those funds. So if we could have an update, you know, at that particular time, and then we can, you know, let our citizens know what our intent is as a council, maybe to do that.
So we can have a detailed presentation on that, seek council's input, go into detail about available places we can spend it, projects we can spend it on, take input from council, and then at the following meeting, bring a recommended spending plan or program plan that will reflect the input the council's provided, and let y'all vote to go forward with it or modify it.
And again, thank you. And Mr. City Manager and I, we've had several discussions on this, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, let's take a bathroom break and come back in about five or 10 minutes. Thank you. I think we're ready, if y'all are about ready. Okay, we left off at the consent agenda. Anything there that needs to come off for discussion or questions, council?
Yes, ma'am. Get myself synced up there. I need to pull item number F off of the consent agenda, please. I'm going to abstain from that.
Okay, we'll pull item F to have a separate vote. Anything else, council? Okay, let's go ahead and entertain a motion on the consent agenda minus item F.
Yes, Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item F.
It's been moved by Councilmember Powell, and seconded by Councilmember Sauer, to approve the items listed on the consent agenda with the exception of item F. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that item passes with a 5-0 vote, and we will give Councilmember Stanley a moment to leave the room, please.
Okay. Mayor, I move to approve item F on the consent agenda as it is presented.
We have a motion from Councilmember Powell, and it's been seconded by Councilmember Sauer to approve item F as listed on the consent agenda. Any further questions or discussion on that item? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes with a 4-0 vote. Councilmember Stanley abstained, and was not present in the room for any discussion or the vote. Welcome back, Cole. Moving on to the non-consent agenda, item 3A. Mr. City Manager?
All right, we have a presentation from Andrew Freeman, Managing Director of Planning and Special Projects. Then we'll have a public hearing on this item, and then council will be able to discuss and consider it.
All right. Bear with me as I read the caption here. I'll pull up the map so you can kind of follow along with the caption. But number one is rezoning 294.88 acres of land in Miller Heights, North Heights, University Heights, Amarillo Heights addition, from manufactured home district to multifamily District 1, and multifamily District 1s with specific use permit 106, and light industrial district to residential District 2. Also wanted to note that the original notice include 444.89 acres in Webster Heights addition and Section 224. The second area is rezoning 22.82 acres in Amarillo Heights, Charlotte Heights, Downing Highlands, University Heights, and W.N. Moore's additions, from residential District 3, manufactured home district and light industrial district, to multifamily District 1. And the original notice include 38.27 additional acres, or no, total of 38.27 acres in Webster Heights addition and Section 224. The third one is rezoning of 7.05 acres in Miller Heights addition, from multifamily District 1 and multifamily District 1 with a specific use permit 100 to general retail district. The original notice include 58.84 acres with Wild Horse, University Heights, Glidden and Sanborn, T&amp;K and GT Davis subdivisions in Sections 169, 188, and 189. Number four is 78.98 acres in the Matthew Hooks resubdivision of Block 49 Miller Heights, Miller Heights, North Heights, Clarence Watley subdivision of Wheatley's, five acre tract and University Heights addition from multifamily District 1 to moderate density districts. Then number five is 29.17 acres of land in Miller Heights, North Heights, and University Heights addition from multifamily District 1 with specific use permit 85 and multifamily District 1 to neighborhood service district. So just a brief overview, this project has come before City Council for discussion previously. So just touching on the original recommendation, it was for 650.15 acres in the North Heights neighborhood plan area and just a little to the southwest, across the tracks from North Heights. The desired outcomes, to address incompatibilities and to create a predictable and orderly future development pattern, protect single-family homes and encourage more single-family home development by removing industrial zoning and multifamily zoning from areas that are already residential in character, encouraging retail and business uses that are more compatible for neighborhood development, and reducing manufactured home zoning district. As far as the staff analysis, it was found that it was consistent with the vision and strategies in the North Heights neighborhood plan, which is an amendment to the comprehensive plan adopted in 2010. It is consistent with the adopted future land use map for the area adopted by that same comp plan in 2010. It would better align the zoning pattern in North Heights with the neighborhood unit concept, including the Amarillo Comprehensive Plan, and it was also analyzed for the impact on neighboring properties, suitability for the present zoning, and the changes would promote public health and safety and general welfare of the community. This plan was also in coordination with the Subcommittee of the North Heights Advisory Association, and the goals of the project overall were as follows. Align the North Heights neighborhood zoning pattern with zoning practices consistent throughout the rest of Amarillo, including the neighborhood unit concept. Implementing land use recommendations from the North Heights neighborhood plan to address those incompatible zoning districts, and encourage reinvestment and redevelopment in a way that is consistent with the neighborhood's original character. So staff's recommendation to the planned zoning was based on this comprehensive review and assessment, and was developed in consultation with the Subcommittee, as mentioned before, and found that it was consistent with the vision and strategies of the North Heights plan, future land use, or future land map plan for the area, as well as meeting the goals of better aligning North Heights with the neighborhood unit concept overall. This next slide is a overview of the existing zoning in the area, and just so you can see what is currently in place. You've got light industrial to the west, multifamily really in the core, light commercial to the south, the manufactured home district there to the east. And then your next slide was the original proposal of the 650.15 acres that you can see in front of you. The residential R2 would be zoning primarily light industrial, multifamily 1 and manufactured home to R2, residential 2 district. The intent being to remove existing single-family residential land uses from industrial zoning, protect future incompatible development near the homes, encourage infill and reinvestment, and reduce the number of manufactured homes. It's recommended throughout the central core of the plan area and the large vacant tract in the northwest corner. Multifamily 1, that would be the 38.27 acres, primarily from light industrial to manufactured home, with the intent being to buffer commercial uses along the corridors from core single-family areas, recommended along Amarillo Boulevard. Moderate density, 78.98 acres, primarily multifamily 1 to moderate density, with the intent being to buffer businesses and retail uses along the corridors to provide a transition and intensity of uses to core single-family areas, allow missing middle housing types like duplexes, triplexes, tiny homes, and smaller apartment buildings that provide more housing choices for the neighborhood. This is recommended along North Hughes Street and Northwest 18th. General retail consisted of 58.84 acres, zoned from multifamily 1 and light commercial, the intent being to encourage uses that are more compatible to neighborhood residential along Amarillo Boulevard, and helping Hughes Street transition to a small business corridor over time. And the last area would be neighborhood services, 29.17 acres from primarily multifamily. The intent being to allow both residential, single-family, and moderate-density housing types, and low-impact businesses, while creating a walkable mixed-use corridor where services, jobs, and amenities are accessible to nearby residential. This is recommended on Northwest 18th Avenue and parts of North Hughes Street. So, this was the original proposal, what went before P&amp;Z, and was also sent to the neighborhood. Plan and zoning met, and they recommend approval with modifications and a 5-2 vote at their July 19th meeting, which reduced the total acreage to 432.90. The areas they changed, which I'll follow up with a map after this, the areas south and west of the railroad tracks and north Amarillo Boulevard be eliminated from the rezoning initiative. Land north of 15th and west of North Russ, aka the Chapman Land, is eliminated from this initiative. The land along Amarillo Boulevard that is currently zoned light commercial shall remain light commercial and not be changed to general retail. So those were the three changes basically removed from consideration. And then there was a motion included, or language included within this motion that said that any property that will be downzoned by this initiative should be allowed to be used for any use that is currently zoned for the life of the property. The life of the property shall be defined as any property that does not have water, sewer, and electrical service for 24 consecutive months. So this is a slide, excuse me, just showing, the area is proposed to be removed by P&amp;Z's recommendation with the 5-2 vote. Most of it is on the western side of the North Heights neighborhood, and then the southwest part where the tracks run, and then the GR removed on Amarillo Boulevard. Staff's original recommendations presented to P&amp;Z were based on best practices for equitable land use plan to create a sound path forward for the North Heights neighborhood plan area. Staff believe the recommendations result in an orderly land use framework that enhances the historic character of North Heights and creates predictability for reinvestment in the types of projects envisioned by the plan in the future, including housing rehabilitation, single-family home development, and small business opportunities. So with that said, council before you today has the option to consider P&amp;Z's recommendation, go a different route altogether, really the choice that city councils to make. I did want to answer a few questions that we've gotten since P&amp;Z, just to add more context to the conversation. We had a question of why the southwest of the railroad was included in the plan, since it is outside the neighborhood plan boundary. While it was outside the boundary, it doesn't impact the North Heights area. The development characteristics are the same as the area north of the railroad tracks, which is currently primarily residential homes and industrial zoning. McMasters provides important connectivity from Amarillo Boulevard to undeveloped land north of the railroad tracks in the boundary. The best land use practice would be to not leave a strip of industrial zoning between two residenceally zoned areas, so staff recommended including it to further the goals of the comprehensiveness of the proposal. It was not a request by the Subcommittee of the North The best land use practice would be to not leave a strip of industrial zoning between two residenceally zoned areas that staff recommended, including it to further the goals of the comprehensiveness of the proposal. It was not a request by the subcommittee of the North Heights Advisory Association, so it was strictly staff input in the process. Another question was, why is general retail recommended along Amarillo Boulevard? Since it is a state highway, is it typical to have certain zoning along state highways? That part included in this proposal is primarily vacant. General retail is an opportunity to make this part of the corridor more compatible with the residential areas to the north. It is a state highway, but it's also common to have different commercial zoning along these corridors. Parts of Amarillo Boulevard are also zoned general retail, and it serves North Heights in the same way that Coulter and Sanci serve Southwest Amarillo. Both of those corridors are primarily zoned general retail. In addition, this was a specific action item in the North Heights plan, which was amending zoning patterns to promote appropriate mix of businesses along designated corridors. Hughes Street, south of Amarillo Boulevard, diversifying commercial mix along Amarillo Boulevard, west of Hughes. Another question we received was how are the existing businesses along Amarillo Boulevard impacted by this proposal? There are two businesses south of Amarillo Boulevard that have portions of their lot currently zoned light commercial, and the other portion is light industrial. So currently, they already have a non-conforming issue in place. So if it was changed to general retail, it'd basically be the same situation, not impacting the existing businesses as long as they stay in operation.
What if it doesn't change because they're non-compliant?
It's still a non-compliance now with the, because it's splitting, because it's splitting zoning categories as it is now. Right.
Okay.
One, auto repair business will be non-conforming. However, staff, as part of the zoning rewrite process, is recommending an SUP for auto repair businesses, which would give them a specific use permit route to go if they decide to create that, that business. I don't believe it is currently in operation. It's a proposed plan for the auto repair shop. It's currently operating. Okay. So they were concerned about expanding and having issues there. We thought the specific use permit route would give them some flexibility in the future to expand. There are no other non-conforming uses. As found in our inventory, there are two churches, two education institution uses, one park, 10 vacant tracks, and one motel that's vacant, and two retail buildings along Amarillo Boulevard. And then we also received a question about existing non-conforming businesses and how they came to exist in the neighborhood, as well as what action we could take to enforce existing zoning. It's likely a combination of, of different things that have taken place over the last few decades. The allowed use in a particular district can change over time. Buildings have likely been occupied without a certificate of occupancy or proper permitting, and then the use of lots without obtaining a certificate of occupancy. One way we could address this is doing a certificate of occupancy audit, followed by active additional enforcement. Certificate of occupancy is really the main, primary way we can assure that the property is being used in the way that it's intended to with the proper zoning. And then just in general, and related to that topic, was does code enforcement patrol the neighborhood for code violations, including weeds, burned out or vacant, unmaintained properties? And we have a system in place through building safety with our code compliance officers where they are assigned certain neighborhoods or districts, and they go out and look for violations such as tall grass, weeds, unlawful accumulations, dilapidated structures, and other zoning violations, as well as citizens being able to submit concerns that we then follow up on. And as part of that process, if we're out there checking a certain project that's been reported to us, we'll take a wider look at the neighborhood and see what are the issues we might be able to address as well. Just to touch on the community engagement summary, the North Heights neighborhood plan process, of course, was adopted January 2017. There was a North Heights Association webinar and outreach in November 2020. Postcards, mailing, and the city hosted Zoom session were held around that same time period. March 1st, 2021 was a P and Z meeting with legal notices and public hearings. It was tabled at that meeting. April public workshops were then held, three different workshops with informational mailings sent out. May, North Heights Advisory Association postcards went out with additional two informational meetings. And then June 14th and July 19th, there were P and Z meetings that also include legal notices and public hearings. We did also, just to point out, we did receive a petition against the proposal, which is something we looked at in case it would trigger a super majority or four out of five vote of city council, but it did not meet the threshold to require that. But I did want to make you aware that we did receive a petition.
Yes, we have that.
Should have a copy of that.
Andrew, how many meetings were, did you just list off? I couldn't keep up as I was trying to count.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10?
10 different meetings.
Yes, ma'am.
Over?
Last year.
A 12-month process?
And it's been working prior to that. Emily had multiple meetings with the advisory committee prior to that, and then ongoing throughout the process to vet the recommendations and make sure, from the staff's perspective, that it met zoning guidelines, recommend criteria of the comprehensive plan, and it's not just changes being made for the sake of change.
So Andrew, do we know how many zoning meetings took place during the North Heights Advisory Association meetings?
Oh, during just their regular board meetings?
Yes, during their, not, not the, not the board meeting, but the, the community meeting itself.
Just on this topic?
Yes.
There were at least three or four just hosted by them, and then another three just with city staff coordinating with them. So we had some where Emily went and gave multiple presentations, and then they followed up after where Justin North Heights held a meeting to, to continue the conversation.
So maybe, maybe six or seven meetings within the North Heights Advisory Association.
Okay.
Being involved, yes, yes, ma'am.
So there were, the one thing was, let's say, west of the railroad tracks that the staff recommended was not requested by the neighborhood association.
Correct.
And then the general retail was or was not requested by the neighborhood. Was requested by the neighborhood.
Yes.
So can you tell me what the, what the request would be specifically accomplishing? If it, you know, if it didn't stay light commercial, it could be general retail or light commercial underneath that code. But then you would have an allowance for like an automotive repair shop that you wouldn't have in general retail?
Right, just more intense light commercial uses, yes.
As a personal feeling, do you have a feeling on how, how impactful that is, you know, from a planner's standpoint? With it being, you know, the Amarillo Boulevard or state highway?
Just based on this area, I think it could have some impacts, just knowing what's taking place to the south. I think it's more just their, since it is vacant, this is your chance to try and get uses in that would support the neighborhood and their needs. And I think general retail is more of a goal than, than light commercial.
And I know that we parceled this phase one up top, phase two down below the Boulevard. Are you saying that your intention would be to be general retail on the south side of the Boulevard?
No.
No.
No, the, the part two's got a totally different scenario and recommendations based on it being more industrial and commercial in nature, but still trying to meet the goals. But it, it won't look identical to this side.
Okay. And then just a question to the council, are we being presented with two options here to be discussed? Or are we being presented with P and Z's option?
You've been presented P and Z's option the way it's in your packet, the way the ordinance is written, but since its first reading, you can, council has a choice to do anything. They could either go with staff recommendation, P and Z's, or change it altogether, vote no, start over. And then between first and second reading, we worked with legal to revise the ordinance to meet basically what you approve.
Yeah, we'll go with whatever council wants.
Yes.
You have two recommendations, but we're not bound by either of them.
Correct. It's not, it's not turned on either.
And it's on now. So I'm looking at P and Z's recommendation, and I'm looking at the original proposal, and I, I see some disparity that is, is really questionable to me. And that one part is you, they have made a decision to extend the R2 in the middle of the two pieces that they cut out.
Correct.
And if I'm looking at the existing zoning, that was all existing zoning industrial, is that right? Industrial one?
Light industrial one, and then heavy commercial and light commercial on the Boulevard there.
And I'm sure that they were originally set up that way because the smelter was across the street, which is now basically untouchable land.
Correct.
And so, so it's not needed anymore. So I, I, so the first thing is, I can kind of see where they're coming with removing. I, I have a hard time with removing the R2 and letting it go back to industrial light. But, but before we talk about that, that's west of the tracks. That part that is north of the tracks that was removed, I would love a really good explanation for why it was removed, because I would think that you would want to have some continuity in there so that you, you've left this light industrial, and that could destroy the whole thing that you're trying to set up with the residential part back in that area if something, if that's not included in there.
Andrew, would you put that existing zoning up so we can all see it? And then Eddie, I'm sorry to bother you, but would you just quickly walk us back through by pointing out?
Okay, so what's happened is all of this was changed to R2 residential. Okay, so, but the one that P and Z has, they cut this section out and left it R2, and then they removed this, and they removed this. And the problem that I'm having with these is this is still light industrial, and this is light industrial, and it potentially could just mess up this whole process of trying to have some continuity and allow a neighborhood like any other neighborhood. Let's go to the southwest side of town. It's like putting the light industrial right next to the Greenways or to one of those other places. And so I guess I really want to know, there's got to be some really sound evidence on why you're going to change that and turn that back to light industrial, because I'm going to have an impossible time voting for that. I'll be honest with you.
I know that's the Chapman property. I know he has a representative here that's most likely going to talk during the public hearing, but we did have discussions, and he really, at the time, didn't have a set plan for the property. Basically, just didn't want it to be, be touched, just didn't want the change.
So there is no justifiable reason?
Not that we share with us as far as a future plan for the property.
Okay, well, that's what I would like to hear, is a justifiable reason for the exception.
Mr. Shane, you're listening, right? Okay, good. We're glad you're here, because we're looking forward to, to hearing the thoughts, so.
Yes.
And so then I guess my next question is, is why would you, that west, would you remove it? I, I can kind of see the fact you've got the railroad tracks that run through there. That's pretty significantly separation. I can, I, I think I can, can get to that one. I just can't get to the R2, removing the R2 on that northern section.
And what we found through the process of across the tracks, there are at least a few businesses that would turn into non-conforming situations that we didn't initially see when we made the recommendation. But there is a good number of residential that is currently non-conforming, because they're not allowed in light industrial today.
Are you talking about?
The southwest.
Where are those businesses, Andrew?
They are very close to the tracks, just on the southwest side of the tracks.
Okay, not in the part that was?
Says R2 removed, just above multifamily removed. There are a few businesses there.
That's where they are. How, how many is a few? I'm going to put Emily on the spot, I think.
Four. And they'd be able to continue as, as they are existing, current to our statutes, as far as staying an active business, not being vacant. They would be able to stay, so it doesn't impact that. It just impacts the future if they were to expand or go vacant. They could sell it, and somebody else could operate as is, as far as non-conforming structures go.
Yeah, but I can, I can see that part being light industrial driving by that part of it. But whenever you cross the tracks and you've got all of that, I'm.
And really, the north side's completely vacant. There's nothing there.
And so I, I would, I, I have a, I have a real hard time seeing that left as light industrial. Especially when you got all those family homes.
If we could, I, I do know that you extended up to the railroad tracks, but that's one entire parcel of land, or it could be multiple parcels, but it's one owner. Why grow the residential all the way up to the tracks with what Eddie's saying? If you're leaving it north of that to be light commercial, why not leave the entire thing all the way down to the tracks, light commercial?
Are you mean light industrial?
I'm sorry, light industrial.
Just because of the heavy impacts it'd have on the neighborhood.
Okay.
We, our staff recommendation is not to have any of it.
Emily, come on up to the microphone, please, if you don't mind. Thank you. And sorry, that sounded really loud. I just wasn't expecting my microphone to be so.
So the part that's left R2, that there are existing homes constructed in that area. The south of the railroad tracks that's being removed, that primarily is built out as residential. Like that's platted, there are homes there, there's just those handful of businesses. So that's, I think that answers your question, that there are existing homes north of the tracks. Like that's residential in character.
Okay.
So real quick, the reason that, that P and Z came up with this, and I'm not trying to say this is why, but are we inferring that the existing housing up, you know, is the reason that, that that is going R2? And then from there forward, is vacant property, undeveloped land?
And we can even let P and Z talk to this, and I mean, Rob's here, I see Dick Ford here. So rather than you guys having to opine, you're welcome to answer.
The vote occurred to P and Z without any really discussion after the motion, so I can tell you the reason behind the motion.
Can I throw another question in there that they can also answer? So we, we've been sitting on this council for four years, or most of us have. And so we, we voted on lots of changes for property. And, and so if, if we voted and we did make this R2, it doesn't mean that whoever owns that property, Mr. Chapman, that he could come and say, okay, wait, I want to do general retail here, or I want to do this, or I want to do this. And very likely, he could bring it to the city council, and that could be changed, and it could go forward that way.
There's still the zoning application process.
Yeah, and so the, the deal that I, the deal that I would want to do would be, if I lived in that part of town and I had the opportunity, because light industrial no longer has an impact over there at all anymore. The smelter is gone, basically that land is useless, it's, it's actually poisonous. And so there's no reason for that to stay light industrial. And so it would still give Mr. Chapman, whoever, if he sells it and it's going to be developed, and they want to develop it in another fashion, it still gives them all the opportunities to come in and to change that and, and then move it to there. And I, I would rather us have the opportunity to go in and protect the community with an R2 rating and let them come back and say, okay, wait, we, we want to do this and this and this. I, I, I guess really what I'd like to see happen is I'd like to see the light industrial go away from that area. Would be my ultimate goal.
And staff had that conversation with Mr. Chapman, I believe Chris did, talking through, do you have ideas? Do you want general retail on the corners, this, that? They just weren't to a point that they have a plan, but absolutely, there's still the zoning process. Anyone can come in and request a zoning change on their property.
Yeah, and, and I, and I can only think of two or three times in the last four years that we have said, no, you can't do that, that we voted against that. I, I would just like to see us protect the rest of the community with an R2, knowing that you can always go back in and make that, because likely as industrials not, light industrials not going to go in there anyway. He's going to have to come, or they're going to have to come whenever that time comes, and they're going to have to make an adjustment. And I would just much rather us do something in an effort to protect the North Heights community.
Really, this zoning change, of course, we hope to see quick progress after, but this is a long-term approach, and this is really just setting a level playing field with the rest of the city as far as neighborhood unit concept, general retail on the, on the corridors, and multifamily on the edges, and residential internally, just really setting it up for hopefully success in the future.
Right.
Just procedurally, council, Andrew is going to make the presentation. Obviously, we're going to ask any questions that y'all want to understand it. Then we're going to enter the public hearing. We'll walk through that process. And I would like for us to just roll through their, giving them their three minutes. Let's hear everybody's comments. And then if, if you want to bring someone back to ask questions, like I anticipate we'll want to visit with Mr. Shane and have a, an extended dialogue with him. But if we could get through the public hearing process with everybody just making their comments, then we'll come back and we'll invite to the podium anybody else you want to have more discussion or questions with. Andrew and Emily and Floyd will stay available, and we're going to have discussion. Mr. Parker, Mr. Ford, any other P and Z members that are here, they, they can be part of that. Mr. Ford, any other P&amp;Z members that are here, they can be part of that dialogue when we bring people back if we've got questions. How does that sound as far as process?
I think it's great.
Yeah? Okay, great. So Andrew, if you don't mind taking a break for a sec. At this time, we will now open a public hearing on agenda item 3A. Anyone who wishes to speak for, on, or against this item will have three minutes at the podium to do so. I know we have two people who were signed up to speak about it, actually might have more than that.
We have several.
Jenny, do you want to take over from here? I think you've got that information at your fingertips.
Okay, the first person, and if you didn't sign up for an item, so I don't know if you're an item A or a B, so I'm going to, I'll call your name anyway. So the first one up is Joe Shane, and up after that is Elder Herman Moore.
And if you did not sign up ahead of time to comment during this public hearing, that's, it wasn't required, so when we get to the end of the list of people that did sign up, then, you know, we'll just go to raising your hand and taking comment that way.
All right.
Go ahead, Joe.
Joe Shane, came here in speaking and representing George Chapman, and as you guys discussed, he owns that northwest block out there. One of the things when we talked about it of, and we've already looked at it several times over the years, he bought this somewhere around the early 2000s as trying to develop it in residential lots because it's already set up and platted that way. We can't get utilities to it in what we consider to be a cost-effective manner. We are working our way back. Floyd's taken some action and gotten some stuff out there west of the vineyards property that's to the north and then back to the west, we've got a lift station now, but that's a mile and a half roughly away from where we're at, where it would gravity flow in that direction. There is water in the location, and then again, there's drainage issues through that area. The reason we were talking about, we don't have somebody that's come to us and said, hey, we're ready to buy that 89 acres or how many ever it is and put something there, but we'd like that opportunity for that to be whatever we needed it to be. Now, I heard you guys talking about that we can come back and rezone it later, he may be the only one that's still involved with it at that time, and all of you guys are gone. And so that's why we asked for it to stay, the zoning that he purchased it at, because it's his property, so that he has that ability to come back. He's not saying he wouldn't allow it to be residential, he's just not, he doesn't have a reason, just like you're saying, we don't have a reason, nobody showed him, here's a plan that we want to do and make it residential. We'd like to see it be something that can provide some multifamily and some job opportunities, some other stuff over time, but we have, I mean, it'll be easier, I think it'll be easier to do that, to go from I-2 or I-1 down to general retail or to residential at the time. It's always much more difficult, if any of you guys have ever been involved in the zoning, for us to flip it the other way. It's always much easier to downzone. And so that's why we were asking for us to be allowed to do that, plus the fact that it's not, it would be very difficult for such a small area to be cost-effective and add another lift station to Floyd's system out there so that we're pumping again on some of that stuff. So that's why that area doesn't seem to be, that kind of a cost would be more palatable by somebody that was coming in to put, and again, we haven't talked to anybody, we don't have a Walgreens or a Walmart local shop or something that's ready to come in there, but somebody like that can afford to help do some of those things a lot better than residential development can.
So can I ask another question?
Let's bring him back, let's bring him back. Let's work through everybody who wants to comment on it and then, I mean, Joe, I know we have comments, we have questions for you.
And so the last thing I'd like to just tell you, I mean, we appreciate, I know that everybody's worked on this for a long time and we appreciate everybody's effort to come up with, because George has been on that side of town his whole life and he's concerned about that side of town, so we're not trying to say we want to control this just because he thinks he's going to make more money. He's open to whatever needs to get done to try to fix, you know, to try to make that development work, but at this point, we're not, we don't have any reason to think it needs to be residential.
Okay, thank you, and Eddie, thank you for your patience in holding that question, just make a note of it, and it'll lead to more questions, I know, that's why I'm keeping us on track here. Okay, Jen?
Thank you, Mr. Shane. Next is Herman Moore, and up after that is Mildred Darden.
Thank you, counsel, my name is Elder Herman Moore, Pastor of Carter Chapel, Premier of the Baptist Church, and thank you all for even considering. We're not asking for a handout, we're asking for a hand up. I like what you said about protecting the neighborhood and being residential, and we're asking for a neighborhood that looks like closely what the other neighborhoods look like in Amarillo. Had one of the guys on the planning commission said that they put this, it's been like this for 100 years. What other neighborhood in Amarillo looks the same 100 years later besides the heights? And that's all we are looking for, is to put in residential housing, affordable housing where people can afford to live and clean up our neighborhood, that's what we're asking for. We used to have grocery stores, we used to have businesses in the neighborhood, but they left. Things have changed now, even the, we are, some of us are investors ourselves, you know, not looking for no great developer to come in, with some things we can do for ourselves and we like to have opportunity to do it. But we have no structure there in North Amarillo. And I pointed out at one time, you know, there's a church on one corner right across the street, liquor store, one of the nicest elementary schools, and down the street to sell alcohol, only in the north does it look like that. But we like to have some structure where residential is residential and businesses is businesses, and that other things that we have in mind, we'd like to put in some places where I pastor at, that a lot of vacant land right in the middle of the heights where we want some family youth centers, that's our goal to put in there if it was, if we could, and I would like to see that done and not see a liquor store put up next to it. Right now, we have no structure to stop that, you know, so we're asking your help to help us make our neighborhood look like everybody else's. It's all we're asking for, and I think that's fair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Up next is Mildred Darden, and after that is Alan Abraham.
Thank you. Mildred Darden, 2005 Northwest 14th Avenue. First, I would like to say a great big thank you, thank you, thank you to the planning department, they have gone above and beyond, they've crossed Ts, dotted Is several times. This was not a quick decision. We have spent hours, we've walked the neighborhood, we've driven the neighborhood, we live there. We need our neighborhood protected. Thank you, Dr. Sauer. Business of business, we have no community school, we need homes for families to move A lot of people don't have vehicles, they can't go across town when they need to. They can't bring sacks of groceries on the bus. I will ask this counsel the same thing that I asked the counsel before you, do the right thing, because the right thing is the right thing to do. We need this zoning, we worked for it, we stayed with the comprehensive plan, what else can we do? Think about it. Would you live in North Heights the way it is? No, you wouldn't. And we don't want to either, and we're trying not to. But the decision is up to our elected officials. Take a look, if you haven't looked, if you have any questions, they can be answered. And it probably does look like it looked 100 years ago. I can only testify for 75, but it's time for a change. It's time for a change. And again, I say, do the right thing. I was sitting here several years ago when the majority of you was sworn in for the first time. A question was asked, I don't know who asked the question, I don't remember the answer, I don't remember the question or the person, but the answer would stay with me forever. Lean not to your own understanding, but in all your ways acknowledge him, and he will direct your path. Do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Darden. Up next is Alan Abraham, and after that is El Amin Turner.
Thank you, counsel. Alan Abraham, 7205 Southwest 35th Avenue. Common theme so far is, in this conversation, has been a level playing field, and that's kind of what I'm here to appeal for. Did you know that the Bevins subdivision, which is anchored by St. Andrew's Episcopal Church, was platted in 1926, the same year that Miller Heights in the North Heights was platted and annexed to the city? So let's do a little playing field comparison. If you critically walk through the Bevins neighborhood, you won't see a lot of multifamily in the core, you'll see it on the edges, that's where it belongs. This plan, which is being presented to you as a proposal, is following that very same pattern, it's a replication of all the other neighborhoods that we're familiar with in our community. But the North Heights developed a little differently. It was programmed to be, in those days, a Negro subdivision. Well, we're past that, so let's get past it and let's give it a fair chance to be a neighborhood as we know neighborhoods to be. Plan neighborhood concept goes way back, and in my knowledge, my own participation in city things, the neighborhood plan that we're looking at right now really has its inception back in 2010, when the City of Amarillo took on a major comprehensive plan redo. And then that plan in 2010, and by the way, the big buzzword then, infill. And infill in that context meant taking advantage of infrastructure that's already there rather than all the outlet going on for new infrastructure, for subdivisions going on the perimeter of the city. So infill is very important, there's lots of good land if it's properly zoned for future development right there in the Heights. Now, the Heights residents at the beginning were not at the table, and they have not been at the table in advocating for their neighborhood until the comprehensive planning and the neighborhood plan. Here's 45 of those neighbors that make up that advisory board. That's where this agenda today comes from. An advisory board that went through the planning process and then the city council approved it in 17, 2017. The buzzword infill, this neighborhood wants homeownership and occupancy, they want affordable housing, and they want preservation of their neighborhood heritage. Thank you for your attention, and I hope you can.
Mr. Abraham, I should have asked right up front, are you for, are you speaking for, on, or against the item?
I am speaking in favor of the proposal.
Thank you.
The proposed plan.
Okay, and I should have asked, as you're coming to the podium, if you would just state, are you speaking for, on, or against the item? That helps us, and traditionally, we've asked for your address, you gave us.
I gave yours.
Yours, yes, thank you. If for any reason you feel uncomfortable giving your address at the microphone, you're welcome to give that to the city secretary or just to give the city that you live in as opposed to actually giving, you know, your physical address. I understand that might make some of you uncomfortable, so just want to offer that as another option. Okay, thanks for letting me interrupt, Jen.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Abraham. Up next is El Amin Turner, and after that is Francesca Crowe.
El Amin Turner, 1601 North Jefferson.
Mr. Turner, thank you, if you'll pull that mic up just a little. Thank you so much.
All right, take a little. I am in opposition to this proposal, namely for reasons about we were not involved, we felt excluded from the process. We want to beautify our neighborhoods by all means, by all means, but at the same time, my question is, we want to understand the motive behind or what's going on. We feel excluded. I'm in, I agree with Ms. Mildred as well because we have a responsibility. We don't want to put that responsibility in your hands about our community. We want to be involved in that, we live there, we raise our children there, we go to school, we participate. And so we want to be involved in this entire process, we want to have this division, want the division to be ours so we can have a vested interest in it. It's like somebody, you know, at one point in time in 1858, they had the Berlin meeting, you had countries came together and decided the fate of Africa, and people felt like, well, how do you do this? I wasn't there. I just want to be involved in the process. I want to be involved in this, you know, and as Mr. Doopy said, I call him Doopy. We don't want to see, you know, things, we want in our communities, we want, you know, to feel safe, but that responsibility is ours, it is not yours, it is ours. But we want resource, we need resource, we need to be educated about this process. You know, this is like my first time in this setting, it's my first time here and I was not made aware of this, and I was like, what's going on? So we're out here, all this rezoning, all these changes, and change is inevitable, we're all for change, but the thing is, we want to be part of the change. We have people speaking on our behalf who I have never seen, I don't know anything about, and I just want to know, it's like having an attorney represent me my first day of trial or court, I meet you, I don't know anything about you, you know anything about me. And so there seems to be, you know, like an issue here, this is the primary, my primary issue here, you know, and we want to see the people living in North Heights to see some type of benefit. If we're talking about quality of life, we're talking about one's health, prosperity, and the sharing of, and the sharing of these things. So when we do this, we're saying, well, we want to have a vested interest in this. You know, there are going to be contractors come in, there are going to be surveyors, architects, this whole list of people, telecom is going to be laid, and the thing is, will that benefit the inhabitants of North Heights in any form or fashion? That's what we're saying. We have three, like, I'm a business owner in Amarillo, I'm a business owner, and so I'm like, well, why wasn't I involved in this process when this vision was created? I don't see the vision, I don't feel part of the vision, and I'm saying, I want to be part of that, you know, and you all, your expertise and your resources, we're leaning upon you all for that. I don't know what any of you know, but I know y'all, for you all to be here, y'all must know something. And so we're saying, we need those resources to better our community and our lives. When I ask you to say, well, come in, do this, do that, do that, we ask for some guidance and some resources to change our, our community, better our community, this is what we're asking for, but I'm in opposition to this rezoning. We need change in the community, we don't need to change how things are set up, you know, far as, you know, let's change this and change that, but we do need some changes in our community. So pretty much, I really appreciate you all having me today, and, you know, as again, the point I want to bring home is that I'm in opposition to this because primarily I was not allowed to participate in the process. I know you can't get everyone to say, well, we need your input, your input, your input, that's a very long thing, but as a business owner, as a property owner, I feel I have a right to decide my fate, like all people have a right to do so, and so I don't feel I was actually allowed to exercise that right. I appreciate you all hearing me, have a wonderful day, and thank you all for hearing me.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Up next is Francesca Crowe, after that is David Gutierrez.
Do you have a comment for the mayor or for the council?
Good afternoon. My name is Francesca Mitchell Crowe. I stay at 1508 North Hughes Street, Amarillo, Texas. I am a native of Amarillo, and I disagree with the zoning issue that we are addressing here today, not because I'm against progress, but because I think that it has been done wrong and we did not, as property owners, have a chance to come to the table. When we found out and saw what they had decided to do, it was after the fact, which was not fair to us, taxation without representation is against the law. We have done everything that we know to do to try to address this issue, we have tried to meet with the North Amarillo Association, we have tried to make a meeting and set up a meeting with the city council, we have tried to do everything that we know to do to address this issue and asked if it would be floored and that it will have to be redone, bringing the property. it would be floored, and that it will have to be redone, bringing the property owners to the table. Right now, this decision is not fair to us, because we haven't had a chance to express ourselves and how we feel. I looked on the internet, and I saw the initiative plan that's in place for San Jacinto. And I wish everybody would go back and look at that, and then go and look at the plans that's in place for the North Amarillo Association, and see how off course it is. I think it needs to be redone. I think we need to set it up, like the San Jacinto program has been set up. They have set it up, where they have two people coming from the community, two people coming from businesses, two people coming in. And that's the way that that committee should have been set up, instead of singling out one organization out of our community to make decisions that affect us. So we don't know these people, we didn't vote on these people. I was a part of the initial setup. My name is on that list, along with Frida Powell and others. I never was contacted again, until after the fact, which was in March. So I'm asking if you all would just floor this and reconsider, and bring it back to the table again, because we do need to progress, and we want to, but we want it to be done right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Crowe. Up next is David Gutierrez, and after that is Timothy Gassaway.
Hi, my name is David Gutierrez. I got 1336 Amarillo, West Amarillo, Texas. My thing is, I don't agree with the rezoning, because I invest my money in there, and people decide for me, and I don't, I don't agree, people decide for my stuff, and the leaders, they decide for me. And the hotel, they say is vacant, it's not vacant. I got utilities, it's ready to move in. And I, I'm like those people right there. I'm agree with the changes in the neighborhood, because I even got a business in the neighborhood, and I see everything, what happens in there. And nobody do nothing about things happening there. And I don't think rezoning is going to fix those problems. To me, the city had to fix those problems. And because I see a lot of stuff that don't fix in that neighborhood, and what they say, we have so many years in that neighborhood, and we don't see no changes at all, because the city didn't want to be over there and make those changes. That's what I think. And they, they, sorry for my English.
It's very good, by the way.
Thank you. Yeah, we, I'm agree with other staff, like me and other people walking on the street, takes their names and address, and most of those people, they don't know nothing about rezoning. So we have at least more than, more than 100 people, they don't agree with that, because they don't even know nothing about rezoning, about what's going on in there right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gutierrez. Up next is Timothy Gassaway, and after that is Rupert Brashiers.
My name is Timothy Gassaway. I represent, I'm the president of the Amarillo Area Black Chamber of Commerce. First of all, I want to say, I really didn't plan on coming in front of you guys the first time, not in support of something. But I am not in support of the zoning changes, primarily because, as, if you've got my letter, I don't know if it got to you or not, so I won't rehash everything. But again, it's about representation. This is an opportunity to really do this right, and actually include the residents of North Heights. Many residents have come to the chamber and basically said, we don't understand what this is, how did this get started? And like I said, from my work that I've done in finding out what was really going on, it's about process. If you go back to the original plan, at page 37, 39, I believe, it says, councilmen, boards, commissioners, staff, city departmental budgets, on and on, outside agencies and organization, and the neighborhood action. This is not what you have in front of you today, because it's not neighborhood action. Some of the other key things, what the zoning board did, those three initiatives that they eliminated, good deal, okay? We're not saying we don't want to rezone. We're saying we want to do it right. The Chapman Land, and I've talked to Chapman, that is our future. And they didn't even contact him at all. So if they didn't contact a guy who has as much land as he has, who's a developer, they didn't contact me. And they didn't contact the people we represent. And that's a, that's a fact. I'm not going to go into the details, but I'm telling you guys, don't step into this trap. You don't have to go down this way. This is about bringing Amarillo together. Can you imagine a plan where all of the Chapman Land, from where I live on Northwest 20th, all the way up to Hastings, being developed? He has that vision. We can push him toward that vision. We can make this happen. Yes, we need everybody's help at this table, but we can make that happen. Overlaying neighborhood services, over places, it's not effective. It's not going to be effective. You're going over people's property that have no intent of leaving, okay? I mean, we can do better than this. We can do so much better. And I'm asking you, don't disenfranchise this community again, because what you've heard up to this point on that zoning is not the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gassaway. Up next is Rupert Brashiers. And that's all that we have for today, for 3A.
I'm Reverend Rupert C. Brashiers, Jr. Remember, city, the last time you made a mistake, it cost you $5 million, and it cost Ranlo County $3 million, so that I would encourage you not to do it. Because I know you've already got your minds made up, and we've got our minds made up. This thing is going to go to a lawsuit, and I'm glad for it to go. Because like Malcolm X said, the most dangerous man in the world is the man that has nothing to lose. So I wanted to go to a lawsuit, and I want you to go ahead on and do this, because your money will feel real good in my pocket. The problem that I, that I had with this, racism started this in the first place, because the blacks was put on one side of the city, the whites was put on the other side. Now racism is coming back in it. Oh, you say, no, racist. I say, I'll play the race card as long as it's in the deck. But if it's in the deck, I'm going to play the card. Now, right here says, any property that will be downzoned by this initiative shall be allowed to be used for any use that is currently zoned for the life of the property. The life of the property shall be defined as any property that does not have water, sewer, and electric services for 24 consecutive months. This, this was placed to you. Well, you let the white man go off. I like, I like Mr. Chapman, but you let him go scot-free. But then you're going to let me, the black man, whom my property doesn't have that on, and you're going to make me pay. That's racism, and I don't like it. You know, I feel like that, Miss Mayor, when I went over to your property, and you own two hotels, when I went over to your property, your guard came out to run me away. He walked across the street, he said, what are you doing? I said, I'm just taking pictures. They guarded your property so good, that he came over and going to run me off. I said, well, you just run me off. Saying, you call the police. I said, because you getting ready to be on YouTube.
Mr. Brashiers, you're welcome at my property. I just wanted to say...
You said that after the fact. But I'm just saying, ain't nobody bothering your property, nobody's asking you to change. But now, if they were going to change the zoning on your hotels that you own, you'd be upset too. So I just want to let you know, yes, I'm angry, I'm upset, but I'm an intelligent man, and I know when I've been done wrong. I've been the victim of a systematic course of deceit and treachery, and I have done nothing to Emily or anybody else. I'm innocent. All I've done was go to, go to my home, I wouldn't, because I thought so much of you, I wouldn't even come down to the city council meetings anymore, because it was something that I disagreed with you. I said, well, rather than disagree with her, I'll say nothing. And I've done that. So I'm asking you all, I know you already got your minds made up, but I'm ready for the game. Hey, let's do it. But I would ask you to do, before you cross Amarillo, millions of dollars, because you've caused much distress through this, I'm asking you to table it, or do whatever you want to do, and believe me alone. God bless you and thank you.
So are you against the item, Mr. Brashiers?
100 percent.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, Jen, you don't have anyone else signed up? Okay. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak? Misty Tomaso, please come to the podium.
Edith G. Tomaso, 1613 B. Bowie Street, and I would like to speak in favor, after listening to all the, all the cons. I would like to speak in favor of the proposed changes for the North Heights. Zoning, and I'm going to be kind of general with my comments. Zoning can be either helpful, or can prevent a neighborhood from becoming better, more inviting neighborhood. The proposed zoning changes are meant to improve their community and bring pride to the community. Good zoning provides opportunities for the, for new investment in businesses, communities, and community services. It encourages the property owners to take better pride in their property. It removes barriers that might prevent the establishment of new businesses, especially along Amarillo Boulevard and Hughes. And it also provides opportunities for the residents in North Heights that might even, I'm sorry, it might even provide some opportunities for them to have employment in the area. A comprehensive zoning plan for the future housing also encourages builders to invest in a neighborhood. And this is important, especially since we're getting Amazon building their place outside on the loop. I think that's where it's going to be. But it will also encourage builders to come in the area and make it residential, and maybe those people that come in from Amazon would buy some homes in there, and invest in that. So I am strongly in favor of the new rezoning, and I ask you to please, I understand that there are lots of property, people that felt like they were not included in the process, and I'm, all I can say is, please make sure that when you're invited to come to meetings, that you come. Thank you.
Is there anyone else present in the room who wishes to speak for, on, or against Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Bernadette Corrine. My residence is 1601 North Jefferson. I am a homeowner, I am a landlord of several properties, and I'm a business owner of North Heights. I did attend all the workshops that went on concerning this rezoning. There were several questions, like I said, that went unanswered. How the workshop was set up, I don't believe that it was in a way where people could understand. The city panel that was there, they came there on the third day, the last day. Me and Mr. David, we went around the neighborhood, what the NHAA should have done, we went around the neighborhood, telling people, asking people if they were aware of what was going on. We got people to sign in the hot sun. There were people who did not know what was going on in the neighborhood. I'm not really sure what's in it for anyone. All I know is, I've worked hard for what I've obtained. I've worked really hard for what I've obtained. I sacrificed a lot. And for someone to come in and tell me what they want to do with my property, I don't agree with that. I am for change. I'm a teacher 20 years. I'm for change. I want to see things get better. I just believe that how it was done, I don't agree with that. I, I just don't agree. I think that the stakeholders, the residents, the homeowners, the business owners should have a say-so. Everybody else is getting a say-so in what happens. Why? Why should everybody else get a say-so in our stuff? I don't think that that's right. You know, everybody gets upset, we asked questions at the meeting, you have the lead to go. Okay, see, it's our stuff that we're trying to, I could give my property right over to anybody. I'm really a little upset that, first, you have one organization, okay, really African-American, okay, they don't represent me. I don't even think they're qualified to represent me, as a matter of fact. And then you have the applicant, the city of Amarillo is turning in an application to rezone my stuff? I have a problem with that. I, I really do. So everybody's saying, well, do the right thing. What is the right thing? What is that? Can somebody please tell me what the right thing is? Because, yeah, you can build a multifamily apartment building, but if the people are undeveloped up here, what's going to happen to the apartment complex? What's going to happen? So we need to educate, we need to empower. Again, we need resources. I want to be a part. I'm an investor. I wasn't given a chance to invest. I wasn't given a say-so, oh, well, would you like to do this? How about that? Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else present who wants to speak for, on, or against agenda item Can't see behind the podium. Am I missing anybody? Mr. Ford, do you want to speak on it?
Howard Leibman. My name is Dick Ford, 3415 Airway Boulevard, and I'm on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I have heard all of these comments before, and it's really been an interesting, challenging assignment that's been given to us. I'm not for sure what the right thing to do is. I'm trying to. I know, I know for a fact, I know all the, all the people on that Planning and Zoning, and 100%, of them want to do the right thing. We just don't know what it is. And I got this, this is public information off of our agenda. It was a reference of all the people that spoke, if you want to see that. The way we do it, not that it matters, we do everybody for it first, and everybody against it second, that way they can keep up with it better. But anyway, what we did, the, I spent over 50 hours driving around, and I think, you know, Doc, I think a lot of your questions will be answered if you'll spend about an hour and a half driving around. It really will. There's natural barriers, there's railroad tracks there, you can't get through, you can't get across. It's just property that's, that's not even part of this agenda. We were at a, we had a meeting, and one of, one of the gentlemen that lived in the area said, why are we even talking about property that we're not concerned with? It's not even part of this agenda. I did go over there and drive, and there's several more than four businesses, there's several businesses, all of which would be impacted. And, you know, I've done a lot of zoning, but I've never had an application that wasn't filed by the owner. And the, there's a, there's a legal process called inverse condemnation. I don't know that I understand it. I'm challenging maybe the mayor to evaluate it, but when you start taking people's property rights away, little at a time, little at a time, little at a time, over a period of time, you've taken their entire property rights away, which is illegal in the state of Texas. I'm not saying that what we're doing is illegal, I'm just saying that there's a, that there's a thought process. We don't want to hurt anybody. We want to do good, but we don't want to hurt anybody. There's a gentleman, I've never met him, Hutton Plunting, and he's got a big nice office and warehouse, and he'd be non-conforming, but the way they explain non-conforming, Mr. Hutton could sell his plumbing company to another plumbing company, but he couldn't lease his property to an electrician. And so he loses his sire, so it's a 300, 400 thousand dollar piece of property, he retires, and his property is now worthless unless you want to build a house there. I just don't think that we have that right, and I don't know that I have the ability to do that. Anyway, I'll answer any questions. You know, one thing I did notice, I met and had lunch over there at Delvin's, very good restaurant, and I was appalled at all the trash in the alleys, and this and that and the other. I live over in Bevins, where there is no alleys, so we just put our stuff on the front street and call the city, and they come by and pick it up, trees and all kinds of trash and debris. And there's all the trash and debris up and down the alleys, and it'd be nice if they just send a truck down there and pick that up every once in a while. I think that would help the neighborhood a lot. And all the burned-down buildings, there's a lot of burned-down buildings over there, and they're... And there's not any burned down buildings in southwest Amarillo. I just think that we need to tear those buildings down. There's been a lot of money spent on doing this project, and a lot of time and effort. I mean, these people had, it's just incredible what the time they've spent. But I think a hundred thousand dollars or less could clean that whole area up and tear all the buildings down. If we had it all cleaned up, and you go to Mr. Home Builder, and you give him five lots, we'll give you five lots, Cole, to go build some houses. He says, I'm not, two before cost the same there as it does anywhere else, and I'm not going to build a house next to a burned down building. I'm just not going to do it, even with free land. So I think that we can do some things for the area, other than rezoning. I think rezoning may be a part of it. But anyway, so my time's up. But if you have any questions as to why we did anything, or our process, or we had four meetings, and we spent a lot of time on it. If there's any questions as to the recommendations we did, be happy to answer those and where the thought process came from.
Pause for just a second, Dick. Is there anyone else in the room who wishes to speak for, on, or against this item? Let's pause here. And Rob, I think we'll want to hear from your perspective as well. So at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing on this matter. And I think there are some folks that we'd like to have a little more extended dialogue with. So does anybody have questions for Mr. Ford? You have questions, Mr. Stanley?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Can you tell me the five voted for and the two voted against? Do we remember?
Who voted against? You got the? Yeah, Jason Alton and Renee Whitaker. It's my understanding, I don't know this, one of them wanted to vote against it totally. And I don't know what Renee's position was. So you'd be happy to visit with those guys. I'm sure they, I mean, they all want to do the right thing, but you'd be happy to visit with them as to what their thought process was.
Well, it sure seems and sounds like you've put your time and done the homework to try to bring about a compromise. It doesn't, it doesn't appear as though we have, you know, a consensus here that we have a compromise. I feel like we still, it sure feels like there's some voices that hadn't been heard. With the compromise that you've helped to propose, and now taking a few weeks to step back from it, do you feel like that could be bettered, or is that the best you could do with this in front of you?
You know, I don't know that I know the answer. I did the best we could. And I don't know that what we came up with was a compromise. I think what we came up with was what we thought would be good for one group of people trying to accomplish something, but wouldn't do too much damage to someone else. I think we were trying to do the right thing. I don't know that it was an intentional compromise. I mean, at least that wasn't my thought process was a compromise. It was more of trying to do what's right for the people involved and not hurt anybody when someone else is not going to benefit. And so that was the thought process.
My last question for you, Dick. Do you feel like, and I know you've put in a lot of work, and I know the staff has put in a tremendous amount of work, do you feel like with given more time, that these people would be able to come to a better solution if they took it back and worked on it longer?
Better solution? I don't know. Maybe, maybe so. But I think what's important is that I was, when that deal I passed around, I was just flabbergasted when I read it. And when we had the people, I mean, I think there were six people spoke for it, and four of them live in southwest Amarillo. And two of them live in the Heights. And then we had eight or nine people speak against it, and a hundred percent of them lived in the Heights. And I'm thinking to myself, that just doesn't make sense. I mean, we're trying to do something to help the Heights, but yet the people in the Heights don't want the deal. And I just, I think it's lack of communication. I think it's, I don't know what it is. If I knew the answer, I would have suggested a solution to those that have worked so hard on this. I mean, they really have worked hard on this. And the time, effort, and energy, and, you know, doing the planning, long-term planning by the book, and comprehensive planning by the book, the way they teach it in college. And sometimes that works. And sometimes when you're trying to rehab an area that's a hundred years old, it doesn't work the same as it does if it's a fresh, virgin piece of land that we're just bringing into the city. It's just a different process. So I don't know an answer to that. I think, hopefully you could.
Councilmember Smith, you have a question?
I do. Oh, you're, sorry. You can't hear me. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
There were, if I'm interpreting this right, tell me so, if I'm not, tell me that. But a motion was made to approve the city's plan, or somebody's plan, but with four exceptions. And the fourth exception was if any property will be downzoned by this initiative, shall be allowed to be used for any use. Explain the downzones. What do you mean by down?
Okay, if a property is currently zoned light commercial, general retail, light industrial, and it's now zoned residential, which was, there was a lot of that proposed, and at which point in time, like Mr. Hutton's Heating and Air Company, it was going to be downzoned, and he was no longer going to be able to utilize that property. Now, the city said it would be, it'd be nonconforming. But they're, what they were saying the nonconforming amounted to was that they started out at twelve months, tried to go to six months. I don't know that it ever got to six months. But what it was, if you ever, you could continue doing business as it is today, and theoretically, you could sell your business, I think. There was never any really, and the real estate that goes with it. But you couldn't shut it down, remodel it, and lease it to somebody else. It had to be a plumbing company forever or nothing. And I just thought that that, so that was what the city was proposing on something that is nonconforming. And I just didn't think that that was right. And so what my thought process was, and had I been an English major, it might have been more eloquently written. But the process was, was that once a property is, if your property is downzoned, you get to continue to use that property for the life of the property, for what the current zoning of that property is just prior to the downzoning, whatever that zoning may have been. So if you could shut your business down, lease it to someone else, you haven't lost rights to use of that property. Now, if your property was vacant for over two years, well, I mean, not vacant. Vacant's a bad word, as insurance companies, and everybody has different definitions of what vacant is. But if a property does not have utilities for two years, so you could shut it down, remodel it, but if you didn't have electricity, sewer and water, I didn't include gas, because you can actually have an all-electric facility. But if you didn't have utilities, what I didn't want to have happen, if this passed, was a old building full of junk and was just salvaged forever. And that's currently allowed in existing zoning. But the fact that it's just collecting junk and is a detriment to the neighborhood with no utilities, I think at that point in time, one could make an argument that it's really not a, it's really not a business. And therefore, they could be downzoned to the, has to meet the current zoning that it was downzoned to. And I thought that would give anyone that had a valuable, or even a property of value, I thought that would give them ample time to realize that value for the property. I'm sure you can come up with a better way of saying it, a better way of doing it. But that's what I came up with.
Thank you, Dick. We appreciate your time very much. So you get an A for thoroughness. Mr. Parker, you want to, it might be logical for you to come next.
Rob Parker, thirty oh five Sweet Dreams, seven nine one two four. I am chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm going to hit on a few items. We did look at this item three times. Twice it was tabled. The first time it was tabled was right after COVID. And we were reopening things, and we felt like the public at that time really hadn't had an opportunity to hear things face to face. So that's where we did the workshops. The second time it was tabled, we felt like the Planning and Zoning Commission needed a workshop. So we tabled it, got a workshop, very productive workshop. So when we met the third time, this is pretty much what we came up with. Going back to Dr. Sauer, as far as your question on the Chapman land, our thought process on that, and this is just being in planning and zoning for so long, it's easy to downzone from light industrial down to R two. But when you're R two and you want to go up to light industrial, that's basically a red flag. And I think as far as the council and as far as planning and zoning, if they ever came to us in wanting to come from light industrial down to R two, I told Joe, I go, that's, you know, which hand's a painted in? We'll approve that as long as I'm in there. And I think I could push for that. But not knowing what the plan is, we thought it would just be beneficial to keep it that way. Again, if it comes to residential that the owner wants to do if he sells it, and that buyer wants to put in a residential, all they have to do is, you know, go through the process. But I don't see any issue of rezoning that from light industrial down to R two. If you look at the property itself, it already has curb cuts in it. There are roads that are graded, of course. That was probably thirty years ago. But you can tell when you look at it, it's set up for R two. But even with that, we thought, you know, not knowing and not having a plan, we just thought it'd be best to keep it there. Through all those three meetings and the workshop, I would say ninety percent of the discussion was that and that property to the southwest of the railroad tracks. Ninety percent of our discussion was that. Everything else, we were pretty much fine with. I think the first meeting we had, you know, I did question about grandfathering certain things, again, based upon the downzoning. And I think what Dick ended up presenting probably took care of that. Because you don't want to take somebody's property rights. And, you know, if you look at the North Heights from day one and look at it now, it, and I did make a comment, it's a hodgepodge of stuff. And what we're trying to do is, and I know what the city's trying to do, is make it more conforming to a current neighborhood. And that's where it needs to be. So I'll take any questions.
Questions for Mr. Parker, counsel?
Can I direct that question that would be actually for Joe, and it would actually be for Rob also?
Sure.
But it's going to go through these guys over here.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so can you have, I've seen us take agricultural and move it to something else. Could this be agricultural? Could it be rezoned agricultural?
I said the same thing, Dr. Sauer.
See, my problem, my, my problem is-
If you go over there, there's actually some cattle on that land.
I drove it, I drove it Friday, actually.
And I would say to Mr. Ford's comment that we all drive the land. I think all of us have. For one thing, we all, we all got on a city bus, all of P and Z. Dick, you were on that bus with us when we drove that land. But I think all of us have individually gone and at least looked at the land and done the research. So I just wanted to point that out.
I think, and Brian would weigh in on this, but I think the way, at least we've noticed this, that wouldn't be an option because it'd be more restrictive to go to ag than how it was noticed. So it'd have to go through a new process to do that. But I think it could be through a different process, zoned ag. But I think from a staff perspective, we'd also agree, even if it was zoned R two and someone came with a plan, we could work to find a way to add GR, add commercial where it makes sense. I don't think R two would be locking the city's hands from that perspective.
Because I've got to be honest with you, my only problem with this is it's light industrial next to residential. And I've got a problem with the light, and the only reason it's light industrial is because it goes all the way back to when it was the smelter. And the smelter's not there. And I don't, I don't want that community. I, if I lived next to that, I would be appalled that I'm living next to light industrial.
Hey, Blair, can I ask a favor of you? Would you vacate that seat so Mr. Shane can come and just sit here and we can have a dialogue back and forth? I'm sorry, Joe, to leave you standing back there so long. Okay. So Andrew, I should have probably asked you to be sure and provide us the different categories so that we could see the order of how zoning progresses. I mean, four of us have had quite a bit of experience doing that, but.
It goes, I'll probably miss some, but agricultural, R one, R two, R three, MD? MD, moderate density, then the multifamilies, then you go with neighborhood services, office, general retail, light commercial, heavy commercial, light industrial, and CBD's mixed in there with the commercials.
So that light industrial means you could have-
Everything, you could, yeah.
And that was, so that's my only issue, is just that it's so far removed from R two. I mean, I wish there were, and I wish that you could put it back into agricultural, and then you could move it to whatever you wanted, whenever you needed it. But I just have a problem with the light industrial.
And you'd be in the same position if it was agricultural. We'd still look at all the same criteria as far as how it would be developed.
But the deal is, is let's say Mr. Chapman sells it and sells it to somebody else, and boom, right off the bat, they go, okay, I've got light industrial, and they put something in there that's light industrial that basically is devastating because they've got a right to do that.
Correct.
And that's, do you kind of understand where I'm coming from?
Yeah.
What you're saying is the neighborhood is asking for protection.
Right.
Yeah, R two is more of a protection placeholder than anything else. Because, again, he doesn't know what he wants to do with the property, but they just know they don't want light industrial or heavy commercial or light commercial or any of those more intensive uses. But GR and maybe some neighborhood services, office could make complete sense over there in the future.
And so it's very easy, it's not out of the ordinary to see an R two go to general retail.
I don't think you would when you see this vacant, wide-open land where you could plan for it and make it make sense. It'd be like doing a planned development in a sense as well. So that could even be an option, a planned development that has a mixture of uses. It could just be a mixed-use development, maybe. It's just whatever that plan might be, coming and talking to staff and going through the process.
Mr., I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Do you want, let's let Mr. Shane respond, and we'll come back around and call to your question, if that's okay.
And I appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity to do that. One of the things that we, when we talk about that, and staff has always worked with us, so I'm not trying to say, but it's a time thing, right? So if it's already I one, and somebody comes in ready to do something, and it's getting to where it happens more and more that you get a project because you can put something in place. So if it goes all the way to R two, and it's going to take us forty-five to sixty days to move it to general retail or whatever planned development, whatever we end up trying to do, that may be something that means that the project doesn't come here, it goes somewhere else. So if it's already I one, we know we can put it there. We would be fine saying, okay, we'll rezon it when we get it in, but the project can start. We know we can put it there. And now I can't, you mentioned, because one thing I can't tell you is if George does it to somebody, I don't know what they're going to do. It's not George's intent to make, to downgrade the whole neighborhood because he thinks he's going to make a buck. That's not how he works. So that, the idea that he wants to work with the neighborhood. And again, it gives us that more flexibility to try to make it a quicker deal and get somebody in to start doing the work, and then work back through staff so that we can meet those criteria, so.
So how would Mr. Chapman, I mean, how would you recommend that the neighborhood feel protected by leaving it what it is?
Well, one of the things that we talked about at one of the meetings was being able to have a, go to multifamily and then to I two, and so some of it get rezoned. But that kind of discussion got killed. So it was either going to be R two or nothing. So in answering your question-
R two or light commercial.
George is, yeah, George is agreeable to something else. He just didn't want to go all the way down to R two for all of his property. You know, one of the, I have no idea, and I've talked to Kyle a couple of times, but Twenty Fourth Street runs on the north side, basically, if it was to extend west to smelter, and the smelter go up to all the way to the Loop or to Hester, or Hastings like it is now. All those are going to be connected up someday, I think. Of, and so that would be a section corner. Now, granted, with the railroad and some of the terrain out there, it makes it a little bit different, but it still would be. it makes it a little bit different, but it still would be. So that's why we still think that there's, it's viable that it'd be something besides just residential in that, in that area.
I really appreciate hearing that thinking, yeah.
So Joe, since we're trying to figure out what Mr. Chapman wants, is there any reason that he couldn't be present today?
Well, he's 80 and he's scared to death of COVID.
Okay, all right.
He just told me he's not, I mean, when I go meet with him, we sit out in the backyard, you know, across a big table and, because he just not, and I said, I mean, I've got a dad that's 84, so I understand what he's talking about.
I understand that.
Yeah.
I appreciate the answer, thank you.
Mr. Sandley, did you have a question?
I did. So I'm, not that I'm not concerned for George, but I'm less concerned for George and more concerned for business owners, property owners that, you know, have an existing usage that's nonconforming. And the language which is written, which I feel like Dick has done a good job, even though he's not an English major, in trying to allow for as much latitude in the unforeseen as possible. So my question is, is that enough for those that are the nays? Is that enough for the community that's not on board? Because my biggest issue is, is we don't have just one or two property owners that are being rezoned against their will. We have many. And so philosophically, I don't believe we should rezon people's property against their will. I do agree that we do have an intent, and the intent is good. And I do agree that there's more than one path there. And I'm really looking for trying to bring as many, I know you may not bring all, but bring as many into the fold as possible and do some real common sense language here that leaves us as many outs long-term as possibly so that we don't get ourselves hung up later. My question, I don't know if that's for you or if that's actually for, is it Tim? Is that right? Can I ask him?
Sure. Mr. Gasway, do you mind coming back up?
Could I add on to the light industrial conversation?
Yes, sure.
So the only thing that might be an issue with the place or light industrial, you can't do residential and light industrial right now. It has to be rezoned, so they would have to go through a process to rezone it. So I just wanted to mention that.
If they wanted to build houses in a light industrial.
It's just not allowed. And then we do have, you're not seeing the other nonconformities, we have about 200 houses that are nonconforming at light industrial now. Just added to the conversation.
And I have a question in my mind too, just about, if I'm a developer and I'm looking at that, what is it, 80 or so acres there north of the railroad track, Joe? I mean, why, if I wanted to build some houses there, I'm going to always be worried that the part that I didn't build on, the part we didn't shift to R2 is going to have some light. Light industrial use. So as a developer, I'm not a developer, but it just makes me go, I think I'll pass on all of that. Like, I'll never even, I'll never even pick up the phone and ring you about the project. It's because of how it's currently zoned. Even though that could be changed, unless I buy the entire track, which maybe I would, but I don't know, that's just...
Eventually, I think Brian might weigh in on at least that question because that downzoning question basically is saying, we're zoning this for no reason because it can never change for the life of the property. And then we also already currently have codes that discusses the time period of non-conforming uses. And this basically changes it with that 24 consecutive months, water, sewer, electrical, which is probably better addressed in the zoning code than just in a zoning case. So I think it's just problematic to do it offhand.
So Andrew, I know we talked about this already, but can you go back over downzoning and just give the factual information as to what, you know, explain that?
The downzoning term, so basically that's when you have...
So that we have a good understanding of that.
So that's basically when you have a higher, less restrictive use. So the highest one we have is heavy industrial allows for a wide range of stuff. Not everything, because you can't do it in residential. But downzoning is if you take that highest use and you drop it down to anything else, general retail, residential, that's downzoning, taking it down a level.
Up and down in zoning is more accurate to say the stepping and graduation of intensities.
Intensities, yes.
So your least intensive use is going to be ag. And as you go up through the residential, it's very low intensity uses. But as you step up into general retail, commercial, light industrial, heavy industrial, your most intense use where you have the most conflict between your lower intensity uses. Which is why when you have, for example, the Chapman property, and it is a very small percentage of a very huge chunk of ag-type or undeveloped land over there. But it is connected to residential uses on the south and on the east of all of that property. So it is directly adjacent, light industrial, to residential uses. Which is, I'm not going to say there's never a place where that's appropriate, but what the goal in a rezoning process is, is to identify your low-intensity areas or to identify your high-intensity areas and graduate, step the change in intensity where you don't go from high to low and put those two incompatible uses next to each other. So fundamentally, even if council wanted to leave it light industrial, you are sort of saying, I want a very high-intensity use directly adjacent to a very low-intensity use. That doesn't mean you have to go all the way down to R2, but there are appropriate zonings that belong next to residential uses. You know, general retail, public commercial, multifamily. You know, there's a number of uses that are appropriate there, and I think those would be appropriate to consider. But the whole reason we go through a rezoning process like this, and I've done it in a couple of other cities, they are very intense, very challenging processes because we're touching people's properties. We're in Texas, we're a property rights state. But from a legal standpoint, there's not any exposure if you go through the correct process, which we have. But I'll also say, the reason that we do this and the reason people don't do it very often, like I said, is because it's very challenging. But because we haven't done it in so long, we have such a patchwork quilt of nonconforming or incompatible uses or zonings adjacent to each other. We also have a lot of areas where things have been built, and I don't, I can't say, and Andrew or Chris or Emily might be able to say, how did that happen? You know, but ultimately, it boils down to, we either weren't paying attention in the 50s and 60s and 70s or whenever these things were built, or we were potentially paying attention but not doing our job or paying attention and turning the other eye. There's a lot of different reasons why that could have happened.
Or predated the zoning and it was established.
Because it was done in the past is not a reason to continue forward with a non-functional zoning scheme. And I say scheme, zoning plan is a better way to say it, going forward. So we do have to have the difficult, I think it's appropriate to have those difficult conversations. This is the first step in a citywide process. Chose North Heights because we knew it was going to be one of the most challenging areas because it does have the most incompatible uses next to each other or the most incompatible zonings next to each other where you have high-intensity, low-intensity adjacencies or low-intensity uses inside a high-intensity zoning area that's not even allowed use inside those zonings. Conversely, I think we also have high-intensity uses inside low-intensity zoning areas, which wouldn't have been, it wasn't even eligible for a variance. So that's a little bit of a pretty high-altitude explanation of what we're talking about. And then also a little bit of context for what we're talking about with Joe and with regard to Mr. Chapman's land.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. That's exactly what I wanted because we have citizens in the audience that are listening as well as at home. And so we need that factual information as it relates to or is associated with downzoning. So thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Mr. Gasway, while Mr. Gasway is walking up, Mr. McWilliams, our city attorney, do you have anything you want to add? Sorry that I'm...
No, I think Jared and Andrew covered it pretty well. I'll just take it a step higher.
Mr. Brishers, do you, if you don't mind, we're trying to leave that seat open just so nobody has to sit next to. I'm sorry.
What I would say is, is remember that, remember what zoning is for. Zoning is, the comprehensive plan is built upon this idea that...
Same, that's the same question the mayor was saying.
Laura, do you mind giving your seat to Mr. Brishers? Maybe you could, thanks. Thank you, Laura. Sorry, Brian.
It's all right.
Okay.
Remember that zoning, the...
Okay, thank you, Floyd.
Remember, the most important part about zoning is protecting the safety and welfare of the people of the town. I mean, that your comprehensive plan is built with that as its ultimate goal, okay? And so go back to, as it was explained by the city manager and by Andrew, as to, okay, heavy industrial next to residential. It's just, it's very common sense. It's, does this promote the welfare? Does this promote the public safety of our residents? If it does, then that is something that this body must use in its deliberation. It must, it must go back to the comprehensive plan. Is it within the bounds of that plan? What is the impact of this rezoning on adjacent landowners? How does it impact there or promote the general welfare or the public safety or health of those folks? That's the most important thing, that those are the kind of criteria that this body will want to use in making its decision and deliberation. So I took it up a whole nother level because I do believe that they have described it accurately. But I wanted to give you some real quick criteria to remember to base your decisions on.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. I really appreciate that explanation as well.
I think we had questions for Mr. Gasway. Anybody want to start us off?
Yeah, thank you for coming back up. So basically, what I'm asking to restate it is, is is this enough? Can we get enough people in favor of their properties being rezoned to overcome the philosophical difference of the government's role in rezoning property against an individual's will?
I'll answer that question this way. Mr. Ford's, his item four that he wrote, it did give some relief. However, there are still a lot of people that don't get relief in that writing. And that would be the people. And if they can pull up the slide that shows the existing zone, and you'll see what I'm talking about. Because they take a huge amount of MF1 and they wipe it off and they go to R2. Well, there are a lot of small builders, small people that are doing infield building right now with plans in action that this will kill them, okay? So like I said in my letter, a more compatible thing for all of that brown to go to would have been moderate density. Moderate density gives you the ability to do all of the things that people are wanting to do already. You understand what I'm saying? We understand the industrial part over there. We feel very confident that we're going to continue to work with Mr. Chapman, and we're going to get what we want over there. One thing that could have happened, had we known that this Chapman land was available, I had never talked to him before I got involved in this process, if we had known, and at this point, what we will be doing, Amarillo Area Black Chamber of Commerce, we will be working with Mr. Chapman, Amarillo Economic Development Corporation, and we're going to say, look, guys, we've got this 88 acres, we've got all of this land that we can drive a plan development along with a potential Amazon in that land right there. It's not all bad land. There's actually smelter road over where the contamination was at. And what I've been told is that land can be used if you don't live on it. So if you go in with a major warehouse or data center, that can happen. The process, again, like I said, we're reasonable people. We just want a reasonable outcome. And we don't want to hurt anybody. And as the city attorney said, it's about, you know, the common wealth, the wealth of common good for the community. The existing plan, the way that it is now, it hurts people. And I'm, like I said, don't hurt us. We don't need, we're coming back alive with your help and with people out of their own personal property, out of their own dollars. Don't hurt us now, we don't need to be hurt. MF1 downzoned to R2 chops the legs from under us, okay?
Are there other questions for Mr. Gasway? Mr. Gasway, I really appreciate, I think one win out of all of this is that more people are involved in this conversation. And I think that is excellent. And I appreciate everyone who took the opportunity as well as their time away from their business and away from their family to be here today and to write a letter. I think we were all provided those, and I really appreciated the opportunity to read them. It made me wonder if it gave you the opportunity to visit with staff about all of this more in depth.
Okay. I would love to have more time with staff. I haven't met with staff after workshops. I've met with Emily a couple of times. And as I said in my letter, staff, they've done a wonderful job in some regards, but in other regards, we couldn't get anything into the, no input. The input was only being driven through North Heights.
But you met with, I just wanted, you did say you met with Emily twice?
Yeah, after a workshop. But like I, you know...
And did you share your concerns with her when you met with her?
Yes.
Okay, that's important to me.
And that's the thing, that the concerns have been put out there by most people that are speaking up. And there, like I said, really, there are a lot of people that aren't even informed as far as what's really going on here. And there's a very fine line, what you're doing here in North Heights. And that is, you have solidly two groups. You've got property owners that are all together saying, wait a minute. And then you've got another group over here that's saying, this is what we're pushing. And without the two coming together, you are, you are, it's creating a real division in the community. A real division. So we're more than willing to sit down with staff, with North Heights Association and hash out some things. But the process, I'll bang on it again. And I know from a legal perspective, the city's going to say, we did our due diligence. The due diligence that was not done was prior to staff getting involved. Because North Heights doesn't really speak for the community. They're not a neighborhood association. They're something totally different. The neighborhood associations that have been created in the San Jacinto is neighborhood association. North Heights Advisory Association is something totally different. And they are not connected with the community. That's why you have the problem that we have today. That's why we're here. They're not connected. And they didn't even try to. I got one postcard from them.
Did you go to the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Every meeting that, there was one meeting out of the, I think it was three or four meetings. Our letter came in after the meeting. But we met all the other meetings after that. And we've given input to staff, they just won't take it. I've met with North Heights one-on-one. They still won't take input. So for them to say they are representatives of the community, it's false. They may have that desire, but in actuality, that's not what happened. If you go back to the original plan, there were 46 individuals that were involved in that. Only three or four are involved in North Heights. And all the ones that I've talked to, none of them were asked to the table on any of this.
How, Mr. Gasway, when you say you met with staff and they didn't take your input, can you give me specifics about that?
Sure. Like I said, it was after a planning and zoning meeting. I think it was a workshop. Because I came early, I think it was early June. I came and I gave a different report. Matter of fact, Emily gave a report that, hey, all is well except maybe a few rubble rousers. And I came after her and I told the zoning and planning commission, that's the minority, that's the majority. That's the majority report. I'm going to give you the minority report." People are unhappy with this process. And that's the thing about the whole process is, we've literally, the ball has been rolling and the property owners have jumped in front of it and said, "Wait, hold a minute." And that is, that is where we're at. There are, I mean, I'm not an attorney, but I do know how to go look at the code and see what, who has what right and whatever, whatever. And we're not trying to have a beef with the city. We need you guys. We've got to work with you guys to make the things happen that we really need to make happen. So, we're not here today to fight you. We're just asking to say, "Hey, let's revisit this some other way. If I could have stopped it before we got here today, I would have." Like I said, I, I put that olive branch out there to them, to, to sit down and let's talk about the problems that this has. They've got San Anthony's, they've got a lot on their hands. They're not even really taking care of that. So, how, how do you have time to rezone a whole community? Thousand acres and acres and acres? It's, it's a failure, but we don't have to let it stay a failure. We can stop it now, go back, revisit, come up with a comprehensive plan that everyone can support. That's what we need to do.
So, Mr. Gasaway, um, do you have a specific example of a concern that was brought to planning and zoning that was, that was a concern or an issue?
Uh, like I said, the downzoning specifically of, I, I drove the neighborhood and there are 46 corner lots. Corner lots are an amazing thing. My dad taught me this a long time ago. Because, okay, guess what you can put on a corner lot? And it's already in the neighborhood. You can go through the neighborhood. When we rezoned the chamber, the chamber actually was MF1. And it, it actually had an existing building, house on the backside of it. It's, it's all throughout the neighborhood. Like I said, those corner lots, you can put a triplex in there, you can put a duplex in there, you can put tiny homes in there if the zoning, but you can't do it with R2. But you could do it with MF1 or moderate density. Don't kill a future, is what I'm saying. Yes, there, there are, there are instances where it's, it's just going to have an effect. It's just, just going to have an effect that we don't want. We don't want to, we don't want to not have incompatible businesses and things like that in general. But you don't have to rip the whole neighborhood to make that happen. There's a, there's a, there's a better way to do it.
We have three votes.
So.
Thank you, Mr. Gasaway.
Thank you.
Uh, I would like to ask Ms. Karim to come to the podium, if, if you'd be willing, ma'am. I just wanted to say I really appreciated your letter and the time you spent putting it together, but I, I didn't, I wondered where on this map, if we could show the existing, or maybe the P and Z recommendation?
Is it for New York Podag and Grill?
Yeah, the exact address, I wanted to see on, and also your home.
It's 201 North Adams, but it's in part two. It's, it's in part two of the rezoning.
Okay, so can we, are we working on it over there?
Okay. I, I was thinking it was in part one. I don't know.
No, it's in part two.
Okay, so your, your business is not in the part that we're talking about today?
No, but my properties are, no, no, ma'am.
Okay. Is your home?
So, we're going to be talking about part two later then.
Yeah, it's, we're not talking about part two at all today.
Right.
Yeah. Is your home located in the existing?
All my properties, all of my properties are in part, well, besides the business, but all my rental properties are in part one.
Okay, so I wondered if you could identify for me, we're working on it.
Uh, which one?
What I wanted to see was the plan, this is the existing.
Mm-hmm.
But I wanted to see if it, if you're in any of those colored zones.
I am. I have, a lot of my properties are multifamily and they're trying to drop them down, I think, to residential.
How many?
One or two. I have 1605 North Jefferson, 1505 Jefferson. I have, I have 1327, or maybe that might not be on there.
So, Ms. Karim, do you have like six?
I, yes, about six or seven properties. Yes, ma'am, that'll be affected by.
Six rentals and they're in the colored zone, so their zoning will change.
Yes, they send me matters. Yes, ma'am.
And it, it's changing from multifamily down to R2?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so how will that affect your properties as you're currently operating them?
Well, I want to be able to grow my properties. Like, I didn't obtain these properties for someone to downgrade me. Um, I believe in improvement. I believe in growth and I just want that opportunity to do that. And, and you, and, and here's the thing, I am not against this. I am against the way it was done. Like, I'm, I'm, like Mr. Gasaway, I just think it's a better way to do it. Yes, it is time for change. North Hikes need a change. I was driving down Hughes Street and I got depressed because I was like, dang, you know, as a little girl, it just seemed like it's in the same condition. And to me, that's sad. It's something that we could do. But I think if we were together, if we were together, we can get so much done. It's too much division and it, it shouldn't be that way. If we're all for change and all for improvement, why are we divided? Do you understand? Why are we divided? Why can't we get together, the NHAA and everyone else, and come together with the city and we all get stuff done? Because it is the city of Amarillo, right? And North Hikes is the ci- is, is included, is part of the city, right?
Absolutely, it is. Councilmember Stanley.
So, it's your, it's time. I mean.
So, as a scenario, just to make sure I'm clear, and, and I may misunderstand what Dick said, but you're multifamily right now, you'd be rezoned to R2. Let's say you sold those properties one day. Those are non-conforming properties at that time, and when they sell, the grandfather clause goes away.
Correct.
So, you, you can sell those houses as residential homes, but you have to have home buyers? You can't sell those houses as multifamily investments?
Correct.
Okay.
Brian, is that correct?
Generally speaking, that is correct.
So, if we change this property from multifamily to R2, she can continue operating it as multifamily as long as she owns it? Or, but if it, if she wants to sell it, the next person who purchases the property has to use it as an R2 conforming property? Is that correct?
I think generally that's right.
That, that's my concern. I, I know it makes a little more sense in business. It, it's a little harder when you're looking at rental property because a lot of rental property will, most always, remain rental property and be sold to another investor. So, thank you. Thank you for the clarification. That was my question.
Thank you.
So, so if, if she sells her property, um, you know, like within X number of months and the new purchaser comes along, could they not continue to operate as a multifamily?
Different ownership, no.
Ownership? Can they, can they do that? I mean, it seems like I heard that there was a, a time span in there.
The answer is no, because it'll be a different ownership. That's why the answer is no. I know the answer to that question. That's one of my concerns.
Depends on, I think it depends on how it's being used.
You can sell your property and it can continue to operate as it was with the new owner.
Right. Within so many months, within a certain time period.
Okay, so someone bought my property, it's a multifamily. Say that we wanted to maybe do some kind of small house or some, something to grow. So, you're saying if I, if they put my property down, if they downgraded my property to R1, if I sold it, then the new owner could, what, operate?
Operate the same as you're operating. Now, let's just say for conversation.
Why would I want to be downsized?
For, for conversation purposes, and I don't know what the length of time is, but you know, if it's a, if it's a year or six months or whatever, if you sold it within that timeframe, then the new owner could continue to operate as you're operating. Is that right, Mr. City Attorney?
As a multifamily? Why would I want to be downgraded?
Generally speaking, a non-conforming use continues, is grandfathered in until a time period in which it's abandoned, okay? That use is abandoned. There are certain ordinances that have a time limit. But typically speaking, that's, that's what conformance, nonconformance is about. It's, it's typically addressed in one ordinance that applies to the city throughout, um, in the zoning code. And that's why sometimes these things are always better handled with just one zoning process. In fact, I would bet the new zoning code will have a provision in there about nonconformance. And I don't know how exactly it would play into this particular situation, and I guess Andrew might be able to speak to that, but.
I see our diligent staff quickly scrolling through the zoning ordinance. Because they know what question is coming, but.
If they're going through the ordinance, and this is their expertise, but they're going through the ordinance.
Yeah, they're the best.
Well, it's a brand-new ordinance, ma'am, and, and so it's, it's still, we've spent two years redesigning that ordinance, so they, they are, believe me, fully up to, to speed on that ordinance. They just have not addressed this exact question under it.
May I ask you a question?
Sure.
Um, so the rezoning that's going on, so for instance, if I had, um, a piece of land and I wanted to upgrade it, I would have, because I own the land, then I'm required to turn in application, go through the process, correct, for the, to get it rezoned. How is someone that does not own the property able to rezone something that's not theirs? How is that so? Maybe I don't understand the, how, how is that?
Sure. Mr. City Attorney, you want to take that?
Yes. It's a great question.
Mm-hmm. It is a good question.
Zoning is typically, broad authority is given to a city to, to provide a comprehensive plan that provides for all of its citizenry in a way that promotes the good welfare and public safety and health of, of its residents. And so zoning is, is something that, that the city council in this case has broad authority over in light of that comprehensive plan. It doesn't mean that everybody's going to agree with it, okay? It, it, it's, it's about deciding what's best for the community as a whole instead of one person. And that, that is the, that is the ultimate goal. And, uh, I don't know, I don't want to get further down in the weeds on this, but that's basically that, and that's why I, when, uh, when I addressed Frida earlier, that's why I wanted to make sure that this body is looking at that, that perspective, because that is part of the criteria of rezoning an area that this body must make findings on, so.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions?
So?
Okay, go ahead, Jared.
I was just wondering, uh, on, well, I didn't want to, I don't want to bring it back. I was just going to ask a question.
Oh, okay.
But to Emily and Andrew, so MF1, how many, how, how intense is MF1?
So, MF1, depending on your number of acreage, would be a lot more dense than residential or neighborhood services. They could just pack in a lot more units of residence than you'd see in a normal subdivision. And I think, also to clarify, I think a lot of these might be houses being rented to residents, which would still be allowed in R2. It's just, I mean, people rent a house in the Greenways, for example.
I was just looking at 1505 Jefferson. It looks like.
Like a house? Yeah.
Is that multifamily then? Do you have quadplexes in R2?
Well, no, you wouldn't.
You wouldn't, but I think for the most, most part, these are rent houses, not apartments. But we tried to, if, so you have MD on the edges there and R2 on the sides, we, we've really tried our best to make it compatible and try and address those that were existing that we found.
Make it compatible with the existing uses?
With existing uses. But you're, of course, never going to have a perfect scenario where you catch every single business, or basically, we just have little dots of different zonings all over. We'd have light commercial next to MD, next to R2. So, ultimately, something has, has to give when trying to create, um, compatible zoning categories next door to each other.
And how intense can you go in R2? Is that single family, is it duplex?
Those are single family. R2, R3, R1 are single family.
Okay, so no duplex?
No.
Okay.
That would be, the first one would be MD, moderate density.
Got it, got it.
Which is in the orange on the screen. So, we do have, we do have some, um, on the periphery of the, the core.
Other questions for Andrew? I did have a question. It's, it's maybe a Floyd question, because I have concern for Mr., what Mr. Shane's bringing up for Mr. Chapman about our ability to bring city services resident, for residential needs to that section north of the railroad track, but west of, it's currently light commercial.
Yes, Mayor, uh, the concerns in the neighborhood, the entire neighborhood, basically the west half of what's on that map, is that that was plat- most of that was platted decades ago, again, back to the earlier presentation, where the public improvements were put off to future generations. So, this is typically a platted area without the road, streets, water, sewer, serving the entire area. So, the challenge existed and, and what, uh, Mr. Shane brought up was that the typical installation of a wastewater main going to the west is lost elevation, such that either that main has to be upsized and deepened or some kind of lift station serving those areas. What you do in that size, there's a 20-inch water main over in Hughes, uh, such that those water main extensions, and remember, water works under pressure, such that it's more readily available, but whether that line is a two-inch or size. So, water is easier to deal with in the extension into these neighborhoods that it wasn't planned for properly. So, it is available in, in those areas, in the outflow line at the, at the bottom of the creek that goes through the North Heights, wastewater collection is available, but it's getting to those locations. Uh, and that could result in a lift station, but typically, it would be, uh, a, a line installation. So, it becomes a specific unit. One of the challenges is that the plating or the, the layout of that more lends to residential than light industrial. In other words, when we look at sizing the utilities, we're going to look at how that's laid out, and when you see those typical blocks that are typical residential blocks, uh, and then a builder called, uh, a small lot is not conducive to an industrial setting. So, those are lots platted out that typically are more conducive to a residential setting. Uh, so that's the sizing that we would do under the utility planning. Uh, from a, looking how to serve a neighborhood, you would look at that as a residential, but yet the zoning doesn't match that. So, when you talk about infill and how you get it, it's like, in my mind, it's like running a, um, go to the Olympics that we've been watching, it's a, it's a hurdles. One, two, three, four, five hurdles that you have to overcome, zoning being the first one that says to us in planning utilities, "That's the density that I'm going to use to plan those utilities." If it's industrial, that's a different density than residential. In utility planning, the residential is going to have the highest densities, is going to demand us build the best infrastructure there is for that. Uh, that's the typical thought processes in the utilities. Does that answer your question?
Well, sort of. How many, uh, how many lots would you get out of 80 acres? Just ballpark it.
Typically, four to four and a half per acre in a, in a residential density.
So, about 300, 350 lots.
Yes.
And so if a developer showed up and said, "We want to put 300 houses out here," what, what's the city going to say to them? Is the city going to say, "Green light, we can, no problem?" Or is the city going to say, "That's fine, but only if you pay for a lift station?"
Well, the utilities would have to be addressed. Likely be a lift station, it could be a main extension that gravity flows, there'd be some off-site, whether it's a lift station or off-site li- uh, sewer line would have to address that.
And who covers the bill?
And that bridges, that bridges to our. That bridges to our previous PDP, Partnership for Development Progress, conversation. We do need to be able to find a way for the developer to be able to greenlight his project, his or her projects, and move them on without waiting for the city to step in and do a major infrastructure project that they may or may not have the funds to do and certainly haven't planned it in their capital improvement plan. So it probably doesn't exist for five or 10 years. So if they come to us and say, "Hey, I've got this neat development that needs, you know, two, five, however much million dollars worth of infrastructure, off-site infrastructure, or onsite like a lift station," we can tell them, "We don't have it on there yet, but maybe we'll have it on there in five or six years." I mean, and that's not a good customer service answer, so, but it is a fact.
Drainage would have the same concerns, off-site, how to take a 300-home subdivision and get the drainage to an existing location where it doesn't impact the neighbors. So drainage would be a major issue in there. Sanitary sewer would be a bigger issue. And then third on that list would be water, because it doesn't, it exists around the property, but not through the property. So it's, I know that's not a detailed answer, but it gets you to the point where it's a negotiation of who's paying for what. And for you as elected officials, then that becomes a competitive thing within the CIP. Is it something like this in the capital improvements program or the other needs that have been identified?
Thank you, Floyd. All right. Do we want to hear from anybody else?
I just want to make a rebuttal, if I can.
If, what do you think, Council? Should we let rebuttals happen? We've gone a long time on this issue. If I let you, Pastor Moore, I have to let everybody.
All right.
All right. Here we go. Come on.
I just wanted to clear up something that Mr. Gassaway said, that you, as a council yourself, know that the North Heights Neighborhood Association has been in existence ever since you all have been in office. We've had a relationship with you all all that time. We've been to some of the meetings. Our meetings open to the public every Thursday. So he just came to town. And to say that we just popped up and does what the neighborhood is wrong. Because this council, if anybody knows, we've been with you more than we have anybody. So he came down a couple of years ago and didn't make our meetings. We worked on plans with Sala, you know that, with the hospital. We've done a lot of projects. So to stand up here and say that we don't speak for North Amarillo is, that's not a true statement. We always have been. We developed the North Heights Neighborhood Association so we could have one voice, so we wouldn't have 100 folks coming over here before you talking about the same thing. You know, that's why we did it that way, and it's been working. And he was in, the meetings that we had, he was invited. COVID cut us back, all of us back on inviting people because we couldn't meet in numbers like that. But the board did meet. So I just want to say that we do speak for North Amarillo, and this council does that. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Okay. Who else would like to come to the podium as a rebuttal? Come on, Mr. Gassaway. Mildred, I'll get you after Tim. Oh, she's going.
First of all, let me say, Mr. Gassaway in particular. In 2017, I was president of the North Heights Neighborhood Plan. I got deployed to Houston to work Hurricane Harvey. I went to Mr. Gassaway personally with the copy of the plan in my hand and asked him if he would step in and help develop the plan. Gave him the book that had been printed out and given to us. He refused, but I allowed him to keep the book. Francesca Mitchell Crowe, she was part of the planning when we had the first people, what was his name? Kelly Shaw. She was at the meetings. Several people was at the meetings early on. The kickoff night, it was standing room only in that culture center. Standing room only kickoff night. Those two columns of committed people you see in that book, we don't know where they are. Kelly sent emails. I called from Houston. Y'all, they're having a meeting tonight. Be sure to go. The last meeting that was held for the neighborhood plan, they told me it was less than five people that attended. Less than five people attended the final planning for the neighborhood plan. So how do you get people out? You invite them. They don't come, you can't make them. Everybody's grown. You can't tell grown people what to do. If they don't come, they don't come. And if you're not there at the table, then you don't have a voice. And when the voice has been sounded, oh, that's what they're doing. I don't like that. They didn't invite me. We invited everybody. They didn't come.
Thank you, Ms. Mildred. Mr. Gassaway? Thank you. Mr. Turner, I'll put you on deck for next, please, sir. Sure. Ms. Crowe, you'll be next, after Mr. Turner.
My rebuttal is not a, an attack on anyone. I don't want to do that. Like I said, I'm trying to bring the community together. It's not about, I mean, we can go, "He said, she said." That's not, that's not positive. That's not going to help us here. My, anybody who really knows me, I'm an overcommitter. I hardly ever turn down an opportunity to help out. So I'll leave that there. But part, and the other part, I've been back in Amarillo, Texas since 2013. Like I said, permanently, where I changed my actual physical address and my voting and everything. In 2013, I also created the Amarillo Area Black Chamber of Commerce. And it's, and we are a very neutral body, because we're really about economic development. Zoning, in this case, is affecting our economic development. I've got, like I tell you, I've got guys out there that they're going to get hurt by this, and that's why I'm here today. I'm willing to do whatever it takes to do the right thing for Amarillo, period. And that's not just North Heights. It's bigger than that. It's bigger than that. And like I told you, there is division, and I hope one day we can smooth out our differences. Because I'm not, I love all these people. They're my neighbors in a lot of situations. But let's not exacerbate it. Let's heal it. Healing it is going to be getting everyone back to the table and doing it correctly.
Thank you, Mr. Gassaway. Mr. Turner?
I'm going to start to tell you about this entire situation. I'm not going to become emotional or anything. But I drove here last night. I used to live in Amarillo. I have property here. I have a business there. Me and my sister, my mother have businesses here. I live in Plainfield. I drove here last night at 9:30. My main concern right now is the son. I'm a first-time parent, two-year-old son. And what I'm seeing today is hard, it breaks my heart. My mother said, "I mean, you know, what stays, what happens in our home stays in our home." You know, it's really sad that we are disenfranchised and divided about the betterment of our community. That hurts me. I'm serious. You all want to assist us and help us in the betterment of our community. Yes, we're all upset about the process. Yes, we feel some things are being taken from us. Yeah, that was my issue. But what's happening, I've been knowing Mr. Moore since I was a child. I met Mr. Tim and Ms. Mildred, and I spoke with her. And what's going on, the arguing, this is sad. It's sad, we shouldn't bring this to your doorstep. This shouldn't even be an issue. The issue should be what we're seeking to do, the betterment of our community. This is what this is about. My whole thing was, when I first heard about it, I said, "What is the intent?" I wanted to know the intent. If you all meant well, that's what I was my concerned about. Because it's always been, people come and they take and they build. I won't own a home in this community. I won't own a shopping center in this community. There's hard-working money, 401Ks have been pulled from, my sister and I, bank accounts, you know, to buy these properties. You know, I want to give this to my son. I want to give this to my child. I don't want nobody saying, "Well, it was this, it was worth this, all of a sudden it's worth this." We work for this. And this is what this is about. This is what this is about, not just me as an individual. Not just me as an individual. I say, "Well, man, you know, Amarillo, been here almost my entire life." I look at North Heights, I want to see change there. I want to see change. But the change will not be bought about by you all. It has to be us as a collective, the people who live there, to make the change. That's how this is going to happen. We need the resources that you all have, the expertise that you all have. Me personally, I would say, "Man, introduce me to a banker, so I can make some deals", to be honest, you know? But this is what this is about. But I'm just really, I'm heartbroken right now because I don't like the, I don't like what's happening. I don't like to see Mr. Moore leave. I don't want to see us attacking each other. We shouldn't be doing this about this issue. That hurts me. And I want to address that, not just y'all. I'm talking to everybody who's listening and everybody here. Ms. Mildred, I spoke with her, I spoke with this lady. I know where she lives. Ms. Crowe, we just got to eating lunch. Mr. Tim, Mr. Moore, and those people who are concerned. You see, this is sad. This is, no, seriously, this is sad.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Thank you. Ms. Crowe? Anybody else? If you got to raise, Mr. Gutierrez and Mr. Breschers, okay.
I just want to interject that this whole process has become very tiring. Mentally, it has began to affect people. And like this gentleman just said, we have division in the community. The process of that comprehensive plan was not to divide the communities or the city, but to bring us together in unity and progress, go forward. The different areas that have been set off or marked off inside of our community for zoning, rezoning, it's not going to improve the community. It's not going to bring revenue to the community. It has brought division to the community. And so now we're in a situation where not only are we not in agreement with the zoning, but we have division in our community. I think that we should start over again and that everybody that should be included should be at the table, the property owners. And I think that any other way that you address this is going to be unfair and is going to keep division going. We want progress. I'm 71 years old. I've been working in this community, in North Heights community, since I was 18, when they first built the North Branch YMCA, which is now the Warford Center. I've seen changes. I've been out involved. I've worked in the community. I've run for city commissioner in 2008 under devil with Deborah McCourt. I have actively put my time into my community, and what's going on now is not right, it's not fair, and it needs to be revisited and readdressed. And I thank you all for your time. I think that, well, most of them are gone, the zoning commission, I think they've done a good job. I'm not against the city commission. I think you all are doing a good job. I'm proud. I've seen the city grow. I've seen advancement. But let's don't go backwards on one issue, which is the issue of dealing with North Heights, Amarillo, and the zoning. Let's move forward, let's work together, and let's put ourselves in the other person's place. If your property was being addressed like this, you would be acting the same way that we are acting. My property has been affected by this, but I'm not angry about it. I'm not against what they're doing for me, because it's upgrading my property. But I'm standing in opposition with the other members of my community that owns property that are not getting a fair deal and did not get a chance to come to the table and voice their opinion. And that's all I'm saying, we need to redo it again. We don't need to stop, but we do need to start over and do it again. A lot of people saying, "Well, they're not going to do anything because they've already wasted so much money printing up material and setting up meetings and doing all of..." Well, that Martin Lake water out there, that big hole, them big holes they got in the ground over there, that was a mistake. But the city's working around it to fix it. Well, this is a mistake, and it needs to be fixed. It needs to be stopped before it goes any further. Because if it goes any further, I don't think that the community will ever come back together again.
Thank you, Ms. Crowe.
And that's the important thing. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Mr. Breschers, or Mr. Gutierrez, you can go next, and then we'll let Mr. Breschers close us out.
My concern is this, what happened to us, to Spanish guys? Because we, I mean, we buy properties over there and we start fixing up. What's going to happen to us? Because we don't have the money to pay for companies to go fix our house. And they give us a date, a deadline to fix when you start something. So my question is, what happened to us?
As a, as a business owner, Mr. Gutierrez, is that your question?
The business owner and the builder, a builder too. Because I like to do my stuff my own. I even have a commercial license builder. And I'm a small, small business. And I know a lot of people, a lot of Spanish guys, they, small business, they don't have the money to buy, I mean, to pay big companies to work, I mean, to work for us. So my question is, what happened to us when everything, if you guys are going to change everything?
Mr. City Attorney, do you have an opinion about that? Feel free to ask him a follow-up question if you need to.
If you could restate it again. I don't want to say generally something, and you take it in one way. Just restate what you said again. I want to make sure I understand.
Okay. I said, "What happened to us if you guys do the change, if you guys do the rezon?" Because we don't have the money to pay a big company to build something, because you guys give a deadline to finish a project. You guys give us like six months. If you got a house burning and you guys give me six months to rebuild the house and I don't have the money, what's going to happen to us?
I think, are you asking about what a conforming or nonconforming use is? Is that what you're asking me? Okay. All right. No, a conforming, for something to be nonconforming, it has to be abandoned. You have to abandon that use. If you're actively working towards it, that's not abandonment. So what you're saying is driven by other deadlines, in my opinion.
Yeah.
So that may be out of your control.
Chord lines, I mean, chord deadlines to us.
What you're describing doesn't sound like a nonconforming use that's terminating, in my opinion.
So Andrew and Emily, is what Brian's saying accurate with regard to the draft zoning ordinance? So a fire does not trigger the beginning of the clock?
I mean, any change we make in our properties, I mean, we don't have the money to do it like a...
Well, if the value of the repairs goes beyond 50% of the value of the, of the, of the proud value of the property, and yet it will trigger the conformance to the new zone, to the current zoning code. So you would not be able to, the fire by the timing doesn't trigger the six months. However, the value of the repairs could. So is that, Andrew, Emily, is there anything I said there that's incorrect? Is there anything else?
Do you have any follow-up questions, Mr. Gutierrez?
Let me say it again.
Do you have any other questions or comments on that?
I'm just going to have another comment about dividing, about dividing people in the area. Couple days ago, somebody, I got a tire shop over there in the same neighborhood. They're not going to affect my tire shop, but my business go down like 50% and somebody put a racist letter behind my apartments, or my hotel, whatever. And I don't want to point people, but they tried to divide people. If you want to see the sign, I mean, it's a really strong sign. Would you like to see it?
Well, I think, how is that related to this topic that we're talking about here? Maybe that's something that you could, I guess, send us? Okay. Okay, to the division. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that, Mr. Turner. Okay. Yeah, I see it. So I think we, we see the division and we know that it's something, it's a challenge. It's a real challenge. It's happening.
I don't do nothing bad to people. Since I started my business over there, I just try to help everybody else.
Yeah.
And when everything, when I find out the rezoning, I even talk to the leaders, "If you guys do the right thing, I don't, I don't mind to lose value of my property." Because what I noted about rezoning is, they're going to stop. Because what I noted about, about rezoning is, they're going to stop people to come and invest in our neighborhood. So my property, I might, I might sell it to Walmart and they buy it from me for a good price. But if they do a rezon, they're not going to come and ask for my property to say, I want to buy your property.
And let me just be very specific. That's not okay. What you just showed us a picture of, none of us think that's okay. It is not okay. Whether you're for this agenda item or you're against this agenda item, that is not okay.
It's not okay.
So.
And most because, in that neighborhood, we have 60% of the Spanish people. It's in the back of that neighborhood.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Mr. Gutierrez. Thank you for your time here today. Ms. Reverend Breschers?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. And you know me, I, I love you, I respect you. This is, this has been something that has been hard upon us. They say black lives matter, but it don't matter to blacks because we kill each other faster than any race on the face of this earth. And that's a, that's a travesty. I was speaking about to what Mr. Gutierrez said. Right down the street from the Black Cultural Center is where his property is. I'm not saying they did it, but I'm saying it's right down the street. That, that sign didn't show up until we started, started this debate. And it says, "Wet back, go home." That's an evil. I remember when Emmett Till got killed. I've seen lynching. I know what he's going through. And it's a terrible thing. I've got enemies in this city that I never had, all because I was standing up for my rights and for my property. And now I'm on a hit list. And it's a terrible thing. That bus ride that you, that you all took, I wish you would have let, let us taking you on a, on a bus ride.
It was open to the public, Mr. Breschers. You could have been on the bus with us.
Ms. Mayor, we didn't know, we, we, just like everything else, we didn't know about it.
Well, we followed procedure, and it, there were citizens on the bus with us that day.
And, and if I could have been one of the citizens, I'd like to have sat right beside you. Because you know what I would have showed you? Now, let's don't talk semantics or opinion, let's talk facts. This is what I would have showed you. All down that boulevard, all of those white people that own businesses is making mac money. But when you go all the way, other way down that boulevard, you don't have no blacks that's making mac money. Right there on the corner of Hughes and Amarillo Boulevard, there's a store that's owned by Greg Mitchell. And that store sells all kind of booze. And I watch, I watch people stumble out that store with booze that he sold, but nobody talking about him. Nobody's talking about him. All I'm asking you to do is look at it from our perspective. How come we don't have any of that big money? You know what the real answer would be? Is that word that don't nobody want to talk about, reparations. Now, if you give us some money, we don't make $100,000 or $200,000 like, like our city manager. He makes over $200,000 a year. We don't make that kind of money. We, we better, we better got a pot to pee in or one of the throw it out. And we're doing the best we can with what we have to work with. All we're asking you to do is leave us alone. Those of us that have businesses, our little business of what we do, leave us alone. For 20 years, my business has been there, and I have bothered nobody. But all of a sudden, you attacking me. Like I said, if it was your hotels, the properties that you have and they was attacking you, you'd be right here just like me.
Thank you.
God bless you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, have I missed anybody who wanted to give a rebuttal? Okay, good. Counsel, anything else we want to discuss, or is there a motion? Anybody want to make a main motion? Turn your microphone on. Councilmember Smith?
I don't have a motion. I'd like to table this to a future meeting.
Brian, tell us what the parliamentary procedure is for tabling an item.
If, if the, if this council wants to table it, you'll have to make a motion to table the item and a second and vote on it. If that happens, then it will come up the next regular meeting and will be on your agenda for action. That's what will happen.
Okay, so procedurally, you have to make a motion. Would you please use the magic words, "I hereby move"?
I hereby move, we table this to the next meeting.
Does Councilmember Smith's motion have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to table this item until the next meeting. At this time, I'll go back to Councilmember Smith and give him the first shot at just talking about, I guess, your support for the motion. What benefit would we receive by tabling it?
Well, we'd have time to absorb a lot of this stuff that we've heard. Anybody hear me?
I can hear you.
We would have time to think about all this that we've heard. We've heard a lot.
Okay, time to think.
Time to think.
Do you need more information?
No.
Okay. Councilmember Stanley?
I understand the role of government and, and what we do well with our staff is, is understand, you know, multifamily sits best next to R2 and that, you know, heavy industrial needs to be in a different spot. That is not what we're attempting to do here. We don't have a zoning problem in the North Heights. We have a community division in the North Heights problem right now. And I think that the rezon is just going to continue to divide that community. I think that if we're listening and hearing what you're saying, we give you an opportunity by tabling this for two weeks or for a, a longer period of time if needed, to let you come back together as a community and do your job better, which is what the gentleman said, that this should have been presented in a way where I could vote for or against the practicality of a zoning plan as presented very well by the city and, and drawn out for a master plan. I'm listening to division in a community, not, not looking at RF or MD. And so, um, R2 or MD. I like the opportunity of letting you guys do what you need to do in your community and then bringing it back at a later date.
What do you think can get accomplished, or what timeframe do you think that can be accomplished in?
I'm not very optimistic with where we are today. I don't feel like you've, you've gotten as much of the work done as, as, as still left on that, that hog. So I feel like you probably have some work to do. I, I would tell you, I think this will take months.
Do you think it can ever be accomplished that everyone can agree with the plan?
No.
No.
I don't agree.
Well, I'm asking Councilmember Stanley because I think he's making a good point. It, it is always a good idea to work for consensus and, you know, this has been more than a year of work, so I'm wondering how much more time?
I don't feel like you have an overwhelming majority that's on board with this. I feel like it's pretty divided 50/50. And I would hope that with given more time, the outcome could be much closer to an 80/20, 90/10. And I think that that being presented puts you and I in the role that we should sit in, that we need to make decisions based on what's better for a cause and a community based on the overall whole. But right now, I think we're hearing as much on both sides.
So timeframe?
Two months.
Okay. Other people who want to speak for or against the motion to table?
Just, just a motion, just, just for parliamentary procedure purposes, a motion to table means it's going to come up. If you want to postpone it to a certain time, then the correct motion is a motion to postpone.
Okay, thank you, Brian. I do, we do want that every time, correct us on procedure.
Okay, so, so I'm going to put my stuff out there because if we table it and we bring it up in two weeks, um, I, I want to be, I want to be cognizant of, so I, I want to be cognizant of what their thoughts are, but at the same time, I also feel that part of our role is we're supposed to be looking at this in somewhat of a protective way. And anything that ever shows this portion over here next to residential left as light industrial, I'll never vote for it. I'm just going to tell you right now, I'll never vote for it. I understand that he, that Mr. Chapman does not want R2. Better come to some sort of an agreement because I'm not going to vote for IL. Or L1. I'm not going to vote for light industrial. So if it comes back up, and it comes back up, and we vote for the planning and zoning, I'm going to vote against it. Because it's not protective of the community.
Okay.
Straight up.
Yeah, it's important to hear those concerns, and when you verbalize them, it gives us a chance to work on the solution, so I really appreciate that.
Yeah, and I, and I appreciate planning and zoning, I mean, the, our, our planning department and zoning department coming back and trying to come up with an alternative because I feel like in this aspect there, they are trying to protect the community and provide for protection. I understand that, that may be not what, what we, what they want. I mean, I'm looking around the edge of that property, everything around the edge of that property is agricultural. I'd be tempted to just say, move it back to agricultural and let them work through that at some point in time. But that will at least, at least it's not R2 and it keeps it protected, keeps the, the public protected and leaves it open. I realize that it highly constrains the use of it. Maybe that's what needs to happen. And you've got to have a real good plan on what you're going to do with it going forward. But a real good plan does not include light industrial.
So the, to, procedurally, the way that would happen is that would have to go back to staff to rework that, to consider agricultural zoning, prepare that for P and Z and have them consider it, make a recommendation back to council that would include that modification. Is that correct?
It goes back through P and Z?
Goes back through P and Z. Because ag is a, is a less intense category than R2, which is the-
Or unless they can come up with a, an agreement. If you can come up to an agree, if you guys can come up with an agreement, then I'm more than happy with that. But you know what? I'm one vote. That's all I am. I'm one out of five. So you all could, it could be all, it could be four one. But I, and I'm fine with that part of it, but I, I want to see this, this is not protective.
Ms. Mayor, pro tem?
Yes, I'm in agreement with Councilmember Sauer with respect to Mr. Chapman's land. But also, I would be in favor of the, the area that was identified that was south and west of the railroad tracks that was basically recommended by the staff. I would be in favor of excluding that particular area from the North Heights plan, if I heard that correctly.
I would too.
The part that's southwest of the railroad tracks?
South and west, yes. Uh huh. I would be in favor of that. I'm not in favor of tabling our vote for today because this, this process has been going on now for the last at least three to four years. And I realize that we have a core group of citizens that have been here in the council meeting with us, with us today, but there's also other individuals within the city who are in favor of the rezoning. I don't know that I'm going to get any more information that's going to be different than what I already have. I know we've sat in several meetings and, you know, myself, probably more than others, I have been in the majority of the meetings for the North Heights Advisory Association as well as the meetings that were conducted by planning and zoning and then also by our planning, by our city planning staff as well. I would also note that within the North Heights neighborhood, it is not predominantly African-American or black like it used to be. If you look at the neighborhood today, it's going to be very diverse. You're going to have African-American, you're going to have black, you're going to have Hispanic, you're going to have Asian, you're going to have white. So that neighborhood is very diverse and there are lots of individuals within the neighborhood that, that own property or have some sort of a business within that neighborhood. I think the main issue of what I've specifically heard here today is there is a lot of division amongst our neighborhood. And postponing the rezoning initiative is not going to fix that division because it's always going to be divided regardless, because you're going to have, you're going to have people on this side that are against each other and people on the other side that are against each other. And I don't know that any neighborhood, not just the North Heights neighborhood, I don't know if any neighborhood can really come together and be 100%. I just don't see that happening. Because there's always going to be someone or several people who are going to be against. I don't know how to fix that. I wished, I, I wish I, you know, had a magic wand to fix that. But sometimes we are our own worst enemy with, that goes for all of us.
I think I relate most with what Councilmember Stanley is saying. I absolutely want for people to be in agreement and I want for our job to be easy and that we can just carry forward what people agree on and, and bring. That's, I think we would, that's the motion we all want to make, right? So I really appreciate that perspective. I resonate with what Dr. Sauer's saying, what, about the light industrial concern. I resonate with what Councilmember Powell is saying, that having been to some of those previous meetings, I think we have to be realistic about what can be accomplished, what, what can be agreed upon. And I just want to say, it strikes me what's the magnitude of this. They're trying to do something in their neighborhood that hasn't been accomplished for decades. I mean, I'm very moved by what Pastor Moore says, and he said, you know, we, we just want our neighborhood to look like other parts of the city look. And nobody's ever going to agree 100% on how to accomplish that. But I, I hesitate to delay further unless staff tells us there is a way to, and I don't know if Mr. Shane has a-
An alternative.
An alternative. I might want more information on that, but I think what we have pending right, right this moment, the main motion is to table, which would bring it back to us two weeks from now. And I, I respect Howard's motion and ask for time to think about it. I, I don't think I need that time. And I, I don't necessarily know that two weeks buys us the time that you had in mind, Councilmember Stanley, to give the community more time to work on it, so. Do you have something you want to say, Councilmember Smith?
Well, part of the reason I wanted to table it for two weeks, we've been at this a long time.
Yeah.
Community's been in it a long time. I've got another important meeting that starts at 6:00 that I need to be at.
Okay.
I can be 15 minutes late. And so I'm going to be leaving pretty quick.
Okay.
And that's-
Part of-
My personal issue with me, which may shouldn't be part of it. Now, I don't want a delay for two months. We could table it for a week. wanna delay for two months. We could table it for a week and come back on this issue. I think we got another issue we need to do.
Okay. If it was tabled, could staff work on this R2 issue, light commercial, and bring, come back in two weeks with recommendations on where we might could go to address Mr. Chapman's property?
I think I'm gonna have to ask Brian to clarify. I think, anything from this point on, we'll have to renotice, so that'll build in the timeframe for when we can bring him back, I'm thinking.
It depends on the use.
Depends on the use.
In other words, if you're gonna go more restrictive, then you're outside the bounds of, I think, where you're at, but if you're-
But if, if not, we can just bring him back next meeting, we're okay.
Yes.
Okay, then we could probably be ready in two weeks if it's not doing that. But again, we have talked to Chapman personally, and he didn't have a plan, so it could take months to come up with a plan, also.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? I'm gonna ask us to vote by raising our hands. All of those in favor of tabling this item till two weeks, please raise your hand. All of those opposed? Okay. Three for the motion, two against the motion. We will table this item and take it up again in two weeks. Okay, moving on to item 3B. Actually, let's do this next, we don't have a lot of time. Can you hold it for just a sec? Okay, I'm sorry to ask.
I feel your pain, dude.
Yeah, I think we're all feeling it. I think my help is, okay. Item, item 3B is a public hearing on fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget. Mr. City Manager?
Yeah.
That's a good idea, Cole.
Assistant City Manager.
Mayor?
Assistant City Manager and Chief Financial Officer Laura Storrs.
I just wanted to say that, that we're not taking any action on this item. It's just a public hearing, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
3B is a public hearing?
Yes, that's what I'm saying, yes.
Oh, he's not gonna miss anything.
Right, that's what I'm-
But by law, we have to take them in order, isn't that correct, Mr. City Attorney?
In this particular case, yes.
Okay.
Have your public hearing first.
Yes, thank you.
Right, so to present the item, and then to answer any questions council has, we have Assistant City Manager and Chief Financial Officer Laura Storrs. Laura?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have a brief presentation. You all have been through days and days of budget review, and so this just summarizes kind of the, the high points of our 2021 proposed budget. So-
This, this presentation's gonna address items 3B and 3C.
That is correct, yes. And so I will make this presentation, y'all can do the public hearing, and then vote on item 3C after that's finished. So in this proposed 2122 budget, we have included increased parks funding for athletic fields, trails, playgrounds, mowing, sidewalk repairs, park benches, and much more related to parks. We've also included increased public safety funding for additional police officers, and also for police and fire equipment. We've increased street funding for pothole repairs and street resurfacing. We also have increased solid waste funding for a community cleanup program. Also included in this budget is the final funding for the 2016 voter-approved Proposition 1 street projects. So recapping our expenditures, the current year 2020, 2021 approved budget is set at $392.7 million. If you walk that forward to our proposed budget for next fiscal year, it, we are increasing it by $31.7 million to a total of $424.4 million for the 2122 proposed budget. Again, just recapping, we have all the same current service levels as the current year budget, plus additional funding for parks, public safety, streets, the voter-approved Proposition 1 projects, and more. From a revenue standpoint, the current year budget has $386.6 million approved from a revenue side. If, as you walk that forward, we've increased our revenue budget by $18.5 million to a total of $405.1 million for the 2122 proposed budget. So briefly, let's just talk about what comes next. So as mentioned, after I conclude on this, council will need to conduct a public hearing on the proposed budget. Then the next item will be to do the first reading on the ordinance to adopt the proposed budget and to record that vote, and that all occurs today. Then on August 13th, this Friday, we have a posted agenda for 1:00 PM right back here at City Hall for the second and final reading to adopt the proposed budget and to record the vote on it. We have also included information on this screen. If you go out to www.amerella.gov/budget, you can find much more information related to the proposed budget. And as a reminder, and I think there were hopefully some out by the front, we do have a really good one-page summary of the total proposed budget. It's fascinating to try to recap $424 million in one page, but this is phenomenal. This is a great informational tool, and we encourage everyone to go out to our website to learn more about the proposed budget for this year. With that, are there any questions that I can answer of council?
Any questions for Laura? Okay, thank you, Laura. At this time, we'll open a public hearing on this matter. Anyone who wishes to speak for, on, or against item 3B, will have three minutes at the podium to do so. And procedurally, we'll start, Jen, with the folks who've signed up, and then we'll open it up after that. So I'll pass the microphone to you. Okay, the first speaker is Jesse Frimmer, and up after that is James Skank, and that is all that we have signed up.
Jesse Frimmer, 5723 South Mylum. Wow, what an interesting afternoon. I, I do have some documents here. It's basically a little history of the past eight years that we've been experiencing as citizens of Amarillo in, in regards to choices made by our, by our council and spending money. And this little history is just to say to you as a citizen's over 65, I am not impacted by the cost from the property tax value. I will only be affected by the cost to my businesses here in town, because they will have to fund this increase in costs at their businesses, which will be reflected in their cost to me as a purchaser, as a consumer. And in that regard, I will be having to pay more sales tax. And in the proposed budget that she's talked about, I have the larger production of it, that, that she does have a definition of 45% for the school district, 27% for the, let's see, is that the, is that the AC?
It's the county.
That's the county, okay. Now, is how, is county Randall and Potter?
No, Randall or Potter.
I would think Randall would be less than Potter. But anyway, I, I was at the AC meeting today, and they cut their, their costs because they received property value increases. So they were actually able to lower their rate on the AC because of the increase in property valuation. So I would have been approving your two cents for the bond election in 2016, but I can't go any farther than that, because you've already received the property tax increase. So my sentiments are that I appreciate your interest in trying to approve these other aspects, but I think we need to look at how we can cut some costs someplace, because we've been spending money like we're, like we're bandits. $10 million here, $35 million here, $65 million here, when it was sold, it was gonna be a $38 million project. These are kinds of things that I've been watching, and I have seen in the past eight years with the increase of our enterprise money. Our enterprise money has gone up dramatically over, it runs about 3.5% annually, monthly, and that's impacting my retail people, because they pay more on a lot of that enterprise money than I do as a property owner of residence. So in that regard, that's my confusion about this increased budget. I just would like to see us figure out how we can quit spending money on things we did not initially talk about, like $10 million for three warehouses, and then renovating some of them for the purpose, or even taking down the, the city hall because we wanna build a, an arena on that spot. I wish you would quit doing those things and just pay for the things that, that we need, and that is parks and recreation needs to be improved, baseball, softball documents need to be improved, but that's been a problem for the last 20 years, because I was a softball official, so I know what that's like. But again, thank you for your time. You're doing a great job. I'm proud of you, Mayor. That was awesome way you had on that last mission. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Frimmer. Thank you, Mr. Frimmer. Up next is James Skank, and that's all that we have signed up.
Man, what a beat down. You know, this is an interesting case. It's a classic example of why you have too much in one meeting that could have maybe been done at another time, especially when we have the budgets that are concerned too. But I appreciated listening to everybody. And we have a confused budget. We've got a, your proposal, if we go all the way to the end, the 48 cents is about a 22% increase on the city portion. And I know y'all have reflected that there's a little bit of confusion about Senate Bill 2, in reference to what you can do after that. I like the fact that if we go to the 48 cents, that it goes to a vote, because if you have a consensus at a vote, then that's what the citizens are gonna say. And I like the fact that it's gonna be in November, not in some off period where most don't show up. I do have one real concern, back to the budget, because been looking at it hard, is when we first was proposed the 47 cents, the values, Mr. City Manager, on the new property was about $812,394, and then we went to 48 cents, and it goes to $822,000 of new property adding into that. And then we go to the current one, and it's $767,000. There may be a simple explanation that I don't understand, but that's a $55,000-plus difference, chump change when you're talking $424 million in the budget. But I'm confused about, did we lose new property, or what happened there? You may can answer, you know, you can't really talk back right now. And I would really like to see the public comment thing put on the agenda, where you could hear feedback from people about what could be going on to help that. Because, wow, well, you had, you had plenty today, and you let it go like in ways that I just can't imagine. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present who wishes to speak for, on, or against item 3B? See, no one will close the public hearing, and that closes item 3B. But we have, coming up next, item 3C. So, Mr. City Manager?
Well, we, we just did the presentation. If you would like, Laura can step up. It's a very straightforward answer on what Mr. Skank was talking about, if you wanna have her touch on that. But then it's a matter of y'all discussing and asking Laura questions, or me, and, or team.
Yeah, I think, does anybody have questions for Laura about it?
No.
No? Okay, thank you, Laura.
And she can get together with Mr. Skank after.
I think that's a great idea, thank you. Do we have a motion with regard to item 3C then?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move that we adopt the proposed budget, which reflects an increase in the revenue derived from property tax revenues over last year's budget.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the tax rate and the budget as proposed. You, you guys all have the ordinance, which is coming up in item 3D.
Right, that was for the budget only.
Yes, this is for the budget only. So I'll go back to Councilmember Powell, just anything you wanna say in support of that motion?
No, I, I, as I said before, and in previous meetings, I support our police, our firefighters. We definitely heard in a community solutions meeting in regards to parks and recreation, so citizens spoke very loudly that they would like for us to pay more attention or do more maintenance and operations on our parks. And so, you know, that's where the biggest of the funds are gonna be allocated, that we are recommending today, so I'm 100% in support of that, of where those dollars are gonna be spent. And this is something, this is something that we need to do. As a city, we cannot continue to advocate that we have the lowest tax rate. And so we've advocated that for years. And, and this is what happens. We can have the lowest tax rate and not, not spend any money or not do anything. And what happens is, you know, I can go back and look at previous councils, and I can point the fingers, but that doesn't do me any good, because I'm sitting in the seat now. Where we are today is our infrastructure and everything else has kind of mushroomed. So everything's falling apart. I mean, city hall, parks, I mean, the Thompson Park swimming pool is a great example of that. If, if we had been allocating funds, say, maybe 30 or 40 years ago for the Thompson Park pool, we wouldn't be in the position that we're in today. But that's a great example of, of, I don't know, again, I don't know what the life expectancy is of a pool, but I don't think it's 90 years old, which in actuality, it was 87 years old.
I think that one's actually just even taller.
Right, right.
Turn your mic on in.
So anyway, we can continue to advocate that, and then we've looked at the data. I mean, we looked at 10 cities that were larger than us in population, and 10 cities that were smaller than us in population. And us going from a 40 cent to a 48 cent increase, we're still, we still have the lowest tax rate. But again, having the lowest tax rate and not fixing streets, not fixing potholes, I mean, what does that buy us? You get what you pay for. You know, citizens want good customer service. You know, if you don't take care of your employees, it's a revolving door. Again, you get what you pay for. I'm, I'm in favor of, of approving the budget as is.
Councilmember Sauer?
I'm also very much in favor of approving the budget, and mine are gonna come a lot along the lines of the same as the mayor pro tem. I think, and I'm not laying it at any previous council, but there comes this point in time when, if we just keep on going down the road and keeping things low, the first thing that we start losing out on is all of the repairs and maintenance. And repairs and maintenance are how you, I mean, it's like the Fram commercial. You're either gonna pay me now, or you're gonna pay me later. And unfortunately, whenever the four of us first were in office, we had a pay me now or pay me later moment. We had to deal with the $2 million a year bleed that was coming out of Gulf. And we had to make some hard decisions, and those hard decisions were, we had to increase the revenues coming in to allow for those things to even semi-correct themselves, and we're still working on it. And so we're sitting in the same, we're sitting in the same case again. We've got lighting that hadn't been touched on these parks in decades, not at years, actual decades, to the point that we're between $6 and $10 million on that alone to replace lighting. I had the pleasure of getting to meet with Michael Koshuba and most of the athletic associations in town late last week, and come to find out, nothing has changed since we had the community solutions. As a matter of fact, they're even more mobilized now, that they realize that this is, this is the, our only way out of this situation. And so we've got to address parks. And, and on the second hand is, you know what, through all of that, we haven't addressed taking care of our staff, we haven't taken care of our first responders with their pay and- We haven't taken care of our first responders with their pay in the way that it needs to be done. And so, these are things that we've got to make. I mean, it's important, protection in our town, the way our city's taken care of. The revolving door is a pretty good way of saying it, and we can't have, we can't be losing some of the best people that we've got working for us. So we've got to, and you know, and both times running, or all three times running for office, the two top things that I kept hearing from everybody was, take care of our first responders and take care of our streets. And so, that's what we've got to do. We've got to make, we've got to make up for those kind of things. We've got to continue the repair. We've got to get ahead of repairs. We've got to figure out, have plans for how we're going to handle things. And so, this takes a really, really sharp swing at some of the things that we need to, that we need to address. And so, I am fully in favor of us making for sure that we're beginning to take care of those that work for us and also for the next generation, because what we do for the parks, that's going to affect our kids, that's going to affect our grandkids, that's going to be affecting generations yet to come. And so, I think it's a real important move on our part that we're addressing this. So I'm all, I'm all in favor of this city budget.
Councilmember Smith?
I'm very much in favor of the budget also. It's a pretty big percentage increase, but when I look at all the things that we don't have that we ought to have, and I see, you know, we brag about having the lowest tax rate, well, we're giving up things we ought to have. I've got a son in Waco and one in Plano, and they've got a lot of quality of life issues that we don't have. I'm very much, I've always been in favor of police personnel, firemen personnel, the equipment that they need. We've tried to provide that, probably have some more to go. But we're, when we have 200 or 300 people show up and talk about lack of things in parks, we need to step up the plate. I was even thinking in terms of higher taxes than what we're going for, but I'm satisfied with what we're proposing, and so we can't do it without the public deciding. They're going to have a chance to vote on this. So not only are we behind it, we can individually endorse what we're proposing, and so I'm very much in favor of it.
Thank you. Councilmember Stanley?
So I would, I would like to consider, if you'll hear me out, taking the budget in two separate pieces, both looking at your budget based on your tax rate and then looking on your user fees, licensing and fees. Is that an option that we have here in front of us?
Why don't you give us your comments? I'm not sure I'm following on doing it in two different pieces, but I want to try to understand.
So I've spent a lot of time going through the budget, really trying to learn and understand. I came into office really hearing a lot of people that are, you know, stating, man, we just, we have a unsustainably low tax rate. We're never going to get there with this unsustainably low tax rate. As a builder, being around development, I've heard that for years. And some of the people that I really esteem, that are good developers, are telling me this, and they're like, Cole, it's just not sustainable. And so, coming through this process, I've looked for, are we spending all of the money and are we spending it well? And so, this last year, we have, I don't know, almost $14 million in excess reserves that we chose not to spend. And so, some of the issues that we're faced with here today of parks and rec, the lights not coming on, the things that we need to pay for, we have the money in that budget last year that we could have spent. We did choose to spend some of that $13 million, $860,000 down. We bought the Emerala Hardware Store for 4.7 million. IT was about 3.4 in upgrades, and then the elevator at the PD is proposed at 825. And please correct me if I get these numbers wrong. I don't ever want to put out information that'd be inaccurate, and I'd much rather say, I said it wrong here and now than to have to apologize later. So in looking at this, we still have 4.8 million dollars left in reserves. And then in going through the budget with Laura, we're projecting 5.6 million this year in excess reserves? I shouldn't say reserves, excess revenues, to say that correctly. Now, in reserves, we have...
90 days.
Well, right, millions of dollars in reserves. And we're very healthy as a, as a, as a community and as a very well-run organization. So like, what I can attest to is that we, we have millions and millions of dollars in investments and in retirement and in different places and in so many different accounts that I couldn't even track them, you know, trying to go through them. And so, I think we are ran very well. And I think that over the last two years, we've given ourselves a metric of how well we did. And we ran good quality services, and we had excess revenues left over, except for the things that we've cited. I would love to pay our police department more. I think that they need a raise. I would love to pay our firefighters more. I think that they need a raise. I just believe we can do that in the given budget. I also believe that Parks and Rec is way behind the pay scale, and so our budget does give more money to Parks and Rec. But then, on top of that budget, we're also really looking at the reality of, we're going to have to spend $10 million that we just don't have in this given budget that you're proposing. So not only are we looking at a tax increase, but we're also looking at potentially an issuance of debt, and I think that's just the reality of it in order to get caught up on a few of those items. So when I'm looking at, do we have enough money with what we're currently charging? I know we've got sales tax that are up, and I know we're presenting, you know, a good budget as we're moving forward. But then we also have excess revenues in sewer and water. So, you know, sewer and water, excess revenue, $24 million last year. So they ran 84 million, and they spent 61 or so, right? And those are, those are rough numbers. I'm sure those aren't correct. Airport has excess revenues and then drainage. And so, let me, let me ask you a quick question. The reason that I would want to separate these is because we're introducing and proposing not only a tax increase, but a user fee increase. We're proposing to increase fees on water, sewer, drainage, and the like. And so, y'all have all read this. Am I reading this correctly, that our drainage fee for tier two would go from $2.82 to $23.17?
No. And we can have Laura speak to that?
Yeah, I'm seeing it here on page 33. Is that an error? Did we just put the number down wrong?
Let me catch up there with you.
Yeah. It's a typo.
It's only going up 4%, so I believe the current rate's $2.82, and then that times 4%. Yes.
Okay, so this would need to be changed?
Yes.
Before we vote on it, or as, just an error?
Well, it could be changed before second reading.
Oh, okay. We got first, second.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out. That's a typo.
So, so in the, in the excesses that we have, do we have enough money to do our capital projects that we, that we need to, to catch up with the current fees that we're, that we're charging our customers? Coming through some really hard times and bad years with small business, and I'm a really big small business guy, I believe that if we don't have to charge you that much, we shouldn't. And if, if we're not facing an issue of, well, we just don't have the money to take care of these failing parts of infrastructure, which I think are, are capital projects as we have them outlaid here with these excess reserves, I don't even know that we can do all that work in a year. And then if we projected another year, are we going to have capital projects money set aside that's accumulating? Is where I'm coming from. So I would be in favor of considering leaving the user fees as they were last year for licensing and fees, and then considering the budget itself as a standalone item and treating them two separate ways. And I'm asking that, is that something you guys would be willing to consider?
Can, can we pause that question? And, because I think you're bringing up some really good points about being in favor of raises for public safety, and you're tying it to the savings we had from last year's budget, which gigantic pat on the back to the staff that, we came through in the black last year, and, and I spent several nights laying awake thinking, what happens if we have to touch our reserves? What happens to our bond rating? What happens if we, we've got, it's a $400 million operation, and so we have 90 days of reserves, and that's $100 million. So you're right, the city has a lot of cash in reserves, and I wondered last year, what happens on day 91, when we've blown through our reserves? I mean, it was scary. We did not know what the year looked like, and every business owner felt that same weight because they had the same issue in their business. So I think you're bringing up some great points, and I want to start by patting Laura and her team and Jared and his leadership on the back for saying, we finished last year in the black, and it was because they slammed on the brakes, and the council approved that. And so, we can't operate that way every year. It's not sustainable for us to narrow the funnel the way we did last year and, and have those kind of savings. So with that, with that context laid out there, elaborate on how we would give the police officers a raise year over year. That's a year-over-year commitment with savings that we aren't guaranteed to have year over year. But I, I mean...
No, I hear what you're saying, and I thought the same thing in the way of like, well, it was a COVID year, and originally, I thought it was the COVID monies that were coming into the account. We got the $20 million or whatever it was, and, and that's not included in this excess revenue. And so, it was just a very good tightening of the belt. And, and I know that we did the same thing as a business owner. You know, we lived out of some savings, and we didn't, you know, we, I understand that you didn't get into your reserves, but you did have to tighten your belt, and I believe that our staff did a good job.
We cut costs.
We cut costs.
So that we didn't get into reserves.
We did not take care of some of the things that we probably could have, in my opinion, during that year. But then going forward to this year, I think if it was a one-off year, we'd be sitting in the same boat here. And, and so, we have $5.5 million in excess revenues this year. And I know we're having a good sales tax, but then we're also looking at, we have additional monies that are coming in the form of ARP. We have the federal government telling us that they are going to push some infrastructure in the tune of $1 trillion out across the nation. So I think if we look next year and the year after, we're going to continue to see more of these monies coming in that could help us with some of our infrastructure and needs and some of the other things that we have. So I would only do one simple thing, and it's just a philosophical viewpoint. I'm not going to lay out for you a, a financial plan because I don't have one, but I would just turn the thing upside down, and I would just put police, fire, our emergency services first, and I would, I would allocate those monies first, and then I would build my budget backwards off of that all the way down to the bottom tier, whatever tier that may be. And I believe that Parks and Rec should be up on the, on the top tier. So in the way of specifically, how would we do that? Like, you know, the, the purchase of Emerala Hardware Store is a, is a good, is a good example. And then I'm curious why we don't have capital that is, and, and I know some of the funds are restricted, and I'm still learning, you know, so water and sewer should only be able to go to water and sewer, correct?
Well, by law, that's how it is. And the same thing with airport. So any, any savings we had in airport, we can't give to police officers as raises.
So if I were to pull back on anything, I wouldn't pull back on my police. I would pull back on my capital projects that I'm only restricted and able to do out of general fund, and I would do this for a year because this is not the only budget that we're going to set. It's not like I'm telling you, hey, you've got to make this thing work for 10 years, and there's no telling what's coming. I'm saying right now, we're still sitting on excess revenues, and so...
I guess, I'm, I'm not trying to interrupt you, but I'm just still saying, we can't, when we give the police officers a raise, we have to do that with revenue we are certain about. It's so, like, even in the scenario you're setting out, I'm going to just pick a number. Hey, I'm 90% sure we're going to have $5 million in excess revenue or budget savings next year, and we could put that toward those police raises. But we can only put dollars toward personnel, year-over-year expenses, that we're 100% certain we're going to have.
I understand.
So you're not closing that gap for me. I'm still not there with you.
And tell me where I'm missing it here, because I may not have a full comprehension.
I think it's the year-over-year commitment versus the one-time savings.
So in your, in your capital projects, you're able to push money over into that, that we, we build this capital program, you know, and we have this money year over year.
Because they're basically one-time projects.
I'm saying that that, that I would reduce that in order to pay for police, fire, Parks and Rec.
And so, I then would ask you, where do we ever have savings to apply to capital improvement projects? Because let's just set up an example, if we need $5 million a year for capital improvement projects, and we all know those need to be done, there's no controversy about do we need to do them or not, they need to be done, but we've taken in anticipation of having $5 million a year of savings, we've put it for the police department raises. Now, that's going to happen every year, police department raises. So where are we ever going to have funds to go toward those capital improvement projects that we know we need? And as a perfect example, park lighting, the project you said, you know, that's a good idea, we should do it, it's going to be $10 million. That's a capital improvement project that we've needed for a long time. Ours are 60 years old, and we've never had the revenue to do it. It never gets to the top of the list, and we use savings, if we have savings, to go toward those one-time projects, but it's really hard to ever get all those one-time projects done in the small little bit of savings that we get most years. So help me see...
So I'm not trying, I'm not trying to project five years or 10 years. I'm just looking into this next year.
But we have to, we have to project that way if we give a raise to the police officers because that number is still going to be here five or 10 years from now.
And I understand that, ma'am. And so, in this outlay that we're looking at, and with the excess revenues that we currently have, you're saying that the only way that we can ever give a salary increase is by increasing taxes? And so...
It just has to be attached to revenue we're certain of.
Okay, so...
So it could be sales tax revenue, although, I mean, that's a projection, too, Laura. Am I misunderstanding on that as I'm thinking that through? Tax revenue is the only thing we have certainty on?
Yes, I mean, if you had other dedicated revenue sources into your general fund that could cover a raise, as long as those were elevated to a level that could support that ongoing cost, that would be sufficient. But you can't utilize one-time savings to fund a, an ongoing increase to an operating cost going forward, whatever that is, whether that's a raise, whether, you know, it could be anything, but you can't use one-time savings. That's why in our financial policies, we have a section that states that any excess reserves will be allocated to capital projects, to general capital projects in future years, because capital projects are one-time outlays, and savings, excess reserves, those budget savings are one-time savings. You cannot guarantee you will have those same budget savings in a future year. And so, if you approve a raise with one-time savings, you have now either, in the next year or the next councils that come up would either have to reduce that raise, or they would be required to do some sort of a property tax rate increase or another dedicated revenue source increase to fund a commitment that a previous council had entered into.
Well, I think it'd be accurate to say, if, if we used the capital money to do a compensation increase for public safety or for anybody.
Yeah.
But especially with regard to public safety and certainly civil service, public safety, we're not allowed to, so when you said reduce the compensation, that's not an option.
No, that's true. For public safety, you can't do that, no matter what.
Oh, yeah. That's a new statute. Plus, we're entering into an agreement, a negotiated agreement with them contractually.
That is true, too. So you can't do, yeah, you can't do that.
But the, but the, if you use your capital money to do one-time, or to, to make investments in recurring costs, you will have to be able to guarantee you that you have that money in perpetuity and that you're no longer doing capital projects going forward unless you increase the tax rate to be able to do those projects, or unless, as you were saying...
Or you do a bond.
That is correct. You could issue debt. You could issue debt.
Or a big bond like we did. Or you can reduce or eliminate other services.
Is that not what we've done? I mean, when we go to the taxpayer and the voter and we say, hey, we need roads, we need the streets, you know, we raise, you know, $100 plus million and we do this. And so that does hit your interest and thinking, which we're seeing coming in. And so I'm not against, and I'm not saying that you should never have a higher tax rate. What, what I am saying is, is I wouldn't take the money out of capital because it wouldn't ever go into capital first. I would, I would, I would work with what I have in my capital after I take care of the things that I need to take care of in the form of parks, fire and police. And so we're all agreeing that this is underserved. We're not competitive in the market. We need to pay for these items. And then we're sitting here looking at monies that are left in the account at the end of the year. Well, we take these monies that are left and we put them in capital. And then we go to our voter and we say, hey, we need an increase in our taxes to pay for our police and to pay for our fire. I'm flipping it around, that's all. I would just go to the voter and say, hey, I need, I need a tax increase to pay for these items of infrastructure. And, and so that is the, that's the best explanation I could.
Laura, will you explain it to him again, why we can't flip it?
Yes, so if you were to flip it, so let's say we had $5 million in budget savings that wanted to be allocated to a raise for public safety or whatever else. That $5 million runs out at a certain point in time. And then so the question would be, how would you fund the raise past when that, those savings run out? On the other hand, if you have a dedicated revenue source in place, whether that's growth in sales tax, raising a property tax rate, whatever that is, then that stays in place going forward. Now, there is uncertainty at times with sales tax, but we have been very consistent and we've budgeted very reasonably in our sales tax area and not overextended ourselves thinking we'll build in raises for our employees, not knowing if these revenue levels are even sustainable. So if you increase the property tax rate to fund capital, that, that would be fine. You could just do project after project, year after year. But at some point, your one-time budget savings will run out. And then you would be at that question of how do you continue paying for those raises in the future? Because once you put a raise in place, it's in place forever.
So let me, let me stop and not be more confusing because I see Eddie's face across from me and I'm, I'm not, I, I probably would have the same face. So, and it's okay to laugh. I know we're talking about taxes and everybody, you know, but. So to push forward through this in the way of, I understand what you're saying, Laura. I think that's where I thought I was three months ago when I, when I got elected. That we were out of money and that we've got to go to the taxpayer and to the voter in order to get these raises or get any, get any additional things done. That's not where I'm at today. That's not what I'm seeing. Otherwise, I wouldn't be opposing this. So I guess my question, and, and let me not give you the solution because I don't have it. But we have money to buy and spend things one time that we, that we feel are important. And, and I get that the way that the budget is orchestrated is very complex and very complicated. And, and I don't fully understand it. But it sure feels like to me that our priorities go along with that complexity. And so I, I, I'm striving to try to align my priorities with this complexity and understand it. And, and what I'm asking is, is do we need the additional funds for licensing and fees when we have these excess revenues? So when, when the water sales that we have were, you know, are $24 million over what we spend, that's a lot of capital improvements. And, and I, we, we can't pull that money out and spend it on police. I get that. But then, how much water and sewer can we do?
Man, I really.
And we're asking for another increase.
I really appreciate, I mean, you're saying that you're not bringing the solution. You're trying hard to bring a solution. And, and I respect that and I appreciate it. Respectfully, I don't think you understand what Laura's saying, or else you wouldn't be bringing the solution that you're bringing. So do you want to explain?
So one thing I want to mention on the water and sewer rates, also with the drainage rates. The increases that are in place for this upcoming year, the large, largest portion of the water and sewer rate increase, it's a 3% rate increase, and that is to fund debt service on an anticipated debt issuance for the fifth year of a five-year capital improvement plan. We have to have a dedicated revenue source in place to fund that debt service. And so otherwise, we, we could, we could cut out services potentially on, that water and sewer is providing. I'm not sure what that would even look like in order to fund debt service. Otherwise, we need to adjust the rates to properly pay for that debt issuance. That's also part of our bond ratings. When we go to be rated, the groups look at, you're about to do a debt issuance, how are you going to pay for this? You can't utilize one-time savings, budget savings. You have to have a dedicated revenue source in place. And what we have done here at the City of Amarillo is we have adjusted those rates to be dedicated to pay for that ongoing debt service. So in a year, we may have excess water revenues that come in. We do fluctuate. Some years, we're in drought conditions, some years, we're in more wet conditions. And those are one-time savings that then we allocate to future capital projects. They, they can't be used again for ongoing costs. So if you.
But what they do, what the effect they have is to reduce future water rate increases because we don't have to have the debt or the funds to allocate to those projects. So we can cash fund those, those projects rather than issuing debt, which has the associated water rate increases associated with, or a water rate, a water rate increase usually associated with them.
Okay. No, I understand. So I hear where you're, I hear what you're saying. I understand where you're going. I know our last conversation, you know, I told you I need like six more months and I probably do. But I'm not afraid to kind of jump out here and take off throwing things around to see what, you know, what I can find and.
Appreciate the questions.
And I, I appreciate your answers and how good you've been in trying to walk through all this. So today, and this may not be my, this may not be the right comprehension, but today what I'm hearing is, is that even if we have excess revenues, we're not able to spend them on anything that, that would be more than a one-year allocation because we have to pay for debt long-term. And so that ties our hands a little bit more and that puts you more into an, an issue of a tax increase. And so, once again, I'm, I'm in favor of, of increasing taxes to pay for fire, police, parks and rec and our emergency call center at the will of the voter. And so, you know, I didn't have a better comprehension two weeks ago of SB2. So, you know, we're, at least I'm steady here. So like, I'm learning. But thank you for looking at that. I, I am trying to leave the water and sewer rates at a flat and not, not put those in as an increase because I still don't see, other than what you're explaining, that you have, you've already obligated yourself to this money. So you have to increase them 3%.
We have not obligated ourselves yet to this money. The proposed debt issuance is also included in your proposed budget. If we, if, if council decides not to increase the rates, we would not be able to move forward with the debt issuance. So that's, again, it's all in this upcoming budget and that you all are considering at this point.
Have you already issued the debt for the AMR?
For, yes, we have for the AMI project. Yes, we did that.
You said it was due last year, right?
That is correct. Yes.
But in doing that, we also postponed by one year.
That's correct.
Correct.
Other projects and debt issuance that we were going to need to, to make.
We've got a million dollar grant and we've got a zero interest rate percent.
That is correct. Yes, on that AMI project, yes. So this year that's in your proposed budget is truly the fifth year of that original five-year capital plan that was.
Passed by the 2015 council.
Yes.
Which none of us were on.
Yes, that's correct.
So it's, it was a plan that was studied and implemented. Well, we're implementing it, I guess, but it was, it was a plan that was studied and passed by the council before the four of us came on board. And so now we're doing the last year of it. And, you know, this is a long walk in the same direction. This was part of that walk.
Well, you know, one of the hard things about the capital projects is it seems to me really pretty much the only capital projects that really come out of our general budget are streets.
Yes, the majority.
And now then, when we sit back and we look at streets, we've got a, we've got a plan or we've got an assessment out there that shows we need $420 million worth of street work. And so we're, we're trying to take that off with the little bit we put in the budget and then whatever excess we have at the end of the year, and we're, that's going to be tough.
Never going to get caught up.
We're never going to get there.
Yeah. Well, as far as the motion is concerned, I, I am, I'm with Cole and the rest of you guys. I'm in favor of giving public safety a raise. I'm in favor of the parks, maintenance issues that we need to work on and improve, the parks, facilities, issues that we need to work on and improve. And I recognize too that there, there's not enough revenue coming in to meet those quality of life issues, even if we have savings every year, which some, most years, we do have savings because we purposefully budget to be in the black and we're conservative to do that. And I think that's good. That's what we should do. But I'm very much so in favor of putting this in front of the voters. Letting them say, yes, we want to do the parks, facilities and increased maintenance. We want, and, and we want to do that year over year. We don't just want to do it in the years that we have budget savings that we could put toward that. And the same thing on the raises for the 911 operators and fire and police and other staff. That's something we have to be obligated for year over year. And so it gives the voters a chance to say, this is not just a one-time expenditure, this is something I'm in favor of year over year. And, and I think it's important to put that out in front of them. So with that.
Call of duty.
I call for the question.
Okay. All of those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All of those against the motion? Okay, so that passes with a 4-1 vote. Item 3D is, and let's see, considering the ordinance that would approve the City of Amarillo tax rule and setting an ad valorem property tax rate as well as levying a tax on all properties subject to taxation within the city for the 2021 tax year. Laura?
Yes, and I will go quickly through this presentation. This is the one that you all saw on July 19th. Maybe, there we go. Okay, we have, this is going to be the first reading of the ordinance to approve the tax rate. You will see this again this coming Friday. We will also have a public hearing related to the property tax rate on Friday. Couple of quick definitions. These are outlined by Senate Bill 2, and this is all in the Texas Tax Code, Section 26. We are required to calculate a voter approval tax rate that allows for 3% above the prior year maintenance and operations rate. Senate Bill 2 compresses the timeline for approving a budget and requires a mandatory election if an adopted tax rate exceeds the voter approval tax rate. This also limits the city's ability to lower taxes if an election is not successful. Senate Bill 2 outlines what that tax rate has to be if an election is not successful. So real quick, over going through the tax rates, the current year tax rate for 2020 is 39.681 cents. That maintains our current service levels. If we were to walk that rate forward and only include the increase needed to fund the final years of the 2016 voter-approved projects for Prop 1, those are street projects, what that would look like, it would go up to 41.688 cents to pay for that issued debt service. That's about a $1.67 per month increase on a $100,000 home to go up that rate. To go up to the 2021 voter approval tax rate, that brings us up to 44.334 cents. What we get with that rate? We get the current service levels. We also get that funding for the, the debt service on the 2016 voter-approved Prop 1 final street projects. And along with that, we would get some funding for parks that could go for sidewalk repairs, mowing, park benches, et cetera. Again, this rate allows for about a 3.5% increase on the operation and maintenance side only. It also allows a lookback period for any unused portion of that 3.5 cents in last year. That's how we get to the 44.344, 334 cents. What you're looking at for a proposed 2021 tax rate is 48.404 cents. You get your current service levels. Also even more funding towards parks that could go towards things such as athletic fields, trails, playground equipment. Again, things that we've heard in the community that are, are needs out there, that are ones out there to help improve our quality of life. We're also looking at adding funds to public safety. This would be for police officers, police and fire equipment, increases to the AECC pay rates and overall pay increases for public safety. Along with that, there'd be increased street funding for pothole repairs and resurfacing. And then again, and more, this is including an additional increase for all city staff at 1%. Also, you would get your 2016 voter-approved debt service funding on those final street projects. And yes, this is a 22% increase on just the city, looking at the city's rate going from the 2020 rate to the 2021 rate, it is a 22% increase. It is not that much of an increase on the total tax bill. We'll look at that in just a second. To go from what we need to fund our debt service and no increase to the O and M rate, to go up to the proposed rate, that's a $5.60 per month increase on 160,000, I'm sorry, on a $100,000 home. In total, that's $7.27, but the 560 is what gets us those additional fund, the additional funding for parks, for public safety and for streets. I think, there we go. I think the battery's dying. So let's look real quick at the overall tax bill. This is on that one-page handout. This is just one example of many on our tax bills. We have five school districts, two counties, two water districts and the City of Amarillo, all on a combination of property tax bills. This is one with Amarillo ISD and Potter County. At the current rates for all the other entities and with the proposed rate for the City of Amarillo, this is what the tax bill would look like. 45% of the tax bill would go to the school district, AISD, 27% would go to Potter County. And this is very similar, no matter which version of these property tax bills you look at. 19% would go, of the total tax bill would go to the City of Amarillo. And that includes this increase we're looking at. Amarillo College would get 9% and it would be less than 1% going to the water district. Again, this total tax bill change for this proposed tax rate, the total tax bill would go up about 3.5%. Since the City of Amarillo is, is a smaller portion of that total tax bill, even with our rate going up the way it's proposed, it would only cause the total tax bill to go up 3.5%. And as a reminder, it was mentioned earlier, citizens over 65 would not see an increase related to this change in the proposed tax rate. So how do we compare? We've talked about this as well. So looking at the 10 larger cities and the 10 smaller cities, we're going to bring some more information back to you all on Friday on what they're looking from a proposed standpoint as well. But on the 10 larger cities by population and the 10 smaller cities by population, looking at their current rates versus our proposed rate for next year, this is how it graphs out. So we start with the highest tax rate over on the far left, and that's Fort Worth at 70, just 78 and 1/2 cents, just over 78 cents.
I think, are we, I think that's a different slide. There you go.
Whoa, okay, sorry. I'm going to set this down for a second, sorry.
Okay.
So 78 and 1/2 cents for Fort Worth, this is the 2020 rates for all these entities, going all the way down to Midland at 36 and 1/2 cents. There are three cities out of these 21 cities, including us, three cities have a lower tax rate than our proposed increased rate at 48.4 cents. That's Plano, Frisco and Midland. But you'll note on here, the average rate is just under 60 cents. That's at 59.959. Now, if we change to the next slide, what this does is then. Now, if we change to the next slide, what this does is then it, it lays on top of that the taxable values for each of these communities. So there's two things at play here. So you've got your tax rate, but you also have your taxable values. So the way we're trying to do an apples-to-apples comparison is looking at the tax revenue generated per capita. So we take the taxable values for the current year for each of these 21 communities, and this is our certified values for next year. So our next-year values versus their prior-year values, and we take that amount, we divide it by each of their populations, and then multiply it times the tax rate. When you do that, you're getting a revenue per capita, tax, property tax revenue per capita. You'll see now Amarillo's on the far right at the lowest at 200, just under $262 per capita. And now those three cities, the red bars on this chart, Frisco, Plano, and Midland, that had the lower tax rates than the City of Amarillo's proposed one, they now shift much further to the left. What that tells us is they have higher taxable values in their communities per capita than what the City of Amarillo has. So there's two things at play. Lower tax rate and a lower taxable value in comparison to these cities produces a lower tax revenue per capita for the City of Amarillo.
I think that one thing that's important, we look at this as, from a budgetary standpoint, so we're looking at it as revenue. But to our taxpayers, this is, another title for this would be average tax, or taxes paid per capita. So the average taxpayer, you know, is paying $261 annually from, on the municipal taxes. Just, just an important distinction, I think. We look at revenue and everyone thinks, oh, it's revenue, they're just talking about revenue. But this is also the taxes paid per capita.
And these are paying for similar services across these cities. There are basic services that almost every city provides, and so there's a little bit a different variance between city to city, but you're, all cities are gonna, they're gonna provide police, fire, parks, streets, libraries, all those basic things. And this is, this is kind of the breakdown on what kind of revenue they're getting per capita in comparison to what the City of Amarillo gets per capita. And again, this is our proposed rate and our certain, new certified values, which did go up for the upcoming year, they did increase, and this still puts us at the far right on this graph. The average amount is $523, and we're just under $262. Yes, half. So what comes next today, I'm sorry, today what we're doing is we're, we're working on the tax rate. We're gonna do the public hearing on the tax rate actually on August 13th. We are taking a vote today on the first reading of the ordinance. On August 13th, on Friday, we'll do the public hearing on the tax rate, and we will also do the second and final reading on, on the ordinance adopting the tax rate. Then we will follow by a vote to ratify the tax rate, and then if this rate that we have proposed is what winds up being approved, we will have an item for this council to call an election. And that will all be done this Friday at 1:00 PM.
Questions for Laura, counsel?
This is not working.
Thank you, Laura.
So Ms. Laura, the proposed 2021 tax rate, that's gonna be a 24.48% increase, is that correct?
On, oh, you're looking at the notice, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, and so that is an effective increase over the prior year. There is another tax rate, to just complicate things further, there's another tax rate required by state law. It's the no-new revenue tax rate. That is comparing our proposed, that number you're seeing prepares, compares our proposed tax rate to the no-new revenue rate. So as your appraised values go up, that no-new revenue rate comes down. What the no-new revenue rate is, it's the rate it would take to generate the exact same revenue on the same properties in the new year. And so if the same properties, those appraised values are going up, then that no, it would take a lower tax rate to produce the same amount of revenue. So that no-new revenue rate comes down. So in the notice, or in, in the notice on the agenda, that compares the no-new revenue rate to the proposed rate where you're seeing the 24% increase. That is correct. That's a, a great question to clarify.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yes, and state law outlines all the notices that we have to do. It even outlines the wording on the motions that we have to use. And so these are great opportunities for you all to ask us questions if you don't understand it, something in the notice or the agenda wording, because there are a lot of rates that we are required to calculate by state law. I, I was speaking with one of the council members, and we have a nine-page document that we have to, actually, and the, the state comptroller didn't even publish it until after we had to post our proposed budget. And that, it outlines, it outlines detailed calculations that we have to do according to state law to meet all of these notice requirements. So it's a nine-page document, and it changed this year even from what was posted last year. So we've worked very hard, along with Randall County, who is our tax assessor collector, to ensure these rates are accurate. And as there had been some changes that may have been noted on the city's website on the proposed budget, it was because the state comptroller's calculation worksheets were changing just slightly, and we were, we were working off of last year's worksheets because that's all we had available at the time. So...
Makes me really appreciate the citizen who came to the podium and said, just make it simple.
We would love that.
I mean, I think the five of us sit in that boat for sure, even our, you know, people who have decades of governmental accounting experience feel that same way. But it's, it's not in our control to make it simple.
No.
We have to follow the process that the legislature sets out for us.
That is correct.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.48404, which is effectively a 24.48% increase in the tax rate.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Powell and seconded by Councilmember Sauer to approve this ordinance, doesn't have a number yet, does it? Okay. Which would approve the City of Amarillo tax rule and set an ad valorem property tax Discussion, I guess, back to Councilmember Powell.
I have no discussion at this point.
Nothing to add, from what you've added on previous comments?
That is correct.
Okay. Councilmember Sauer?
No, ma'am, I don't have anything else to add.
Okay, nothing from Councilmember Smith, nothing from Councilmember Stanley. Okay. So at this time, we will, all of those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All of those opposed, and the item passes with a 4-1 vote. Okay, anything else? I guess we're at the end of our agenda, so that's it. There isn't anything else. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you.